Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 1:00 P.M. And we have a lot of guests here today. It's gonna be a good meeting today. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Mayor Pretend Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
And Councilmember Riz is on row.
Thank you, uh, for everyone that's here, including Councilmember Cook. This is brave. You're here, you're committed. Considering your weekend festivities. All right, um, but any announcements?
Um, I'll be so brief. Thank you all for being here. Um, I am getting married this weekend, so I am going to have a strict end time at 6:00 P.M. I don't think we should have to do anything until then, but just letting everyone know. Um, and, uh, I want to say because, uh, June really snuck up on me, um, that Happy Pride Month, all celebrating, forgot to say that at the meeting. Um, but we'll be celebrating all month long. Those are all my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, I will be on an airplane at 6:00 P.M., so hopefully we'll be out of here by then. All right, Mr. Baker.
Same as last words. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, thank you all for being here. It's wonderful to see a, a full room. Uh, first, just want to say, uh, congratulations to Josh Gunn, our new Director of Office, Office of Economic and Workforce Development. Uh, we're in a pivotal moment, uh, where we have a lot of changes in the global, national, and regional econo- economy. And, uh, we really need a, a fresh, uh, and comprehensive analysis and a new, uh, vision forward for, for economic development. So, uh, timing couldn't be better, and I'm excited about the work ahead there. Um, last night in this room, uh, was the Environmental Affairs Board, uh, meeting. There was a presentation from Water Resources, um, about, uh, Brand Tag Mid-South Incorporated's, uh, repeated and continued illicit discharges into the creek that's running through Burton Park. Um, it is killing everything, has killed everything in the creek. Uh, this is then Third Fork Creek, uh, watershed. And, uh, while I think a lot of folks aren't allowed to say this, it is a blatant environmental justice, um, issue. Uh, I'd like to, uh, write a letter to, uh, the State Attorney General and, um, would invite collaboration with my colleagues, uh, in, in that effort. Um, this is a really important issue. Uh, and then finally, um, and, and I might just wait until we reach, uh, the, uh, budget item, but I'd like to ask, um, for an update on, uh, the county's budget regarding day shelters and whether that's something we, we need to address in this budget. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. That's what I'm covering here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, good to be with y'all. Good to see a pretty packed room today. Um, I just have an item that I will be bringing up when we get to budget conversations. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman?
Uh, thank you, and, uh, Happy Pride Month. Definitely forgot that on Monday night. But, um, I did get a chance to sit with folks last night for the Lead in the Park conversation. And, um, I fully expect to hear from folks, um, more as they start to figure out what it is and what it looks like. I know, um, our staff has been working really hard with, uh, the state D.E.Q. to figure out, uh, what the remediation will look like. So I definitely would love to hear, um, feedback from staff on that. And then, um, al- also congratulations as well on the new workforce development work director. And, uh, understanding there's a few new roles, a few other roles that will need to be filled. Just hoping that, uh, we can have as much, as much success with those as well. That's about all.
Thank you. Councilmember Riz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies for being tardy. It's good to see everybody, colleagues, residents, those online. Um, good afternoon. Uh, just a couple things. So, um, it was an honor to be, on Tuesday, to be at the annual breakfast of Housing for New Hope. Um, one of our key city partners in the effort to really address the challenge of homelessness in Durham. So I want to thank Russell Pierce and his staff, um, for the amazing work they do, for being a great partner to the city, and look forward to working with them as we go forward in this new exciting strategic plan around addressing our unhoused population. So, um, again, thanks for Housing for New Hope and congratulations on your annual breakfast. Um, also on Tuesday, uh, the manager, Councilmember Caballero and I had a chance to go to the going-away luncheon for Tom Dawson, who's been an absolutely dynamic and, um, creative, uh, force at the Durham Parks and Rec in designing new parks. So we're gonna see, we're gonna, Tom's gonna take that job in Raleigh, darn it, you know? Um, Tom, you know where we are here, but I just want to thank Tom for the amazing work he's done in, in creating new parks like Merrick Moore, but also revitalizing our traditional parks here. So, uh, farewell to Tom Dawson. Thanks for your great service to the city of Durham. And then finally, the mayor had me traveling all over the triangle this morning. That's why I'm probably late here. But honored to join the mayor at the, um, celebration today of lighting the way, um, uh, for celebration of North County small businesses sponsored by Carolina Small Business Development, uh, Loan Fund. Um, small businesses are the backbone of our state economy and our local economy. And so it's an honor to be part of that celebration, to honor the role of small businesses in providing services, um, paying taxes, but also employing our residents here. So their critical role, and I've enjoyed celebrating that with Kevin Dick, who's the head of, uh, the Carolina Small Business Development Fund. He certainly, as you know, used to be the O.E.W.D. Director, so it's great to see Kevin again. Um, and I look forward to working with him and other folks to continue building the strength of our small businesses here in Durham and across the state. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pretend?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, honorable colleagues, all of our guests and neighbors in chamber with us today and whatever platform you may be watching on, uh, this afternoon. Thank you, uh, for joining us. Uh, not many announcements. Um, let me, uh, also add my congratulations to our, to, for, to Mr. Gunn on assuming his new role and to our manager also, on continuing to build a great team for us here, uh, in Durham. Um, had a great time in C.C., C.C.D. Plaza this past Tuesday. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, celebrating the inaugural, uh, money bestowment for the Bull City Future Fund. Uh, it's been a long time in the making. Uh, I want to congratulate, I think about fifteen organizations who received north of $300,000, uh, for the work that they're doing. When we talk about grassroots initiatives and a lot of us talk about needing to do grassroots stuff, these are the organizations that are actually on the front line doing the grassroots work. Uh, I call them headline stoppers. Uh, and I say that because oftentimes the work they do, the results don't make the news. So while we're looking at numbers and we're looking at headlines of things that have happened amiss and things that are bad that have happened, there are a whole lot of people in this city that are preventing headlines from ever coming to our attention. It's hard to document those. It's hard to quantify those, but it's happening. So I want to congratulate, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, and on partnering with United Way of Greater Triangle and Triangle Community Development Corp. Think I got their name right. Uh, Foundation, right. Uh, and, um, others in this city, uh, to launch this most, uh, important fund. I hope it'll be a permanent part of our landscape here, and I want to encourage those organizations that didn't apply this time or didn't get money this time to keep coming back, uh, as we plan on doing this in perpetuity. Uh, and thank you for the work you do to make our city, uh, a much more better place. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be brief, um, as we have a long agenda today. Um, shout out to the Durham Library Foundation. They hosted a fireside chat, uh, between, uh, Mr. Bakari Sellers and myself. Uh, it was really cool. Bakari and I are really good friends. We go back sometime, and it was just really cool to, uh, sit down and just talk and just catch up. And, yeah, I, it wasn't a formal, we, there was supposed to be a formal conversation, but we just kind of caught up and it was cool. Um, but thanks to the Library Foundation for just hosting a series of talks, uh, to cover so many things. Um, thank you, Councilmember Riz, for joining me this morning at the Carolina Small Business Fund. Uh, and, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, Councilmember Cook on her, uh, wedding this weekend. Um, it'll be my anniversary, so we'll be having, sharing the same anniversary. Um, and my wife told me I need to be out of here to get on the plane for our anniversary weekend, so, uh, I'll be out of here soon. The, um, yeah, the inaugural, uh, Bull City Future Fund, the first round of funding, we finally got it, you know, uh, kicked off, and it was $300,000 to $5,000. Uh, this was a dream come true, and, and it was, it was a beautiful sight to see nearly 300 people in C.C.B. Plaza, just dancing, line dancing, having a good time, kids all over the place, icee, popcorn, pictures, you name it. Uh, the big stage, um, and just a fun time. Briefly, uh, just going to name them out. Durham YMCA, um, received $10,000. Bump of the Triangle received $10,000. Sidekicks Academy, $10,000. Growth NC, $10,000. Youth Mentoring Collaborative, $10,000. Uh, Grace, $10,000. Uh, Stand Up Speak Out, $20,000. Puff Teen Center, $20,000. Purpose Learning Lab, uh, $20,000. Made in Durham, $25,000. Boys and Girls Club, $25,000. Echo, $25,000. El Ferturo, $50,000. Durham Success Summit, $50,000. Uh, and I look forward to keep raising money and, uh, continue to support more organizations throughout the community. And, um, yeah, this is, this is really, really, really fun to do. Um, let's get to work. Uh, really excited about all the talks and things today. Um, yeah, it'll be our last meeting before we have to pass this budget, so let's take another dab at it, folks. Mr. Manager, on you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pretend, members of council. I have a few, uh, comments this afternoon, and then I'll read my priority items. Uh, first, uh, because we have a packed room, I do want to just make an announcement to any staff in the room to, I'll ask you to monitor, uh, whether or not we have members of the public in the lobby, and if so, I'll ask staff to move to the city manager's suite or another space and monitor the meeting, and then come in for your items so that we maximize space in the room for the public. Uh, I do want to acknowledge and mildly apologize to the council for the length of the agenda. It seems to be inevitable that the last work session of the fiscal year always seems to have more business on it than we would like. Uh, we regret that, but appreciate your willingness to plow through it with us, so we, we have a, a good list of discussions to have today. Um, I do want to, uh, s- uh, acknowledge and appreciate that I was given the opportunity to be included in the Juneteenth flag-raising ceremony at the courthouse this Monday. My thanks to Phyllis Collier, who was there with the mayor, uh, and Spectacular Magazine for pulling that together and including us, a really meaningful moment. And, and I learned a lot, uh, thought, thought I knew a lot about Juneteenth, learned more about Juneteenth, and so appreciate that opportunity. And finally, uh, Councilmember Cook, on behalf of the administration, we all extend and, uh, uh, congratulations on your forthcoming nuptials and commend your choice of, of a location for that event. I, I won't share it publicly so that the paparazzi won't track you down this weekend, but, uh, commend you for having chosen one of our finer city facilities, a little bit of a hidden gem in the city. So with that, let me read our priority items today. Also not a short list, uh, the following are priority items from the city manager's office. Agenda item number six, fiscal year 2025-26 budget and 2026-31 C.I.P. ordinance and other related ordinances. We have added a presentation for this item today. There is also additional materials in your packet that have been, uh, added, uh, answering some of the questions, uh, that we received in previous discussions. Agenda item number forty-two, Gwen Silver, under Citizens Matters, Ms. Silver has withdrawn her request to speak today. Agenda item number forty-three, contract with Word Systems LLC for nice system maintenance. A supplemental item was added to the packet. Agenda item number forty-four, the contract for print and mail services for the city of Durham with Rev Spring Inc. A supplemental item has been added, and the city council is being asked to suspend the rules and vote during today's work session to replace the existing contract that ended in May 2025 for our prior, prior vendor. And then, agenda item number forty-five, contract for implementation of City Works permitting, licensing, and land management software with Timmons Group Incorporated. A supplemental item has been added. Those are all the city manager's office priority items.
Thank you. Always get hung up on this. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All right, move them properly second up. Please show by your right hand. Aye? All right, thank you. All opposed? All right, thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Mayor Pretend and council members. Uh, Senior Deputy City Attorney Fred Lamar sitting in for Kim Rayberg, the city attorney. City Attorney's Office does not have any priority items. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pretend, and city council members. The city clerk's office does not have any priority item, items, but I do have, uh, some announcements with the nominations. I can either make them now or... All right, so our first one is, I apologize. Uh, the Durham Convention Center Authority Mayor's mayoral appointment, um, council has nominated Ari Medoff. The Durham Workers Rights Commission, the one vacancy, has, uh, been nominated, uh, Brian Wang. The Durham Convention Center Authority, um, has been nominated for Carl Newman. And for the Housing Appeals Board, Injernell Gauch has been nominated by council. I do not have general consensus on the participatory budgeting steering committee.
What's the breakdown?
Okay, so, uh, as of right now, uh, council has nominated majority Rosemary James and Kenneth Webb. Um, Daniel Sater has three votes right now, and Robin A. Smith has two votes right now. I did, up until, uh, five minutes ago, I was missing two, uh, council votes, however. Daniel Sater. Okay, now that puts us up to three. All right, so, um, let me just state it again, participatory budgeting steering committee appointments. Oh, I'm sorry, one second. So I have Rosemary James, I have Daniel Sater, and I have Kenneth Webb. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All right, this time I'll go ahead and read the, uh, consent agenda. Oh, wait, the, what, item forty-four?
Uh, it's item forty-four, where you can either do it when you read it.
Let, let's, let me read the consent agenda, and then we'll come back and do that first. All right, this is consent agenda. Uh, number one, Durham Convention Center Authority mayoral appointment. Number two, Durham Workers Rights Commission appointment. Number three, Durham Convention Center Authority appointment. Number four, participatory budgeting steering committee appointment. Number five, Housing Appeals Board appointment. Number six, fiscal year 2025-26 budget and 2026-2031 capital improvement plans, C.I.P. ordinance and other related ordinances.
I don't need to pull that, but do we want to put that on GBA?
It's a presentation.
Okay.
Number seven, Durham Housing Authority, uh, DHA operational assistance loan commitment. Entire council pulls that.
Yeah.
Uh, number eight, amendment to inner local agreement of city council strategic youth initiatives. Number nine, amendment to inner local agreement between city and county for Durham for, of Durham for inspections services. Number ten, contract with North Carolina Coalition in Homelessness to provide homeless management information system lead agency services. Number eleven, approval of contract between the city of Durham and Habitat for Humanity to administer the city of Durham minor repair program. Number twelve, approval of the contract between the city of Durham and Hilliard Lawn Maintenance Incorporated to provide landscaping services for city-owned properties. Number thirteen, approval of the contract between the city of Durham and Legal Aid, North Carolina, to administer the city of Durham eviction diversion program.
Can we just go ahead and put that one on GBA since I have to recuse? Is that okay? I can pull it at the meeting too, if y'all'd rather do it that way, but just since I'm thinking about it.
Um, I mean, if this is a request.
We'll have, yeah, I'll have to vote, I'll have to recuse on it. Thanks. Yeah.
It, it's fine. We're not, we're not taking any action today, other than that one, but...
I was asking to put it on GBA so that I, we can have a vote separate.
Yes. First amendment to contract, number fourteen, first amendment to contract 1965, 650 with Housing for New Hope Incorporated, uh, for the provision of landlord engagement services. Number fifteen, second amendment to the contract, to contract 19376 with Volunteers of America of the Carolinas Incorporated for the provision, provision of coordinated entry with diversion services.
I don't want to pull either, but if you get the actual original contracts for fourteen and fifteen, the amendments are out of context, which is helpful. Thank you.
Number sixteen, 2025 amendment to city of Durham and county of Durham in a local agreement regarding homeless services and the homeless services advisory committee. Number seventeen, execute the Durham City County in a local agreement for continuation of the gain reduction strategy. Number eighteen, revise small business, revise small local business enterprise, S.L.B.E. ordinance. Number nineteen, contract with Axios for the fire, for fire department facility study. Number twenty, city space, city hall space reconfiguration design contract with Array Architects. We getting a new city hall? Is that what that means? I don't know. General Services, like, no. Um, number twenty-one, amendment to interlocal cooperation agreement with housing authority of city of Durham to procure and install security equipment. Number twenty-two, contract with Folded Poetry LLC for public art at city hall. Number twenty-three, condemnation action to obtain two easements at 302 Marine Road for the bicycle and pedestrian improvements project. Number twenty-four, condemnation action to obtain one area of feet simple and one easement at 401 Marine Road for the bicycle and pedestrian improvements project. Twenty-five, update on the redevelopment of 505 West Chapel Hill Street.
Pull that one.
Hold that.
Mr. Mayor, twenty-four was pulled by a resident.
You're all right. Thank you. And then twenty-five as well. Um, number twenty-five, update on, okay, yeah, number twenty-six, condemnation action to obtain two easements at 700 Marine Road for the bicycle and pedestrian improvements project. Number twenty-seven, Garrett Road Park restroom sewer connection, design contract with R.V.E. Incorporated. Twenty-eight, contract with Sumitra, Sumitra, Sumitra Life Insurance and Company for stop-loss insurance, insurance coverage. Number twenty-nine, fifth amendment to fiscal year 2022-2026, contract to fund downtown Durham municipal services, service district operations provided by downtown Durham Incorporated. Number thirty, fiscal year 2025-2026, agreement to fund economic development programs and services operated by downtown Durham Inc. using city of Durham funds. Number thirty-one, contract with E Plus Incorporated for implementation of the metropolitan area network. Number thirty-two, Durham Station license agreements. Number thirty-three, agreement with Greenwood R.R.S.T. LLC for propane auto gas supply. Number thirty-four, construction award to Terra Flex Group LLC for the American Tobacco Waterline Replacement Phase Two Project. Number thirty-five, professional services contract award to Raftelus Financial Consultants Incorporated for utility rate, financial, and management consulting services. Number thirty-six, service contract with McKim and Creed Incorporated for lead service line inventory field verification project for disadvantaged areas. Number thirty-seven, professional services contract award to McKim and Creed Incorporated for the South Durham Water Reclamation Facility tertiary filter replacement and miscellaneous process rehabilitation items. Number thirty-eight, award of non-professional services contract to Duke Root Control Incorporated for the sewer outfall inspection program, South Project. For the upcoming zoning, um, public hearings, zoning map change Methodist Street Townhouses, number forty. Zoning map change 1606 and 1608 East Cornwallis Road. Zoning map change 401 East Lakewood Avenue. And of course, we have the number forty-two, Gwen Silver, who withdrew, okay. Uh, citizen matter. Number forty-three, contract with Word Systems LLC for nice system maintenance. Number forty-four, contract for print and mail services for the city of Durham with, uh, Ari Rev Spring Incorporated. Okay, that's... I'll come back after. And number forty-five, contract for implementation of City Works permitting licenses, licensing and land management software with Timmons Group Incorporated. That is our consent agenda. Uh, first order of business, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved?
All right, all in favor? All opposed? All right, now, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a six-month contract with the option to renew with Rev Spring Incorporated for print and mail services up to the amount of $1,143,576.
I don't, I, maybe it's just me. So moved?
Okay, moved, second. All right, it's removed and properly seconded. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? All right, and I'll also, oh, do I need to do the contingency fund? Yeah, I'll also entertain a motion to establish a contingency fund in the amount of $1,143,0576.
So moved?
So moved and properly seconded. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? All right, and lastly, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute modifications to the service contract provided. The total cost does not exceed $2,287,152.
So moved?
Removed and properly seconded. All in favor? All opposed? All right, you got it. All right, uh... So, items pool, let's see. One second. Yes, let me, uh, check one thing. I didn't check to see if they already pulled items.
Mr. Mayor, I believe item six is on, uh, on the cards as well.
Cards?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Were there any, do you know if there were any pulled that?
We, that's what I'm checking against right now, and, because I saw seven, eleven, twenty-one, twenty-four, and twenty-five were pulled. So, uh, there is, there are two speakers already on there for twenty-five, I believe, as well.
Okay, all right, so we're starting out at number six. No. That's the budget one. Okay. Want to just do the, uh... That was just one. Should be pulled items first in presentation. Pulled items. Yeah.
Item seven.
Seven, yeah, seven, eleven, thirteen, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Number these up.
Thirteen.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we're gonna have, we do have one citizen matter. We're gonna address that then, uh, now, and then we'll go with pulled items before going to the presentation. Uh, Joshua Robinson, are you in the room? Welcome. You have three minutes.
All right, yes. Uh, start out by playing an audio from a city official. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what it is between you and the bill gates. It's wrong. You know it's wrong. When I do my response, that's what it's gonna be. So, that was in response to, uh, when I came here on May eighth, in, you know, regards to asking Ed Nixon, uh, just to update what's going on with my case. Um, I could, I've met all compliances. I turned in everything. I even told him, you know, hey, I was in a trauma situation. I didn't want to disclose my address. Um, that was completely disregarded. Not only did, did he def- uh, defame me, he also intentionally concealed information that led to the now of a federal, uh, grant for me, which is also a criminal, um, offense of the Federals. I have notified HUD, and they said the city has, um, been notified, and they're trying to make a decision. I just wanted to come upon y'all and ask, just, uh, try to get an update or understanding, like, what's the process going on right now?
Someone is gonna speak with you right now.
Okay.
Keith, my intention would be for you to give him an update privately. Just let, let him know our understanding of the process, and then if council requests any information of staff, please let me know.
Would you speak with him privately?
All right, thank you. It's the eleven, it's twenty-five. Okay. All right, we're gonna go with the pulled items first. So the first one up is number seven. Yeah, yeah. All right, uh, so Durham Housing Authority, DHA.
I think our resident pulled number six. But we're doing the presentation after?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is number seven, D, uh, Durham Housing Authority. Okay, I think every... Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pretend, uh, city council members. I am here to answer questions about this item. I also have with me today Ashanti Brown, CEO, COO at DHA, as well as their attorney, Jason Brenner.
All right, I'll just start. Uh, Councilmember Riz, would you like to start us out?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so we have a force item from, uh, Ms. Winbush and her staff, a, a request to authorize the city manager to issue a conditional binding commitment of loan assistance for up to $1.5 million to Durham Housing Authority. Um, as the, as the proud liaison of the city to the Housing Authority, I just wanted to say a few words to provide additional context and fill in some of the gaps. You all have a memo before you from Ms. Winbush, um, that explains a lot of the request here. I just want to lay out a couple more things just to... Um, that explains a lot of the request here. I just want to lay out a couple more things just to again fill in the gaps. So, um, for folks that don't know, D H A provides decent affordable housing for low income households in Durham. Um, around four, over four thousand units here that serves over ten thousand residents in the city of Durham. So that's one in twenty five residents in Durham lives in a D H A property or has assistance from D H A to pay their rent, right? Um, average income of public housing residents is thirteen thousand dollars plus. The vast majority of residents earn, uh, ninety four percent or less than thirty percent A M I. According to the latest report from Central Pines Regional Council, there are sixteen units, sixteen units. Of naturally occurring affordable housing in the city of Durham, sixteen total for people below thirty percent A M I. So essentially, if you're below thirty percent A M I, Durham Public, Durham Housing Authority is virtually the only option you have. Okay? Um, again, ten thousand people in Durham. Average rents are two hundred eighty nine dollars per month. Um, one third of households, I think if I'm right about this, Ms. Brown, one third of households are either on zero rent or minimum rent, which is fifty dollars a month. Am I correct about that one? Close? Okay, do you have the right number there? Yeah, this, yeah.
Do not have the exact number in hand.
Essentially, a lot of residents are not necessarily even paying their rent, which is charged as a, as a, as a, um, percentage of their household income, correct?
That's correct.
So the waiting list for, for D H A properties are long, right? So Willard Street House, Willard Street, which opened just a few years ago with a hundred and eighty two units, has a waiting list of five thousand people on the list, right? If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, this, uh, the Housing Choice Voucher Program has not opened the waiting list since twenty eighteen, right? Because the list is so long. So the lists are long because the demand is great there for public housing. So D H A is a critical source of safe affordable housing, but there's not without challenged, right? So D H A, as many of y'all know, has been, has been classified as a troubled agency. Um, and that's because lowest, because of a low assessment scores from HUD. And what that means is the requirements of our recovery agreement with HUD, and again, if I'm getting anything wrong, tell me that Mr. Brenner is around here. The requirements of that recovery agreement with HUD include increasing occupancy to ninety five percent. Right now, occupancy, I think this is in the memo from Ms. Win Bush, is ninety two percent. So increasing occupancy is one piece. Number two is repositioning McDougal Terrace, right? Number three is improving unit conditions as measured by inspection scores. And so I'm sure the question will be, so why doesn't D H A just do this? Do, do these things, right? Get the occupancy up, uh, address the maintenance. Um, but the issue goes back to the request before us. Um, which is to address short term revenue shortfalls. So for example, because of these revenue shortfalls, the maintenance staff at D H A is only eighty four percent staffed up, right? We need money and resources to actually hire people to fix those units. You saw in the memo that D H A is planning several things to stabilize operations and address long term sustainability. That includes expenditure adjustments and the continued expansion of public housing, which provides certain fees to the, to the agency. But it also involves this issue of lease enforcement, sort of like the issue that's been discussed, uh, that I wanted, I want to name. It's been before the council. We've heard a lot of comments about that. So just in terms of lease enforcement. Since during COVID, because one couldn't be evicted, there was so, there, we can't, we can't have a problem with leasing for folks paying their leases. So right now tenant rec, tenant rec collection at D H A properties is at sixty five percent. Okay? Let's see, that's here. The goal for that is ninety eight percent, right? So sixty five percent rent collection. Tenant rent makes up one third of the revenues of the Durham Housing Authority. As the mayor often says for the city of Durham, like D H A can't print money. So they rely in part, but largely on federal funds. But also one third of the budget comes from tenant, uh, rent paid. And that's a budget of fifty six million. D H A has filed eighty six cases for non-payment of rent since July twenty twenty four. And Craig, my phone roll, Mr. Brenner on this one. The largest tier of those cases has been resolved through payments received from tenants. Thirteen cases have resulted in evictions. Each one of those is an eviction too many. But I want to make clear to all that this is not, this is not a tidal wave of evictions at D H A, right? Um, it's essentially one per month and each, each one of those evictions is a, is a, is a crisis, right? That's not good. At the same time, D H A is a critical housing partner to the city. With this troubled status, we don't want the federal government to take over the housing authority, right? And so what we have before you, I just want to make sure it's clear, is a balance that the D, G H A is trying to balance between. Addressing the key issues in this recovery agreements, right? Providing safe affordable housing, making sure they can be sustainable for the future. So I would urge my, my, uh, my client, my client, my clients, my colleagues here on the council to support this motion. As we're trying to support and strengthen what is essentially social housing in Durham. This is our social housing. We talked about it a lot at the council. This is social housing and we want to make sure it works for our residents. So I want to thank you all for being here, urge my colleagues to support this. Um, as we, as we seek to strengthen and improve D H A. As you know, this agreement is a, is a loan agreement. It's not a grant. There are some provisions in there to, for performance agreement, performance items, which I think makes sense. Um, but I think this is a critical investment we're making in the future of public housing in Durham that remains in Durham and not taken over by the federal government. And they provide these services to tens of thousands of residents who need safe and portable housing. But the agency needs dollars to be able to make sure that housing is maintained and that we do the, the issues that we need to address to address the recovery agreements. I'll stop there. Um, so thanks for the time there.
Well, thank you for that primer, uh, council member risk. It's almost like you should have been on that mic. No, it's good. Thank you. Before I get into my comments, colleagues, are there any other comments or questions that you all would like to provide? Councilmember Cook, go ahead.
All right, good afternoon. Um, some of these questions. Might be for stuff, but I'm gonna start since y'all are at the mic. So I actually, council member risk answered one of my questions, which was about income. But I was hoping that y'all could explain the T A R S. The numbers that we have on our memo is that one point four million is taken in from public housing. And then there's three point one million taken in as the overall agency, but I'm just hoping you can clarify those numbers and also explain how. There's twice as much being taken in outside of public housing.
So the three point I can speak to, again, my name is Ashanti Brown. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Durham Housing Authority. Um, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of city council. Um, and yes, uh, councilwoman cook the, um, council member cook the thirty point one million dollars is actually representative of all outstanding tenant accounts receivable. So that is all outstanding rent for tenant accounts. The public housing portion of that rent is what we would take in annually just for our public housing units. We have another five hundred units of affordable housing that are not funded by the public housing operating grant program. So the three point one is overall tenant rent that is outstanding and the one point four is specifically what we would normally take in for public housing alone.
I'm sorry, I'm still thinking I'm confused. So three point one is all outstanding. The one point four is how much would normally be coming in from public housing alone? What makes up?
Annually.
And what's, what, what's the difference there? Between the one point four and the three point one?
Explain that there's public housing and then there's, then there's the other, other, other way that we, D H A is serving families, right?
Yes, and that is my question is how much money is coming in from other sources because I thought that. I thought a lot of it was coming in from public housing. I know y'all aren't taking rent on your vouchers. That money doesn't go to y'all. Um, and I know that there's some other programs, but three point one is twice one point four. So I'm just curious how it grows that large. So three point, three point one is including the one point four?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's really not clear from this memo, but the additional amount, I guess the difference, can you just say what that's made up from?
Annually, we would normally collect one point four million dollars from public housing in rents. However, since COVID nineteen and not receiving proper rents. Rent payments from our households, three point one million is the overall rent. Um, that has not been collected.
So one is a yearly amount and, and the other is just a total?
That's correct.
Okay, also not very clear in the, okay, it's just the way that it's written in our memo. This is not y'all related, but it just doesn't. It literally just states those two things and it doesn't make sense. Can you talk about the sixty six or sixty five percent of, um. Tenant rent paying and how that compares to other places across the state?
Unfortunately, I do not have that information available for me, in front of me for across the state. But what I can say in general is that it is not a problem that is unique to Durham. What I will say is that there are likely housing authorities in the state of North Carolina with higher collection rates. Um, because they actively enforce their lease during the COVID nineteen period. Whereas Durham Housing Authority took an approach to try to help families and avoid evictions during the COVID nineteen period up until last year.
My understanding is that the rest of the housing authorities across the state are much higher rental, um, collection rates.
And that would seem accurate in my understanding as well. We're not alone in terms of having a tenant accounts receivable issue. Because this is a problem that's recognized by the federal government. Um, where they've offered shortfall funding to help some housing authorities, but it also has very specific uses. Um, but that's the reason and rationale behind that. However, we are not, we are not nearly as high as other housing authorities because they actively enforce their lease.
Okay, later in the projected shortfalls, it lists the rent collection as five hundred thousand dollars. So I'm just curious about. What that number, how that, how we're getting that five hundred thousand dollar number? This is again a memo. I'll read it to you. Oops, that's the wrong one, sorry.
You want me to come back to you?
Nope, I have a thousand more questions. Sorry. A lot of things open.
So I do see, um, what you are referring to, council member cook is the, under the agency current fiscal needs. Uh, where it states three point eight million. And under the projected shortfalls, we show a shortfall already this year of five hundred thousand dollars alone from our public housing, housing rent collection. Um, and so this is a breakdown of how we arrived at that three point eight million dollars.
So the five hundred thousand is from this year. The one point four million is from public housing.
So one point four million dollars is what we typically would take in annually each year.
Okay.
And at this point at the time, point in time when this memo was drafted was April, which would only be a quarter of the year. And it was probably based on data that was even earlier than that.
So were we already missing five hundred thousand this year or we are? We've only taken in five hundred, what, I, we're missing five hundred thousand this year. We would normally. Take in one point four million annually. I'm just, I'm, I just don't understand how these numbers relate to each other.
And actu- actually, what I can do now that I have the memo in front of me, I can go specifically to the area that you're referencing with the one point four million. Just to make sure that I'm answering that accurately for you.
Well, I think that you.
Is that in item number one?
Answered, I think you answered that question for me. So that was under, um. Let's see where the T A R S stuff was. Um, so that was under D H A fiscal challenges rent collection. And then it just says, um, at the last sentence, it says public housing tenant accounts receivables. One point four million, agency overall tenant account receivables, three point one million. And then I'm comparing that to the, um. To the fiscal needs. Rent collection shortfall five hundred thousand. And I'm just not sure how all those numbers relate.
So as of this point in time, as of March twenty twenty five in the memo. Um, the timeframe that's being referenced at that time. At that point, we were, we had a shortfall of five hundred thousand dollars in March of twenty twenty five. And so that was revenue that was projected for the entire year. Um, I'm sorry, that was based on revenue projected for the entire year. So when we looked at what our projections were for that timeframe, January, February, and March. We came, we could see that the shortfall at that point was five hundred thousand dollars. The one point four million would be a better reflection of what we would give for the entire year for public housing in terms of rent. But at that point in March, there was a shortfall of five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I will admit that I know that math is not my strong suit, but five hundred thousand for the three, first three months, if we multiply that then by four, we are. Getting to higher than one point four million, which is what you're saying your yearly taken from, so I just don't understand.
And that's where I wanted to correct what I initially stated.
Yeah.
Because I didn't have the memo in front of me.
Okay.
Initially, when you asked the question about the one point four million versus the three point one million. That is item number one under D H A fiscal challenges.
Yes.
What that actually does represent is three point one million overall in T A R S.
Okay.
And one point four million alone for public housing. And that is actually across the entire, and just in terms of rent that has not been collected at all. And so the, the difference there is for our other communities, it does include other communities that are not public housing. And that would be our, our tax credit communities or communities that are considered market rate affordable.
Okay, and so there's an additional one point seven million that hasn't been collected, not from public housing.
That's correct.
Okay, and what is the situation there?
So the, the reason why there is the distinction between our public housing and our affordable housing communities. Is that although our affordable housing communities has not collected, have not collected that rent. Those communities actually can afford to meet their obligations. However, on the public housing side, those communities cannot afford to meet their obligations without their one point four million dollars collected.
Okay, and when you say that they can meet their obligations, that's the, those communities, management companies or other folks are?
Their obligations include things like their utilities, their landscaping, their maintenance and staff.
Okay, that is helpful. Thank you.
And my apologies.
That's okay. I mean, there's just a lot of numbers and they, they don't, they're not like super clear, so I just want to make sure I understand. Um, the seven hundred thousand dollars for the real estate sale that y'all are assuming will come in, is that the old office?
No.
What is that?
The seven hundred thousand dollars is related to a parcel of vacant land that we own near the, um. Edgemont, I want to say Edgemont, yes. Um, and it is vacant land. And we did receive approval from our Board of Commissioners to sell their land and are preparing that request, uh, for approval for submission to HUD.
And that's gonna be a private sale? Not to the city of Durham, huh?
No, it's not to the city of Durham.
Um. Okay. So we're looking at three point four million in total needed. The rest of the lists on there, we've got the real estate sale, we've got some, um. Some stuff coming in from D V I, uh, development funds. Um, are the rest of those funds certain outside of the city's one point five million that you're asking for today?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and yes, that's right.
And then I thought, so under the viable fixes section of the memo.
Mm hmm.
One point four million HUD shortfall funds.
Yes.
Earlier in the memo, I read that those shortfall funds were used up. Um, with, or that we didn't have the shortfall funds because of previous issues at McDougal. And so there's another bout of funding that comes annually or something. What is, what is that?
Shortfall. So what we explained earlier in the memo is that typically when our prop, our public housing communities get into a shortfall issue. They can rely on their actual reserves to help offset that issue. However, during the McDougal Terrace Crisis back in twenty twenty, we spent over ten million dollars on that crisis. And wiped out six million dollars in reserves across all of our public housing communities to do that. And so as a result, that six million dollars actually represents double what we would typically receive just for capital funds. In a year for all of our communities. And we eliminated that with just one property with one crisis. And so because we no longer have those shortfall funds to fall back on for our public housing communities. We were eligible for one point four million dollar grant from HUD for shortfall funding. However, with that shortfall funding, there are very specific uses for that, and that is one to make sure you increase your reserves back up and build that safety net.
Got it. And so what, the unit make ready requirement, what is that?
So that is one of them, um, is one of the issues is to make sure that we turn vacant units to rehouse families from our waiting lists. Um, and then there's also a lease enforcement component to make sure that we collect on that back rent.
Um, have there been any conversations about waiving the past due rent to allow folks to pay moving forward?
So according to, according to actually U S statute, we legally cannot waive rent. The residents of public housing have an obligation to pay their rent. Um, and that's based on the statutes. And so HUD has come out and on a number of occasions and mentioned that. We cannot waive rent. There are no authorized amnesty programs. And also considering the fact that, um, in that statute, it lines out that they have an obligation to pay that rent. In the past, HUD has also been reluctant to allow rental assistance because our households are already assisted. However, after some back and forth during COVID nineteen. However, after some back and forth during COVID-19, we were able and successful actually to get HUD to allow us to accept rental assistance.
Okay. Let's read through the rest of my notes real quickly. I'm, I don't know if this is a question for you or for the Deputy City Manager, Wimbush. The $500,000 in repurposed funds from the completed McDougal Terrace, can we talk about those?
I can. Um, so there were.
Oh, I see you're, uh, jumping up too. It's either way.
So the 500,000 during the McDougal Terrace crisis. We also had another global pandem- a global crisis start, and that was the pandemic. And as a result of that pandemic, we worked very hard to get families home. And we're very, we were very reluctant to send those families back to hotels with the transient community that actually were a part of the spread or rumored to be a part of the spread of this, at the time, mysterious pandemic. And so we halted on doing electrical repairs that would end up requiring us to put these families back in hotels. Um, and that was because of the nature of those repairs. We were holding to resume those repairs and having spent $500,000 of the money that was graciously granted by City Council before, um, to complete that work.
So the 500, sorry, sorry. So, and maybe this is, maybe this would be a better question for Mr. Johnson. So. We had a, there was a grant for $500,000 specific to ensure that folks aren't going to be moving into hotels during the time of the beginning of the COVID crisis. What happened to that? Did any of that money get spent?
No, it, well, Councilman Reginald J. Johnson, uh, Community Development Directive, actually is 1.5 million. Was the total amount. They've spent down to have $500,000 remaining. So they spent a million. They didn't spend the 1.1.5. That, that's the amount that's remaining.
And, and what was that spent on?
The electrical upgrades to the McDougal Terrace units so we can switch them over from gas to electric appliances. Um, it required upgrading each building, um, or shutting down the power to a building. And allowing, um, the electricians to go in and change over and upgrade the power so it could support electrical appliances.
Um, I have some comments, but I'm going to let my colleagues ask some questions first.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker. Uh, no, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilman Cabrio, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I had a, a quick question. I missed the, I know we're at 65% rent collection, but what was, what's the goal? I missed the target.
98%. In the memo, we do mention it is 98%. Um, however, our internal goal over time for this year, our short-term goal is to get up to 85%.
I don't have any other questions right now. I have comments, but I want to see who else has questions.
Moving on, uh, Councilmember Baker. Uh, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, colleagues. Madam, uh, Chief, good to see you. And thank you for the continued work y'all do at, uh, DHA. Just want to say very, very quickly, um, I appreciate Councilmember Riss, Primer, and, uh. Context setting, there, there's a narrative, Durham has an eviction cri- uh, problem. I think one time I read report, there were maybe like 900 a month we were leaving the state. Primarily from market apartments for people who had regular leases and somehow the DHA got lumped into, um, this narrative that there were massive evictions, uh, in DHA. So I, I appreciate you creating the, um, proper context. And, and, and I agree, one is one too many, particularly when you're dealing with economic hardship. Of course, if any of us, wherever you live, if you miss two or three mortgage payments, or if you miss your rent for a couple of months, things are going to happen. And it becomes, you know, much more exacerbated when you're dealing with, with a economic hardship, uh, to begin with. This is really not a controversial ask for me. I'm, I'm more than happy to support, um, not a grant, a loan uh, to DHA, the Durham City Council, and, and I know there's a, there's a perception out there. We do not micromanage and control the day-to-day operations of DHA. We do populate, uh, their board. Thank you, Councilmember Riss, for your, for your representation of us on that DHA board. We know the environment, uh, in our country. We, we're, we're living in an environment where our national leadership see people that live in public housing as a problem, uh, rather than as, as neighbors to be helped. And that is reflective in, in budget, uh, and funding, um, priorities. I was pleased when we were able to assist, uh, with the, the crisis in McDougal Terrace. Um, I'm pleased to, to assist now. I think it'll be money, um, well spent, although we can't. And I appreciate the questions, the probative questions about what's going on. And we should, as I do share as a city, you should expect those type of questions from us. Uh, but at the end of the day, we don't have day-to-day managerial, um, leverage, but we, we can write checks and we can spend money. And, and I think this is an appropriate use of the money. I want to thank the manager and the staff for putting us in a position, uh, to be able, uh, to do this. And I'll, I'll echo Councilmember Riss's, uh, appeal to, to support, uh, this loan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Do you have any other, go ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I, I had comments, but I didn't know we were moving to comments. Um. I just wanted to say that I appreciate this. I plan on supporting it. I do want to note that this is, and happy to do it. I understand the consequences of not doing it, right? The consequences of not doing it are that y'all are one of, you're like the largest landlord of affordable housing in the city of Durham. So, and as we helped at McDougal Terrace, we will help again. Um, but I do think that if we're going to have, um. That responsibility, then there, there should be strings attached. I understand that this is a loan. I have been privy to, um. Several conversations where, and I understand that we are, historically, DHA was a much larger uh, problem as far as eviction or lease enforcement. And over time, there has been a tremendous amount of work to improve, and I just want to note that. So when we initially started eviction diversion work, I want to say in 2018 or 2019 was the first budget. DHA's eviction numbers were in a very different state of play than they are today. And so I want to lift up that because I think it's, it's, it's in the right direction. I also want to lift up that we have to improve from 65%. I appreciate this short-term improvement to 85%. Folks get in, in, in binds, right? We all, we've all been there. Um, but we also understand that many of your, many of the tools that even to your point around. You know, historically not being even allowed rent assistance because it's already seen as folks on assistance, right, or getting support. And so within all of that context, I just want to highlight that. When there are offers from community, which have happened before, to do outreach to residents in DHA properties, because I understand that sometimes, you know, folks don't have trust in their landlord, right? And so they're maybe not going to do that payment program. They're maybe not going to trust that DHA employee to come. Uh, that's coming to their door for lots of reasons. I also understand DHA's position of people have to pay their rent or have to get on a payment plan. But moving forward, when, uh, and I say this because I know our community safety department has offered this. I know Durham Can has offered this. There have been a lot of community response to say, let us help you do the outreach. And so when community partners come in and ask for support, I need the answer to be yes. I need the answer to not have walls up. And I need the answer to be like, yeah, if you're going to come ask for money, then this is actually a collaboration and not, we just want the money. Don't tell us how to do our business. That's fine. If you don't want us to tell you how to do your business, then don't ask for money. That's kind of where I'm at with it. And so having been on this council along with Councilmember Freeman, Mayor Pro Tem, where we had to hand over 1.5 million dollars. Happy to do it. Families were hurting. Um. We have to be really cognizant of. We understand the risks, but you know, we, there are also responsibilities to taxpayers and to our community about what we expect when we have collaborations with other entities and that we have to hold a high standard and expect collaboration and truthfulness and transparency, even if that is, uh, the risk is, is what it is around, you know? We understand you're one of the largest, um, landlords with affordable housing units. And I also want to highlight the, the bond we passed, the vast majority of those dollars were to go and improve DHA properties. And so again, this city and these residents have made a commitment to DHA and we need DHA to do it back. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to appreciate Councilmember Cabiero noting that this is about partnership, right? This is not adversarial. We're, we're partners in the city of Durham in affordable housing, although we're different organizations, different, different, uh, legally organizations. The other thing, I do want to address the elephant in the room if it's, if it's there. Um, Mr. Snell could not be here today. It's because of a serious family emergency. If, if it weren't for that, he would be here today. So I appreciate the staff from DJ being here. And just want to, um, yes, our hearts go out to Mr. Snell's family.
Thank you for that.
Um, thank you. And my, my heart does go out to Mr. Snell and I appreciate him stepping up in leadership. I, I do want to, uh, just speak to, I appreciate Councilmember Cabiero making that point because I do think it's, it, it needs to be stated over and over again. Because 60 million of the 95 million went towards the housing authority sites. But we knew then that they needed 540 million to address the issues. And so this is going to be a context that plays out over and over again. What I'm concerned about is that we keep trying to push it to like, as if the rent collections could cover it. The rent collections could not cover this. And the needs of the organization are far, far more than what we're talking about with 1.5 million. So this loan is a very like drop in a bucket type of thing to, to address maintenance or to address operations. But you're talking about 500,000 a month in operations costs that you're missing. It said per month. And, um. We're in, we're in June. And so this is going to continue month after month after month. And we know that this is the 4,000 units, the 10,000 plus family, family members that live in our community. And we know that we're going to need to do more. I would love to have a different conversation about how other key players could be doing the support in addition to the city. Because it's not just a city, it's not just a city resource. And the people who live there are not just, um. Yeah, I'm not going to go there. I, I just want to make sure that we're not losing sight of like what the real issue is and that the federal government is still not, not able to fund or not funding the HUD public housing sites, that is the social housing of our city, in a way that it needs to. And so we're kind of, uh, folding in on each other or folding in on itself, the issues around eviction diversion or evictions or, um, you know, whatever the housing shortage is. And we're, we're still talking about the money that's missing and that money's not coming from anywhere but us. And so I think the city's ponied up a number of times and the city will continue to pony up. But we do need other key players in our community, our state and federal government to step up as well. And so I just, I just wanted to make sure I added that into the context of this conversation. I, I do appreciate Mayor Pro Tem and stating it clearly, like. This is where we are. So, thank you. I, I, I did want to ask a few more questions about the property that's being disposed of. And the process that you set up for that, because I do think it probably would be a great opportunity to do some of, some affordable housing with some of the funds we do have. If that's a conversation we need to have offline, that's fine. But I do want to make sure that I note that.
I have to speak to, and as well as Ms. Brown, uh, Mr. Brenner. The board, and I'm, I'm a non-voting member of the board, as you, as you know, we had a long discussion about that. And I think their first reaction was like, you know, we've got property that, that, that DHA owns and we're going to sell it. Why not use that for affordable housing? The reality is just where the lots are, the size of them, it's, um, it's, it would not be, how many units could we maybe put there?
Right now, what's being projected is what about?
16.
16.
16, yeah.
With 16, 80s as well.
That's what we're doing, yeah. So, but those are not, those are not all, those are, those are for sale properties, right? With ADI, yeah. So the, our ability to put substantial houses there, it's just, it's not a large lot. And so given the challenges that we're facing here and the, you know, the, you see the plan there for addressing this with different sources, it seemed like the prudent. The prudent action at this point was to simply sell the property, use the asset to raise a little cash to address the shortfall. So it's, um, with land that was not super, uh, super usable for a large number of public housing units anyway. But we did, we had a long conversation over a couple meetings about this because we recognize that, um, that land is valuable. And so simply selling it, it was not a willing decision for sure, yeah.
I gather that from the disposition vote, but I'm sure there's other properties that are owned. And so that conversation should be going on as well.
I'm going to pass it back over to Councilmember Cook, but just to that same vein. What are, uh? You all selling property is pretty rare. What are the chances of HUD approving this?
Say they're quite good. Um, these are some residual hope six lots, um, that have been sitting vacant for a very long time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cook.
Thank you. Um, this is not directed at any person in this room, but I'm just going to go through a few things because I think it's really important to talk about some real shortcomings of our housing authority in Durham. This is a historical issue. It's not limited to today. Um, and like my colleagues have said, this is. We, we, it feels like the most vulnerable of our population are being held hostage because we do have to dish this money out because the consequences of not doing it are so extreme. But this, this is taxpayer money and these, this, we keep saying it's a loan, it's a loan, it's not a grant. The, the, it's unsecured. There's a fifth forgiven at the end of every year. And the restrictions on it are nil. Uh, all properties must be served by adequate public utilities and adequate public access. That's not an enforceable, there's nothing enforceable about that. There's, it's, it's very vague. So it is in essence a grant. And what it is, is the taxpayers of Durham bailing out our housing authority, um, which has for years and years and years had substandard housing. We've been on failing lists at several of our properties. In, in numbers that far exceed, exceed anybody else in the state. Um, and currently we have people living in situations that are absolutely unacceptable. If you talk, want to talk about non-payment of rent, this really, really gets my goat, y'all, because if you have seen a ledger from the housing authority, you would understand why people are not paying their rent. The ledgers are unbelievably dense, they're hard to read. They have things that no one knows how to substantiate. There's so much turnover that nobody can get any answers to any of the questions that they want. During the COVID pandemic, and again, not personal to anyone up here, but during the pandemic, DHA was unreachable. Nobody could get anybody on the phone. If you go to DHA, there was nobody there. Now it's staffed again, closes randomly without any warning. There's time limits on the door that said when they're coming back, folks aren't there. I've got people who are on, potentially facing unhoused situations going over and over and over again and cannot get access to anybody at the housing authority. We've also got folks who are having to pay to go take showers elsewhere because they've got little water bugs that are crawling up from their drains. We've got families who are living in mold inhabited spaces because there's water seeping from the floors and the walls. And this is not a little bit of a thing because I was in a mold-ridden, um. Office unit for five years and I have pretty serious health problems from it. Um, imagine if this is where you're raising your family and your children are having to be there. We are letting people linger in places that are unsafe for them. Um, and then we're going to sit here and talk about unpaid, like non-payment of rent? And I asked that question to you earlier because I know that across the state that there has been issues in collection of rent, but it's nowhere close to 66% that is here. So unless we're going to sit here and say that Durham public housing residents don't want to pay their rent more than other constituents across the state, then this is a managerial issue. And that's what it is. I'm never going to sit here and say that I think Durham residents don't want to pay their rent as opposed to the residents that live in public housing in Raleigh or in Orange County. Sorry, I just don't think that's true. Um, folks are paying to go get showers elsewhere. They're having maintenance things put on their ledgers every time that there is a maintenance issue. And even if it's like consistent maintenance issues because there's bad plumbing in some of these places, those charges are getting assessed to people's ledgers. Like, this is a, a very longstanding issue and a very, very complicated one. And when we talk about it up here and we're talking about these numbers and we're talking about these numbers, like, these are real people's lives. Real, real people's lives, real people trying to raise families and trying to get out of generations of public housing. But that's what we're seeing. We're seeing people just staying in public housing for generations. So we're not doing our job of getting people out of there and we're not doing our job of keeping people housed. And in places that are, I mean, the memo says decent, but I, I have been to several units I would not even describe that way. And, and it does feel really hard because this contract doesn't have anything in it that's going to implicate the housing authority or, or force them to be, uh, more collaborative in the future. Not that I'm saying that I don't think y'all are. And Ms. Brown knows that since she's come on board, we have had great conversation. Um, but there's nothing in here to enforce anything. And if DHA comes to us in two more years and asks for another 1.5 million dollars. We're going to say yes again because. we're going to say yes again because this is, this is what we have. And this is all of our affordable housing. So it just, to me, it feels like a stronghold. These are taxpayer dollars. We're bailing out just a, a long mismanaged organization. And it is hard, it is hard. I know that we, I heard folks say that it's not hard. It doesn't feel like a complicated vote. It is, it's hard for me. It is a hard, complicated vote for me because I have seen where people are living. And these are not just clients. I want to be really, really clear that when you work in this space, what happens is that when you're out in the community, people talk to you. I go to do, I go to do informational sessions or just literally being in the world, people come talk to me. I have heard things from pretty much every public housing space that I just makes me want to cry every single night, the, the things that we allow folks to live in. It's just unbelievable. So it is hard for me. My ask would be in the future that when we get things like this, that we do put a little bit more substance into the contracts. If it's a grant and it has requirements, fine. It doesn't have to be structured as a loan. Again, it's a forgivable loan, 0% interest. It is pretty much a grant. We need, we should call it what it is. And so if we want to have more say in these conversations moving forward, I think that that might be something that we should talk about. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Today is just the loan commitment. We will have an agreement and we've had discussions with DHA Anthony Snell about the types of requirements we'll have in the actual agreement, with his monthly in-person financial meetings, as well as financial reports. All what we've heard from you all today in terms of collaboration, expectations around providing those reports to us, we can incorporate those items into the agreement. So we appreciate your feedback today. We've already listed as requirements that our finance department, Tim Plora and his team have asked for, our utility billing folks have asked for. All of those requirements we will negotiate as part of the agreement. And we'll have monthly financial reports with them.
In addition, the, the HUD compliance audits that, that DHA has to file with HUD, we've, we've set expectations and deadlines about their ability to have clean audits. Those are also part of the agreements as well. So I, I do want to reemphasize what DC Mwin Bush has shared that I, I do believe there is a difference between a grant and a forgivable loan and, and that there are, there are expectations that DHA must meet to satisfy those agreements. And, and those are ones that, that our staff have been careful to negotiate into this.
Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. I appreciate staff's response to that. And I know that we all need DHA to succeed. This entire city needs DHA to succeed because we don't have a lot of recourse. I do want to thank Councilmember Riss for being the liaison and former Councilmember Johnson because I know that that's a hard word to sit on. It's, it's not easy work. And then finally, I just want to say this because we're in this predicament because the federal government, which has many, like much larger coffers than we do, abandoned social housing, right? We're here because they have decided that folks don't deserve housing. We've been fighting for housing as a human right. I mean, FDR included it in his second bill of rights back during the depression. And we've still not been able to, to rise to the challenges as the richest country probably in the history of the world. So I, while I don't like to spend too much time on, on, you know, I like to focus on what we can do here locally. I just want folks to, when, when we see like, when we see these things and we see what we're getting asked to do as local taxpayers, it's because the federal government for decades has abandoned its responsibility, even though we all pay taxes. And it has abandoned its responsibility to ensure that, that people who live in the United States have a high quality of life. And there are many, many countries that are much less affluent than we are in this world who have provided more for their citizens and residents. So Durham will keep doing what it does because that's what we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I thank my colleagues. I also want to just, just register my vote of confidence in this staff to make sure that we have the proper guardrails and protect. This is not our first time doing this. So we, we've got a little experience in, in making sure that our interests are protected. I appreciate everything that, that Councilmember Cook said. I, I take her at face value when she said she wasn't really talking to anybody in this room. So I'll try and glean lessons anyway from, from the generalized, universal statement. As, as a member of this council who actually lived in public housing growing up, yeah, I can affirm, public housing oftentimes sucks. And it's been for a long time, for decades. So I, I welcome those who, who have dialed in now recently to, to the plight of those who, who live and were born and raised in public housing. Councilmember Caballero is absolutely right. There's been historic disinvestment in public housing. I do want to just remind folk that the people who live in public housing are also taxpayers. It's their money too. You know, and I've been on this council long enough to see a lot of money spent on wonderful festivals downtown and, and all kinds of cool things for the sake of quality of life for our taxpayers. I don't, I don't balk at that. I don't balk at putting protected bike lanes in neighborhoods, even though a lot of people I know don't ride bikes in some of these neighborhoods. I don't balk at that. So when these taxpayers need something, I am just as excited to, to spend taxpayer money for taxpayers that live in McDougal Terrace and Cornwallis and other public housing projects. Because that's, that's what we ought to do, I think, as a government. But as fiduciaries of the city, we absolutely have a responsibility to, to ask the tough questions and to, to make sure that the guardrails are in place, that we're not just throwing money willy-nilly. I can tell you, I've been on the council for a minute. I can make a much stronger case for spending this money than I can for some of the other things we spend money on over the years at a much higher sustained recurring rate for some of those things. But that's another discussion. But we keep plugging. You know, we wish, we, we need, we, DHA has to succeed. And I'll, I'll finish by saying this. There are some counties who, who have better success or higher rates of success in collecting rent because they're much more aggressive. They choose violence. We're Durham. And, and according to our values, we're, we're a lot more lenient. We're a lot more softer in our approach. And we still get dinged anyway. So, so, you know, I think we should still continue to be Durham and help people when they need it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, I just want to appreciate Councilmember Cook's comments as well. And just make sure that I, I put a point or a pin and just acknowledging, I don't think the issue is whether or not the fund should go to DHA. The issue is whether or not DHA is going to find a way to actually do the things that need to be done for the residents in those, those communities. So I think it needs, I would love to have a real fluid conversation going on about the maintenance needs. We have a whole general services. I mean, it has to be more than just the dollars is what I'm saying. Like, there, there, this is not, it's not lost on me, the types of issues that I've heard about in the housing authority locations. And I know everything is about trade, you know, dollars for service, dollars. But there has to be some, like I'm going to keep saying, there are other key players, other key partners that could be involved. And we, we need a clear understanding of what needs are. Housing authority location. I know that those folks aren't, the substandard housing is substandard because of the system that it's in. But that doesn't mean that people should have to live like that. So that's all. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. So I'm just going to make everybody upset. Putting it out there. There has to be accountability everywhere, starting with you all as an agency. I trust that staff are going to put guardrails in place. But I'm supporting this because my expectation is, yeah, you have to be accountable. And you have to ensure your residents are accountable as well. I'm not going to act like, you know, this, let me back up and ask a question. What is the average rent that's paid?
$249, right? That was, yeah. I get that from you, yeah, yeah.
$249 a month?
That's correct.
Okay. So, average, okay? So we're not going to act like this is going to be Trinity Park. All right? So I'm not even going to do that. At the same time, it's $250 average. All right? And to my understanding, there are some rents that have not even been paid since the pandemic. So I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make this like, oh, you blaming the residents? I'm not necessarily blaming anyone. But what I am saying is this is America in 2025. And if we're going to start putting some parameters in place, not only will you all have to be held, like, held responsible or accountable as an agency, your residents have to as well. Right? That's why we're putting so many resources in place for people to take advantage of them. So we have programs available right there at Durham Tech. I will say we need to expand these programs. But I want to know that people have taken advantage of every possible resource? If you're going to pay average $250 a month in rent? And I don't want to hear, well, some people just can't. Some people probably can't. I, I know that's a reality, but, but many can. And I'm not going to have this conversation without saying that. If you're paying on average $250 a month in rent and you haven't paid in four years, then therefore, I don't, I don't, I don't want to hear about that when it's time to give 1.5 million. I want to hear about that when it's actually happening so we can know the root cause of that, so we can support that. So instead of like just keeping it really high level and saying, well, you know, people just, they may not be able to. Why can't they? And that's the level of information I want to know. I want to know why can't someone pay 100 bucks a month in rent? And I want to be able to provide resources and support for that individual. Because if we're not providing support for that individual and they can't even pay $100 a month or on average $250 a month, then we are dropping the ball way before the, way before today at 1.5 million. All right? This is not, I don't expect marble counters, counters. I don't expect valet trash. I don't, I don't expect, I mean, it'd be nice to say, yes, you know, people should be able to live in those, with all those types of amenities. I agree. But I'm also going to be realistic. So I, I, this is, this is, this is where we, we, we talk around or above what the actual issue is. And I want to get right to it. If somebody is not paying, and they're not, and their average payment is 250, I want to be able to support them. And I don't think 100, I don't think 1.5 million is enough. I don't. And, and, and I agree with my colleagues. I said it earlier, the federal government is at blame here. And it was at blame a long time ago when you incentivized poverty and you penalized people for trying to get up on their own two feet. You, majority of your families are black?
That's correct.
What's the percentage?
Over 90%.
Over 90%. You cannot have a two-parent household, a two-income household in public housing. Because you're going to break the threshold. You're going to over, you're going to go over the threshold. But that threshold is so far from being able to be self-sustained that the policy itself has literally put their knee on people's necks. That is the reality here. So from the federal government actually penalizing folks being able to be self-reliant to the point of, you know, here we are trying to, trying to like, we have to bail out again. Like, there are a lot of issues here. It is, I, I'm, I'm with Councilmember Cook here. It is, it is a very, it, it's a complex matter. Now, am I going to even doubt whether I'm going to support this or not? Absolutely, I'm going to support it. But I need to say this. You're going to have to collect your rents. And if someone can't pay it, then I want to know. There are over 500 or 600 churches in this community, in this city. There's no way in the world we should have the amount of poverty that we have. How many people was on your waiting list?
For public housing, we're looking, well, for our leased housing, the housing that we lease to the community, we're crossing about 6,000 households. Yes.
Okay, so you realize what's happening here. So, so there is almost 6,000 people on a waiting list. We have some that haven't paid rent that's averaged $250 a month since the pandemic. And we're just now, today, having to do another 1.5 mil. There needs to be more communication. So my conditions here, I want transparency and I want a goal and a plan to get to sustainability. All right? That, that has to happen. And also, want to tap on this, and, and this is, this is not related to rent. But I also want to know how we can be better collaborating partners when it comes to crime. It's not a secret, and I know folks don't want to talk about it, but the concentration is also in your neighborhoods. I want to know how we can better support that. So I want the conversations to be much more open. I don't want this to go another four years with people struggling and we don't know why. Because we can put, we, we are, lately, I've been calling this the city of Oprah. As this budget is forming out, because we're, we're putting a lot of money to a lot of things. And I want to make sure that, you know, I've said it over and over and over. I want folks in this city to be able to enjoy a decent quality of life. And so I, I'm going to support it today, but it's with conditions. I want to know what your plan is to get more, to become more sustainable. And it's going to take some tough love. There's no way in the world somebody's going years without paying their rent and they're not even paying over two, barely over $250 a month. There's, there are too many resources in this community to say, well, what if somebody can't? No such thing when you have all these external resources. It may have been Councilmember Freeman or someone was talking about, there needs to be other people stepping up. So I'll do my job as, at convening resources around the community in collaboration with you all. But it, it, no, no longer, you know, there is almost 6,000 people on your waiting list. There are folks that haven't paid their rent since the pandemic. The average rent is $250 a month and you've only evicted six people. I'm not being a cheerleader for eviction, but I am saying there needs to be a much more functioning system, a functioning organization. This is really about the health of your organization. Because the money is, is a joke. The amount is a joke for what the need is. So I, that's, that's where I stand on it. I, at some point, we start to promote enablement. And that, and that can't, that just can't happen. And if you tell me I don't have to figure out something, I'm going to sit there and not do it. So people who are struggling and not paying their rent, they need to either pay or say why, so we can help them. That's when I, that's where I want to make sure we're much more intentional and much more direct. But, but just not doing anything, not saying anything and not paying anything. And I know that Mr. Scott, before he left, went around with neighborhood, community members, pastors, organization leaders knocking on doors. I know what happened. When doors were slammed in their face, people spat on, I know. But also, there's a lot of frustration here because people should not live in these conditions. During the, during the McDougal Terrace crisis, I became intimately involved over there, intimately. And had to go in those places. People should not live that way. So I hope that we can figure this thing out. I like where you're going with, you know, mixing market rate in with your units and the new projects forward. But federal housing, public housing, as we know it, should never be like this again. All right? Thank you. We're going to move on. All right. Number 11, Councilmembers Cook and Riss.
Sure. Okay. I only have like one and a half questions, so should be brief. So I read that out of the three that folks that answered the RFP, one was ineligible or one withdrew and then one didn't meet requirements. Can you just talk a little bit about how Habitat scored? And if we've done similar work with them in the past?
I'm going to bring one of my, that's one of my staff members who actually reviewed the applications as part of the process to come and speak to. So, so Dr. Pullum and Kevin Easter. Actually, Dr. Pullum is the project manager for Neighborhood Stabilization. Kevin Easter serves as a project manager and is team leader. And they actually reviewed the application. And so they can speak to the, what Habitat had to offer in terms of the work that's being done.
Good afternoon, Dr. Michael Pullum, Community Development Manager for Neighborhood Stabilization.
Good afternoon, Dr. Michael Pullum, Community Development Manager for Neighborhood Stabilization. Uh, you are correct. The, uh, other applicants, the other two did, uh, actually, one withdrew and one didn't meet the qualifications. But Habitat was the remaining proposal which a review team did score. The, uh, scoring for Habitat, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but they were high. They met the, uh, conditions of the RFP in each of the categories. We also felt comfortable due to the history of their work with our department that they could, uh, indeed administer the program for us.
Thank you. Um, is, is there anybody from Habitat here?
Yes, there are at least one or two people here, the ED.
I have one quick question for y'all, since we've made you sit through this.
Please.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm the interim ED at Habitat right now, Carlina DeNanan.
Um, Will Everhart, I'm the construction director, or excuse me, I'm the repairs director.
Um, so I just, a quick question. I know that y'all have done a lot of contracting with us in the past. Um, and I also know that, uh, there's been some conversation around like capacity issues in terms of workload, and I was hoping y'all could speak to that, um, ensuring that we have the capacity for this, how it fits into your normal, um, sort of operations that you're already doing as well.
Okay, I'm gonna punt to Will, since he's the expert in that.
We, um, have our work cut out for us to do more, since this is a larger contract than we're currently under in terms of units per year. So we, we're aware, we need, we need to grow our ability to deliver this, uh, this opportunity.
Okay, but you feel like you have capacity? Are you gonna have to be doing hiring? Like, what, what?
We will have to hire, and we'll also have to look at, um, subbing out more of the work, um, that we currently self-perform.
Okay.
And the team that we've got right now, they, they're experts in what they do. Um, I'm just gonna name some names. Uh, we have a, a person working for us by the name of Shay. And when she described to me going into a home that needed repairs and being able to offer different options as it relates to tiles, and what that meant to the person that was getting that repair, who never, ever, ever had the option when it came to their house, that meant so much. So we've got people working with us that not only can do the work, but they're missionaries as it relates to repairing. We're also really big with generational wealth. So as we repair these homes, if we think about what we were talking about here today, all of that goes into our generational wealth. These are particularly homes that are around 30% AMI that we're doing the repairs on. So after we do the repairs, we also do a lot of the estate planning to make sure those homes are also protected so they can go generationally. So when we look at it, um, uh, Councilor Cook, we're looking at it holistically.
Thank you. Those are my questions, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rist?
Yeah. Ms. Mayor, per jem, um, thank you for your comments, Councilmember Cook. Thank you all for being here. I had some of the same questions about capacity. Um, and I, um, I mean, I appreciate the need, as you expressed, Ms. DeNanan. Um, and I appreciate the, the long history of Habitat having great impact in our community. Um, I am also aware, I think there have been like maybe six executive directors in the last five years. So there's been a lot of turnover at Habitat. So I do have questions about the capacity to lead this work and complete it as, as, um, as planned. And I guess my question, this may be for Mr. Johnson, is that, um, as I read the, the documents, I think I got this right. So this is a three-year contract with Habitat, correct?
Yes.
And is that, is that a three-year contract? Is that like a, with three-year contract with one-year renewables? We just had a conversation actually about, about sort of, um, about cooperation and about sort of responsibility and sort of, um, uh, being able to sort of deliver. And so what I want to make sure is that we have a contract that's written such that we can ensure that Habitat is delivering on this. And so can you please say more about how the contract is structured?
So this is a three-year contract. Uh, with all of the, uh, contracts that we have, we do have our performance standards, and we can evaluate and seek to terminate contracts, uh, if there are, or this particular contract, if there's not a performance, uh, in terms of meeting the goals. There are annual goals, uh, as well as a three-year goal.
So, so those three-year goals are, or those, so there's annual goals in the contract?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Let's, let's, because I don't think that's-
The total is a minimum of 113.
Total, right, but, but like, do we have annual goals within that?
Okay, one third, anticipating one third for each year.
Right, so, and so, so you're gonna look at that every year to make sure that year to year, Habitat is meeting the goals of this contract?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what I will make sure, thank you.
Thank you.
But I would just say, um, I appreciate this, um, contract following the conversation and just acknowledging like this is home repair for folks who are at the margins, who are in homeownership by, by a lot of grace. And, um, living in a neighborhood with a number of Habitat homeowners, I know that as the age of the home gets older, so do they. And so their ability to navigate these repairs is different. And so I do want to say that I don't know if the 113 projects, um, how that's being evaluated, and if 1.7 million is even enough. But, I, I mean, this is the beginning, and we'll see what happens. But I do think that it should be an ongoing conversation. I'm just acknowledging that that 113 could be done in one year. And, yeah.
All right. Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry. 21. Amendment to inter-local cooperation agreement?
Mr. Mayor, I believe item 11 had public speakers to it.
Oh, did it? Oh, yep, you're right, I'm sorry.
There should be at least two, I believe, in that.
Uh, you have three here, uh. No, that's number six. What? I missed this first sheet already. Okay, yeah. Just one, uh, is there a, um, does that look like Vanessa Couch? Vanessa Couch, remember? Yeah. Welcome.
Now let's make sure your microphone's on.
I'm gonna move over there.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much for welcoming me here today. I want to tell you what brings us here today. I'm here today with my husband. I want to show this when the camera comes over on my side, which is what I've been watching the other presenters have. I want to make sure that I show you, even though this is a little bit small, I hope you can see it. This is leaving home, sour driveway, it's joined with my sister-in-law. What the city has proposed and what was passed by this, uh, body with the consent agenda vote was the placement of a 24-inch pipe force main with 24,500, nearly near feet of wastewater and sewer, right here in our driveway. So we understand that Durham is growing. We understand that the property values have gone up 70%. We pay taxes here, and they keep going up. But someone offered us, and it felt like municipal, municipal bullying, they said, we're gonna give you and your sister-in-law $5,000 for a point three acres so that we can put this massive system through your yard. I happen to know and have been reading that, um, this is us when we were trying to arrive home. So we would have to be right in the middle of the sewer system. So I happen to see that there are 31, uh, spills every year. And so I'm, I'm trying to understand how it is that we weren't invited to come. We, all of the communications and notices have been leaked. Uh, we don't get them on time, and it's been no, uh, negotiations about whether or not engineers can vary and differ in the method for having these, uh, lift stations and force mains. In fact, we've had to hire engineer, yes, sir.
All right, so I, I have to keep us germane to the topic. This one is not it, but I don't want to cut you off. I don't want to, I want to make sure what you're speaking to is your issue, which is not this one. So I'm going to ask the, uh, Mr. Lamar to speak with you directly. This is-
Well, I thought I was called up, Mr. Mayor, because that's the only issue I have signed up to talk about.
I have you for number 11?
Yes, sir, that's my, that's the same-
For Habitat?
Yes, sir. Habitat?
Mm-hmm.
No, sir, I'm not Habitat. Uh, we're here because of Sui's man.
Okay, so yeah, that's, so we're on another item. So I want to make sure that your, your public comments are actually addressed.
Yes, sir, I don't have any-
Yeah, not given to another side, but I, I want you to be heard. I want you to get your address, your issued address. So are you all working on this, Mr. Attorney?
Um, yes, we have been in communication with, um, with Ms. Couch.
Do you have someone from your office that can speak with her to the side?
We, we can, if she wants to speak to someone right now, I can, I can confirm that we can, we can have that done.
Please.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to know as well.
Thank you.
Okay, and colleagues, I just want to remind you, there is an email in our inbox about this. It's very detailed. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
I'll just make sure to state that the, the details seem very divergent, and so I just want to make sure there's some reconciliation on the actual, like, what's happening.
You asked for a briefing, right?
Yeah.
So you'll get a briefing. Okay. Um, that's my next one. Now 21.
Good afternoon, Logan Small, General Services Department.
Good afternoon, Logan, good to see you. Thank you, thank you for the work. You and your, your team continue to do first. Just a couple of questions on the side. And first off, I want to commend the folk who reside, um, in our public housing complexes for making known what they want, uh, with the use of taxpayer money, through, through participatory budgeting, wonderful initiative. I, I want to congratulate them also for pushing back on narratives that would suggest that they were increasing surveillance in their own neighborhoods with what they want is what they want. Um, so I want to congratulate them on that and their choice. I do want to ask a quest, a couple of just technical questions on the cameras that are being installed. And, and without divulging too much operational security, are, will they be monitored all the time? Or are they just recording things?
So I'll let, I have DHA staff here, I'll let them speak about their operations.
Don Albert, Fraud and Security Manager.
Good to see you.
Yes, sir, to answer your question, yeah, it will be monitored by myself and, uh, DPD as well, with the detectives on the ground as well.
24/7?
24/7, yes.
So, so will the people monitoring them, will they be actually on premises or remote?
Remote, we can use VP in excess, remote, remote.
Will they be, if the, if the cameras were to pick up, um, something happening in real time, will there be a, an ability to dispatch?
Uh, no, sir, no, sir. With that, with as, we receive a notification on what happens. I will have, uh, DPD's investigators sort of assigned to that case. They'll reach out to me, and depending what time it is, I just go ahead and, um, execute whatever they, we're asking for. Whatever it is, they want footage for a certain amount of time, I just get up and provide that footage to them. Or we have a meeting together, wherever it's downtown 602 or at DHA, and we're just collaborating, get whatever information needed, just provide it to them.
But you said there, there will be, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, there will be real time, there will be a physical person watching?
No, sir, it won't, we will have a software actually watching them. So it'll be recording 24/7, but once something is identified, when the event has been identified-
After the fact?
Yes, sir, basically react.
Right. Um, will they, will the cameras be trained on courtyard areas or doors?
We have strategic areas, uh, I don't want to mention here. Uh, stickers that myself and DPD are identifying, and, uh, certain campuses are placed as strategic areas where crime is uptight. And, uh, far as lighting as well with this particular package. And we observe those areas until we can have a, a good handle on those.
So the cameras will be recording?
Yes, sir.
But the footage, the, the images that they capture will not come into play until after something happens for, for investigatory purposes?
Yes, sir, we have a 60-day archive, and so we can, uh, capture everything out from 60 days prior.
Okay. That's it, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. UPO 24.
Was it a resident? Kato Porter?
Katie, uh, yes, uh, virtual. Kato Porter, can you hear me? I'm on the online, I'm on call, okay. Kato Porter? Can you hear me?
He's unmuted.
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Uh, we can now, welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Uh, just very briefly, um, uh, myself and my husband are the homeowners of this unit, which is up for condemnation by the city to allow for expansion of Maureen Road. Our, our particular situation is different than the other homes on the road, and I've had trouble getting through to Tara or Lance Atelix or anyone else to understand our situation. Um, we live in a three-bedroom home that the city recently increased the tax assessment to $450,000. And our home has a small driveway, which has to accommodate all of the parked cars. Uh, the, because there's no street parking on Maureen Road and the, uh, and there's also no nearby street parking, if you're familiar with the area. The proposed expansion will, uh, basically reduce our driveways, can only fit a single car, and it will also take away the turnaround spot that allows us to safely exit and enter our home. Um, and it will put a, replace that area with a bike lane. And so, uh, the city, in our view, has offered a really, really unfair offer of $15,000, which they increased to, uh, $25,000, so I don't have that in writing. Um, for, for an expansion project that will essentially make our home unlivable and unsellable. Um, to have a three-bedroom home that only can park a single car that can't even safely enter and exit the road with no nearby street parking would be devastating for us. Um, and make it hard for us to sell our home, certainly not at the $450,000 that we're currently being taxed at. Um, so we want to object this condemnation, and we're asking for the city to negotiate with us in good faith to both allow us to have a safe way to exit our home and to provide us with fair compensation for the project. That's all I have to say.
All right, okay. And, yeah. Yeah. Is there any staff response for this, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Tara Nichols with General Services, the Real Estate Division. And I'm a senior, uh, real estate officer working with, um, this property.
So, uh, could you just give me a little more context based on what the, uh, or is there a response to the resident's concern?
Uh, there is negotiation still going on. And so at this time, I'd just like to defer to the city attorney's office. They've been talking to the attorney that's representing this couple. Um, the attorney is Keyan Sack. Um, I was informed yesterday that he would not be available today. But he is aware, and there has been ongoing conversations, I think, with, the attorney's office, the city attorney's office.
Um, I, I have not, to my knowledge, we have not communicated with Mr. Sacks yet, but I've seen his name in some of the emails. Um, as far as the, uh, the process goes, this, the, the issue that the property owner raises is the very issue that would be, um, litigated if the case goes to condemnation. Right now, this action is just to get authorization to give a notice of condemnation, then to file. If the parties can negotiate, um, the actual, uh, not the actual, but if they can agree on, um, the damages that, uh, uh, may result from the project, then there wouldn't be a need to file. But even if we do file condemnation, that's the entire issue that's litigated is, is to what extent has the city, um, damaged your property by the subject taking? So that is in discussion. It has not really yet come to our office yet. This is the very first point at which we may become aware of a case, but I, I don't have any details of this case. And I, I think that all, all we know is what's in the, um, the city attorney's office, what's in the, um, uh, agenda item at this time.
Thank you, that's helpful in the, uh, understanding the process better. Councilmember Cook?
Hi, Ms. Nichols, um, I, this is a great opportunity for me to ask a question, which I had already, uh, wanted to ask previously, but we're in the middle of a revaluation year. What does, at what point do offers reflect the new valuations of land? And, and how do y'all? What does, at what point do offers reflect the new valuations of land, and, and how do y'all work with the change of those values?
Alicia Bass, General Services, how are you all? So in, in response to your question, um, we got an appraisal, so we have an appraiser go out, and, um, in this particular case, Telx, um, they are responsible for getting those appraisals, was it, was this prior to?
Prior to the revaluation.
Right, so that can be a part of the negotiation, but effective for all of our current projects, we are using the, uh, current, uh, tax value, the land value.
So starting July one, we will use the new one?
No, we're starting, we've already started using it.
We started using?
We started using it.
Okay, but at the time that this appraiser went, it was before?
Right, at the, at the time this project was, um, started, that, that was the evaluation that was done at that time. Um, the negotiations that have been going on reflect an increase in the property values, or an increase in the value, is that correct? An increase in the values of the property?
Yes, I saw that it was increased from fifteen to twenty-five. Yeah, I mean, and, and the question is, because I feel like we, we've seen several of these, we've got a couple of bond, bond projects with, um, and we're having to do some condemnations and, and easements, and, um, there's been a couple of things that have come back to us of like, well, our properties now value, you know, we had a seventy, an average seventy-four percent increase in residential property value, so, does, did we initiate the increase, is that something we retroactively do when we see that there's been a valuation change?
That is something that, that is something that we do, uh, initiate.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, thanks, Ms., Ms. Bass and, uh, Ms. Nichols for being here, and thanks to Mr. Porter for joining us by phone. I just want to understand, I'm looking at the attachment here, and I want to understand, try to understand this. So it, it does look like, as you said, Mr. Porter, from the attachment here, it shows, um, eleven ninety-five square foot of temporary construction easement, I'm sorry, proposed concrete driveway, right? That's the eleven ninety-five, correct? And then there's also then separately five hundred and twenty-three square foot of new right-of-way to be acquired, so that, so essentially, it is taking about a third of that, what had been the parking area for this unit, is that correct?
Yes.
And this is also, so, and obviously, like, you can't park on that new bikeway, right?
That is correct.
Right, because then this is a big issue that's come up separately with a lot of folks in the bike community, seeing as we are building out our bike lanes, a lot of folks parking on bike lanes, so clearly you can't park on this. But I guess I'm just wondering for the, for the owner, in that remaining eleven ninety-five square foot, you're saying how many cars could be parked there? Mr. Porter?
I think he said one.
It did, it's down to one, he said.
Yeah, Mr. Porter, are you still there? Yeah, I guess I'm wondering how, like, how wide that is.
Sorry, I'm back, I was muted, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you now, yeah.
Yeah, uh, it can, it can basically fit one car, uh, the, the problem is also that the driveway itself is so that the, in the proposed, uh, construction plans, the entry is so narrow, and there's not enough depth to it that you could squeeze another car around it. So if you could somehow, yeah, uh, c- cross the grass median and cross the bike lane, you could probably find a way to squeeze a second car in there, but not, it, not, you can't actually do that with the current plans. And to, to respond to Tara Nichols' response, that, uh, there had, they did not initiate a, uh, increase in their offer based on the assessment until our lawyer asked them to do so, and I, I don't understand what's happening on the city's end or Telx's end, but at no point have I felt like anyone's actually talking to me or negotiating with me. We've only been told fifteen thousand is your final offer, nineteen thousand is your final offer, no one wants to talk to me about, like, what this is doing to our family and, and how, and how we can work together, you know, I'm, I'm not interested in being obstructionist, I'm interested in a solutions-oriented approach, and I have not experienced that from anyone representing Telx or the city, and, and there's been no, no one's talked to me, or my lawyer.
I understand, yeah, thank you, thank you.
And may I respond to that? Um, because he is represented by an attorney, our office cannot speak with him, and that's why we've turned over to our City Attorney's Office.
I'm sorry, so for all the other property owners that don't have attorneys, you're talking to them?
We do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, one, one more question.
Yeah, just a more general question. And I assume we can, we can wait on some answers with communication between the attorneys, uh, specific to this case, but in general, you know, obviously, governments need to be able to condemn land and, and, uh, build roads and, and change, change the, um, configuration of those roads. Maureen doesn't have a sidewalk, so this is for bikes and pedestrians. Are there, are there typically, uh, you know, attempts through design, because I see that this, in this particular area, there, there's actually a turning lane there. There are attempts in the design of these to, um, generally try and limit the need for condemnation of property adjacent to the right-of-way?
Um, in terms of the design, we would leave that, um, to our Public Works Department to answer that question. Josh is, Josh Barrett is here with us.
And I'm not, uh, trying to micromanage, I'm just asking as a sort of general question.
Good afternoon, Josh Barrett, Public Works Department, I'm the Engineering Manager over Contract Management Group. Uh, so generally, we do try to accommodate as much as we can, we don't want to impact residents any more than we need to, whether it be right-of-way or temporary construction easement, um, permanent drainage easement. This road is a state road, so it does follow NC DOT standards, and so we don't have a ton of wiggle room with many of our design facets for that, um, including this one.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Can I a- ask a follow-up question? Could, could you elaborate a little bit on, I know this happens before it gets to your group, but on the design process, could you, could you talk generally on the opportunity folks would have had to, to comment on the design before it got to, uh, engineering and contracting? Just, just to give the council a sense of where these conversations begin, because I know we, we, we start in a planning phase, we move to a design phase, we move to a contracting phase, then this is really the end where we're acquiring real estate, I think it'd be helpful just to talk a little bit about how a neighborhood might be engaged in both those design questions before we ever really get to a real estate phase.
Yes, absolutely, uh, so generally, a lot of our city projects start with the Transportation Department, who do the different studies, bike walk study, and they engage the community on, on where they see, you know, need for, um, bicycle circulation, pedestrian circulation, and they set up priorities and then have those community, uh, input meetings for that.
Thank you, and I, I'll just elaborate a little bit, uh, from my experience with the city, so condemnation is, is absolutely the last option, and a rarely-used tool in the vast scope of the amount of real estate that we negotiate and acquire for projects. I think my experience is that, you know, from, from the beginning of any project, you, maximizing our ability not to impact private property is always one of the key design considerations. And then when it is determined that we need to acquire property, or easements, or temporary easements, it is always through a negotiation process that is based on exactly the same principles of, of fairness and, uh, and, um, using appraisals in the community relying on private property owners to represent the value of their property, so, you know, I, I want to assure the council, I, I don't think that the city has an aggressive approach towards using condemnation, nor when we do so that we try to negotiate the least possible price, while obviously price affordability is something we have to consider, I, I don't think the city has a history of, of offering low-ball offers or anything, so I, I do encourage, I'm sure our attorney's office will engage the attorneys for this gentleman and hear any concerns that the, this offer is not fair, and the, the condemnation process is, i- exists so that the courts may determine what the fair price is, and if we have gotten it wrong, that is something that we would be bound to, and Fred, I, I don't know if you or our real estate staff want to talk anymore about just the general condemnation process and what rights are afforded to a private property owner through that process. This does not dictate the city's price, it simply indicates that the city intends to move forward while the value is determined by the courts, could, could you elaborate a little?
I can, absolutely, you, you are one hundred percent correct, uh, um, Council, um, Manager Ferguson, that the objective of the city is to pay, um, the property owner the, um, the, uh, fair price, the, um, adjust compensation for what the taking is. As far as the communication between the real estate and the property owner and the transition to the city's, city attorney's office, we are communicating regularly as cases, um, evolve. This is, at this point, this is where the City Attorney's Office does get more, more, um, directly involved in the, uh, discussions and, and, um, communications. With regard to this particular case, uh, um, we have not communicated directly with the attorney or the property owner, although we've been privy to emails that have gone back and forth. And it's, you know, I think the appraisal issue has come up, uh, quite frequently, a number of different properties, and we understand that even prior to filing condemnation, that, that the, uh, the, uh, we need to evaluate the appraised value, um, that was used and relied upon initially, and to the extent that we believe that that is not representative of the current just compensation, we would come back to the council and ask that, uh, you approve any negotiated adjusted price based on what we, what we believe is the, is the fair price, and I think that's the ultimate desire on the part of the City Attorney's Office, as well as I'm sure the council is, is if we have to condemn, if we have, the project has to go forward, we, um, want to make sure that the property owner is paid what is the fair, uh, just compensation, and that's just the process is trying to determine what that is.
Which is, which is why we use the appraisers. We don't do that value in-house.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, I, um, going, I'm gonna recess us for a few minutes, take a break, the next two items are gonna be pretty lengthy. Let's, uh, just take a quick break, and then we'll come back and get to it. We have five oh five, and we have the budget. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, let's get back at three ten.
It's 24?
Uh, you're on, I'm sorry.
20.
You're on, yeah. You just finished.
What number was it? It's 25, right?
Yep.
All right, so we are, um, there's not a, not a brief session. We can request information out of it. All right, um, so this is an update on the redevelopment of 505 West Chapel Hill Street.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. Stacy Poston, City of Durham General Services Department. I'm glad to be here today to discuss the 505 West Chapel Hill Street redevelopment. I have me, with me today, some other partners that have been working with me on this project. Erin Miles from the attorney's office was sitting there and has slipped out, but we'll be back. She's been a great partner. Rebecca Joyner is here from Parker Poe, providing outside counsel. Here she comes. Also, Samuel and Mark from HRNA Advisors have been partnering with us. So they, along with some other city staff, have been working on this project for a number of years. Last time we met with you all, we were in August. We were in front of council and talking about advancing to negotiations with the People's Corporation with an attempt to secure a non-binding term sheet to, to wrap up and state the revised priorities that council had directed to us. Since then, we've been actively negotiating with the People's Corporation. Despite, you know, negotiating for about a half a year now, we've been unable to come to consensus on the details of a viable project that staff could recommend advancing with. And so we're here today to sort of walk through and talk about what we've been doing and answer questions. Our negotiations with the People's Corporations did secure the new ground lease structure, which was a goal of council. Additionally, we were able to negotiate adding some additional affordable housing units. But when we, we were working through this project, it also had some other impacts, which was to increase the requested subsidy from the developer to $75 million or $78 million from the city. Additionally, there was then a bifurcation of the affordable housing from the regular market rate housing into two separate buildings. And so these were some areas of concern that led to us not really being able to recommend advancing with this development team. Additionally, the subsidy with that $78 million subsidy request moved us from 150, to $150,000 subsidy per unit, when the market for affordable housing subsidy is between $40 and $50,000. So we, we were not seeing numbers that we felt like were reflective of what we've been able to do previously. And then just generally, the economic conditions have been deteriorating in the market, right? So we've been seeing tight labor markets, increasing construction costs due to tariffs and uncertainty in there, higher interest rates. In the community itself, in the multifamily space, rents have been not increasing in a way that would support the development that we were proposing. So the, the array of these economic development activities and the movement of request of the subsidy amount leads us to, to the recommendation today that's in your agenda materials, which is to move to, not to move forward with the People's Corporation at this time and to move towards some interim, interim site programming to sort of activate that site, to allow us to have a little time to have the economic conditions improve and think about how we want to address and move forward with this project in the future. With that, I will pause and see if we have questions or how we want to advance.
Yeah, I have some speakers. And I'm gonna start with online and then I'll come back before the council.
Mr. Mayor, some of the speakers have requested to speak in order, and Ms. Stella Adams is part of the last three speakers that are here in person.
Here in person?
So three are in person. Ms. Stella is first of four, so they would like her to speak first. They have something planned to go back to back.
I have, I just have Stella Adams online. Okay. Okay. All right. Ms. Adams, can you hear me? Ms. Stella, can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, neighbor.
All righty.
Three minutes, welcome.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members, I am, you all know, I have been advocating for the affordable housing on this site for, it's almost a decade. And I want to encourage the council to continue and move forward with the affordable housing proposals in this. I understand that People's put forward a five-story affordable housing proposal. We need those 160 to 240 units now. Conditions are only gonna get worse. Prices are only gonna get higher. And, and the need for affordable housing is, has been demonstrated earlier in your conversations. I believe that Councilman Baker said that there were 10 units of naturally occurring affordable housing in Durham, 10 units. The proposal would double that for our city, but it would also provide much-needed affordable housing for our city workers, our county workers, and teachers who sadly are below 60% a median on their starting salaries, and many even after five years of service to the city. This housing is critically needed and needed now. We can't keep kicking this can down the road becomes, because it becomes more and more expensive and less and less feasible as a priority for the city as we go forward. If you are not satisfied with people's, find somebody else, but build the affordable housing. I do not believe that taxpayers should be subsidizing market rate housing or subsidizing commercial space in the city with all of the commercial and market rate housing that the city has downtown. We need to meet this need that our families have, and I'm going to say, put some guardrails in future contracts with the housing authority and with this project that would require them to maintain the properties and do proper maintenance, security, and safety for all residents that are subsidized by city dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Stella. Thank you, Ms. Stella. Next, I have Rick Larson, followed by Ann Rebeck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, council members. I am Rick Larson. I'm with a member of Duke Memorial United Methodist Church, which is across the street from the 505 site, and I'm the co-chair of the Affordable Housing Action Team for Durham Can, Stella's organization, the Durham Committee for the Affairs of Black People, our organization, our church, the People's Alliance, Durham Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit, Durham Chapter of the NAACP, and I think that's it. There's six, our six organizations have been working together for years, as you all have, to come up with a solution for this site. And we're here to share with you, we shared with you via email, our full statement, but here to share pieces of that in, in person. We stand by our previous position that the development of the property at 505 must include a significant number of residential units that are affordable at 60% AMI in perpetuity. And there must be no more delays in the affordable housing element of this development plan. The lack of affordable places to live in Durham is one of our most critical and pressing issues in the 505 site, because it's owned by the city, offers the city a chance to really do something significant now and not wait for years into the future. For this reason, we reject the recommendation to simply stop moving forward. This is a pivotal moment, and now is not the time to take our foot off the gas. Durham Can, every couple of years, holds listing sessions. All of our congregations go out and talk to residents and neighbors to find out what's on everyone's mind. And we talked to 2,000 people this year. The number one issue, not surprisingly, was affordable housing. And so this reinforces what we've been really saying since 2023, when we put together our initial position statement. Durham's long-term residents, educators, first responders, bus drivers, maintenance workers, and especially those unfixed and low income are being displaced and priced out of the city they helped build and now serve in so many important ways. So we've had discussions about what to do with this important plot of land for almost a decade, as, as Ms. Adams said. And during that time, hundreds, if not thousands, of Durham residents have been priced out of Durham's urban core, or they've been forced to spend an unsustainable share of their income on rent or mortgage. And we just, we believe it's simply unacceptable for the city of Durham to pass up an opportunity today to use an asset that it owns and that we, as the people of Durham, effectively own, to do what our residents most need, which is to address this incredible need for safe, attractive, affordable housing for Durham residents. I'm gonna turn it over now to Ann Rebeck to talk about what our specific asks of council are. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Ann Rebeck, People's Alliance. At this critical moment, we collectively and respectively ask the council, the council to pursue the following. One, honor the first priority of the RFP and ask the city staff to negotiate and execute a cost-effective contract with a developer, People's or another qualified affordable housing developer, to build 160 to 200 units of housing affordable at 60% AMI in perpetuity at 505. And we do agree that market rate housing isn't feasible at this time. This affordable housing does not need to start from scratch. People's has already submitted to the city a preliminary low-density proposal for several stick-built five-story buildings that would require much less subsidy than a 10- to 12-story tower using steel construction. So the city subsidy for 160 units, for example, might be roughly $15 million. Two, time is of the essence. Council should stipulate that this contract be finalized in time for the developer and the city to, to apply for NC Housing Finance Authority for the 4% LIHTC allocation in the fall of 2025 or January 2026 at the latest. Three, if council determines that it has lost confidence in the city's ability to work constructively with People's, then council should agree to the staff's recommendation to end the negotiation process with People's. At that point, city could pivot to identifying another developer, one with deep affordable housing expertise, to execute the plan and to build low-density affordable housing at 505. Acre Ridge had previously submitted a good response to the previous RFP. And then finally, most importantly, the members of the 505 Coalition, and Rick stated who that is, agree that the city should not stop the development process, but continue to move it forward with the affordable housing component with all possible speed. The affordable housing crisis continues to worsen, and the city, and our city employees, teachers, first responders, and other essential service workers deserve action, not further delay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. It's good to be with you all. Appreciate the opportunity to talk some this afternoon and appreciate the endurance you all show, and some of you have been here a long time show, and continuing to try and think, how can we make good things happen at the 505 site? So here's some personal comments. But first, I'm really happy that Kedee Tellemack joins us from Can, lead organizer, and Donna Hicks joins us, who's been working with us too. There's some other good folks here. And to get in three minutes, I'm gonna try and talk fast. Understand why the council would turn down this high-density proposal from People's with a $78 million price tag. It almost seems like a proposal designed to make sure it would not get approved. The low-density proposal, though, which I don't know got a lot of visibility, had a different approach. But we agree, I agree, with the recommendations to hold off on building market rate housing and commercial retail right now, and understand that that'll likely be years probably before there's the market conditions and the economic visibility that would say we could go forward with doing that. But as a housing developer told me recently, which is interesting, when you start to have an overall housing downturn in the economy, that actually is the time, the best time to build affordable housing. Demand for housing materials is gonna contract, interest rates are gonna be steady or declining because of reduced demand for it, and there'll be a number of builders looking for opportunities, probably most of them, to keep their businesses going. So he said that actually is the best time to take a hard look at building some affordable housing. And so I hope we don't let battle fatigue have us miss this opportunity. As you've heard and know well, the community's affordable housing crisis has only grown in recent years, especially in the downtown neighborhood. So while it makes sense to hold off on some of the other components of the 505 development, we think it makes great sense to move forward now with the affordable housing aspect of it. Suppose the proposal staff brought to you all, said 240 units of affordable housing. Even to some housing advocates, affordable housing advocates, that seems excessive. I for one. I think that we, early on, right after you all acted at your last council meeting for this, which was last year, we talked to the developer, and both of us agreed 130 would be a good target to go for. Now, you know, you could say, okay, let's take a look at 130 or 160 or some range, but we hope you'll go back to and direct your staff to go back and work with the developer that you all want to proceed with of your choice, but work on a very tight timeframe now to say, let's develop a proposal, let's bring it back to council, let's see maybe at a couple of places what the subsidy would be, pick us up a place that you think there's a reasonable subsidy, and let's have us move forward. One last thought, we've had numerous meetings and conversations with People's, and I just want to say that we appreciate their candor, their willingness to meet with us and engage with the community. We've had no, no negative things to say about it. But if council wants to proceed, there's other good developers out there, and you all know who they are. Thank you.
Next, Kathleen Turner, and after Kathleen Turner, Julianne Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Turner, and I'm the Piedmont Regional Director, speaking on behalf of Preservation North Carolina to express our intention to enter into direct negotiations with the city of Durham for an option to purchase the former Home Security Life Building, located at 505 West Hill Street, West Chapel Hill Street, rather. Our intention is to acquire the building, parceled out from the larger four acres for preservation and adaptive reuse. Designed by noted modernist architect Milton Small, this historic structure is an architectural, cultural asset in Durham and the state of North Carolina. Despite its significance and opportunities for adaptive reuse into a multitude of uses, the building remains vacant. We suggested this path several years ago, when the police department first announced they'd be vacating the building. The building would be rehabilitated and generating tax revenue today if action had been taken then. The building should not wait any longer. The time to act is now. We believe this pro- We believe this proposal represents a viable and necessary forward, path forward, and urge the city to use the authority granted under North Carolina General Statute, Section 160A-266B, which allows direct negotiated sales of historically significant property to qualified nonprofit preservation organizations. I included in an email to y'all information on this statute, and it had a list, a partial list actually, of the projects that we've worked with across the state in this particular way. Preservation North Carolina has purchased, as I said, and resold dozens of historic public properties across the state, resulting in tens of millions of dollars in historic rehabilitation and private investment. All of them are protected by preservation agreements, ensuring they're around for preservation for future generations to enjoy. And I think it also bears mentioning that many of these have been developed for affordable housing. In fact, we're currently working with one of our projects in Lexington as workforce and affordable housing. We make this request in light of recent city council consideration to end negotiation with the current development team and reassess the site's future. Of the alternatives presented, we join several advocates, including Preservation Durham and North Carolina Modernists, in urging council to reject continued delay. The historic building can and should move forward on a separate track, one that is not entangled in broader development and allows for the focus that is required for the development of the affordable housing units that are needed in the city now. Entering into an option would allow time for us to solicit experienced developers that we know that can deliver a successful tax-generating project, thereby freeing up the rest of the project for the focus it deserves and requires. Durham has a rare opportunity to take decisive action to preserve an architectural treasure and to catalyze its transformation into a publicly beneficial asset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Julianne Patterson, Executive Director of Preservation Durham. Thank you for allowing me some time to speak today. I sent my comments to you all by email. But after hearing some of the earlier comments, I'm going to pivot because I've realized we're basically asking for the same thing. Like our affordable housing folks, we have, I think we've all been patient and constructive partners, supporting the city's efforts to identify a developer capable of tackling the entire four-acre site. But I think we can all agree that after years of stalled progress and continued deterioration of the historic building, it's clear that this approach has not produced results. So we believe, Preservation Durham, that we must pursue a more focused, achievable solution to ensure the building's survival. So as Kathleen just mentioned, Preservation North Carolina did submit a letter of interest to enter into direct negotiation with the city of Durham for an option to purchase the historic Home Security Life Building. And Preservation Durham fully endorses and supports that effort. Yeah, like the affordable housing folks, we agree we cannot stop this development. And so we advocate for kind of three main things. Number one, carve out the historic building, put it on its own separate parcel, work directly with Preservation North Carolina, and allow Preservation North Carolina to use the experience and the expertise that they have to move that project forward. We believe that carving out the historic building from the rest of the site will actually make the rest of the parcel, which would then be vacant, more attractive to an affordable housing developer who can then put the focus and attention, as well as public subsidy that it deserves, on that portion of the site. As I've shared with you all by email, you have the opportunity to utilize existing special legislation to work with Preservation North Carolina. And that special legislation authorizes you to direct or enter into direct negotiations with Preservation North Carolina for that. There's precedent for using this special legislation in Durham, both with Preservation North Carolina as well as with Preservation Durham. This legislation was created to come in and solve solutions exactly like this. And it offers the flexibility, expertise, and accountability necessary to get to a preservation-centered outcome. Preservation North Carolina, as Kathleen mentioned, brings a proven track record of delivering these types of projects and would bring the expertise to the table. Each month of vacancy compounds deterioration and costs. And Durham deserves more than an uncertain future. It deserves bold, timely action and a creative solution to finally get this project moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all of the speaker signups that I have. I will say, before I just start passing it around, I think it's, I know today was an update, but I think it's going to be really helpful for the presentation to be available publicly, just so people can see all of what we've seen. It is, it is, it's not just holding a building or letting a building go. And there is a lot of complex here. And there are some serious financial decisions we're going to have to make, too. And I've already said, I'm not going to be Chicago and spend $11 billion for 10,000 units. So there has to be a better way forward. I think time is a value that we're going to have to really observe here. And that's going to call for some forecasting and just, you know, what's to come. So it's a little more complex than are we going to just do something or not. But I just want to go ahead and say, I think we need to make that, go ahead and make that available for the public. I know we're going to have a long meeting on the 16th. But yeah, colleagues. Oh, okay, go ahead.
First, I just want to thank all of those advocates that have been working at this for almost a decade or longer. I really appreciate you staying focused on the affordable housing aspect of this. And I also want to appreciate those folks who have been focused on the Milton Small Building and presently preserving that piece of history that tells the story of Durham and why the building towering over it is the North Carolina Mutual Life Building. I do, I do think that it has many complexities, as our mayor indicated. But I also have been advocating over the last eight years for the parcel to be split up. And so I would like to know if a proposal has been submitted or a request has been made actually for that Milton Small Building to be parceled out. Because I have not seen anything like that come forward. I have not heard anything like that previously. And yeah.
Stacy Poston. So we have not received a formal request to parcel or subdivide that parcel. Early on in 2017 and 18, when we were initially conceiving how we were going to approach this site, we had a lot of discussions about what the implications of dividing that site might be, what, if it might trigger things in, you know, like roads and things like that. So it is not something that we have a formal proposal on. We absolutely had conversations with the state preservation team and Kathleen Turner. And so we would welcome, you know, a formal proposal for them to be able to do some analysis on. But we do not currently have something submitted.
Thank you. And I would also just want to echo that welcome of a formal proposal, just knowing that at least getting that site separated would make it much more simpler to do affordable housing across the rest of it. Whatever else might be included, that piece could get done. Thank you.
Mayor? Could you turn that, the mic off for me? Yes.
You know, I think for the purposes of the public and the council, and I know some of us have had conversations outside of this room, I just want to do a little bit of issue framing. Obviously, from the, there have been several development attempts on this property. And from the beginning, the council and your predecessors on the council have struggled with questions of the individual priorities and then how those priorities play together. Obviously, the two major attempts to redevelop this property, the direction we received from council in both of those were to attempt a master development where a number of different priorities were pursued. And while in this most recent effort, there has been a ranking, there was also an expectation that a development respond to a number of different priorities. For that reason, if along the way, there have been people who have expressed interest in partial, partially satisfying some of those goals, those are not conversations that the city staff felt authorized to engage in. So a strictly affordable housing discussion, a strictly market-rate housing discussion, or a strictly preservation of the Milton Small Building discussion are not ones that the staff have been authorized to. And that is directly as a result of, I think, very thorough vetting at the council level of the possibility of doing those things, but determining that the council wanted staff to pursue a master development agreement. The recommendation we bring to you today is that the most recent effort to negotiate something that seemed to satisfy the council direction is one that we should not move forward with because of all of the conditions presented forward. We brought a recommendation to take a pause. I want to be clear that that recommendation is not a reflection of exhaustion, although I will admit, obviously, a lot of people have put in a lot of effort, and the staff, just like the council, wanted this to result in a successful project. I do think we do identify a number of market conditions that we have a concern. And that is why, you know, the recommendation came forward to pause any sort of master development discussion. Prior to that, we have presented council with the possibility of subdividing the parcel and pursuing different objectives. And that is something that we remain, you know, willing to do at council's direction. In our prior conversations, that has not been something that council has directed. Obviously, you've heard from two different groups of speakers today who proposed that. And that is something staff could pursue if you directed us to do so. But at this point, that, those have not been individual conversations we pursued. So I just wanted to provide that framing because I do think council has several decisions to make. One is, do we proceed with a master development conversation or stop? That is, our recommendation has been to stop. Then the next question is more open, and that is, what do you want to happen next? And the staff is available to try and help you down that path, whatever you choose.
President?
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you, colleagues. Let me thank all of our friends who are in chamber with us today. Thank you, Mr. Manager. So in other words, the buck stops here, is what the manager essentially has said, and I think rightfully so. Full disclosure, I'm a member of the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People. I'm a life member of the NAACP. I lead an organization that is a dues-paying member of Durham Can. I'm a friend and ally of Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit. So just about all of these organizations are ones that are near and dear to me in some ways, in many very tangible ways. I think it's important for us to frame how we got here. And a number of you, the speakers, have said something. There's a recurring motif. You use the phrase bold action and decision. And anytime you use that phrase, whether you call a name or not, colleagues are talking about us. This is, this is maybe the third and a half iteration of a council that has looked at this development and taken a crack at this development. And I believe each and every council has the right to reconsider, to look at, to deliberate what's before them. We are not beholden to previous councils. Although I think precedent and, you know, industrial institutional integrity means something, but we each have the right to take a fresh look. This, this development piece of land, the approach we've always taken has been that we would, as the manager said, master-plan it and that each element informed and buttressed and supported the other element. In August of last year, we were at a threshold. We were at a decision point. We chose not to act. We chose not to take one of the proposals, the three proposals or so that was put before us, which, if we had, those proposals made all of the constituents, not just the constituents that are here today, but all of the constituents, the business community, to preserve the building folk, the historical folk who wanted to make sure that we honored our past, those of us who wanted an iconic kind of a statement there that would brand Durham to the rest of the world. We would have had more affordable housing in one of those developments than we were first asked for. But we decided to punt and ask the staff to essentially substantively change the RFP and ask them to rework with Peoples a plan that involved leasing rather than selling. The original, one of the original five goals was financial windfall for the city. And the way that was achieved was through a sale. The developer would then go out and leverage that title to do the other things we wanted. We would have had affordable housing. We would have been moving dirt already. We decided not to do that. Moreover, the decision to do that was predicated upon a proposition that somehow through maintaining ownership, we could safeguard our values and make sure that what we wanted to happen would happen, which is a demonstrably false proposition. There are black people that are living in this country for generations that know that restrictive covenants have prevented them from buying things by people who have long been dead. Municipalities around this country engage in sale for terms or sale on terms every day. So the notion that somehow this developer would have been able to wiggle their way out of doing what they were contractually obligated to do because we kept ownership is just false. And we made policy based upon that. And when we punted it to the staff, because we did not act on one of those proposals at that time, in the interim period, the United States of America held an election. The economy contracted. We got into a tariff war with China, Canada, and whoever else we could find. And the market changed. Everyone in this room and everybody listening to this broadcast, from time to time, sits down and makes decisions what you're going to spend money on in your household. Some of us can't take the vacation. Some of us can't buy the suit we want. Some of us can't put an addition on a house. Some of us are choosing between food and medicine based upon our family's finances. This Durham family now is looking at our finances and has to make some real-world decisions based upon the current market conditions. Now, whatever else we talk about, and if we want to do affordable housing solely or whatever, whatever the council decides, we can do that. We have the power to do that. But it must be understood that we are not here by an act of God or nature or some uncontrollable circumstance. We are here because of our indecision, because of our, and I'm saying our, because of our action or inaction as a council. And there are causal links. There are causal outcomes because of that. In that interim period, things have happened. I, you know, I trust the staff. They came back with a recommendation based upon what they do every day, is look at the market, make recommendations. And we can accept a recommendation or not accept a recommendation. What I will not do is engage in theater and pretend that this just happened to us. No, it is written. It was authored by us. And I would, I would encourage my colleagues to, there are a lot of, a lot of winds of change blowing in our economy. One thing that we have to focus on is we cannot have blight in our downtown corridor. The building is deteriorating every day, as we've heard. I had a chance to speak to a couple of visitors in the city just a couple of evenings ago. We were just having some conversation, and they mentioned that when they drove in and drove past the building, they were a little concerned and said, what neighborhood are we in? But then they said when they got to other parts of the city, they said, oh, okay, Durham's great. So we need to be concerned, and I appreciate the manager's focus on activating the era in the interim. But whatever we decide to do, we need to make a decision and not be capricious. We need to make a decision, not be afraid of, what if this happened or what doesn't happen? That's why we get paid the big bucks, and that's why we've been put in the seat. But part of our issue has been, we have been moving the goalposts on this project. And we have effectively, at least in my assessment, taken an asset and turned it into a bill. We were in a position where we would have gotten our affordable housing. We would have kept the building. We would have had commercial property. We would have had all of the five, the five things that we agreed to. Now, if we're going to change the priorities, then we need to just telegraph that and be honest about it. But we're here because we agreed to make everybody happy, no one ecstatic, but at least happy. The conditions have changed. So if we're going to reset the conversation, let us reset it honestly by acknowledging why we're here, what has happened thus far, and move forward. But I support the staff's recommendation, unless my colleagues have something to say that will compel me otherwise. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
I've got a question for staff. How much of HRNA do we have left? I know that we contracted with them to help us get through this process. It's actually a pretty big contract. Do we still have a significant amount of that left? Or would we, if we wanted to continue working with them, would we need a new contract?
We have some available funds on the contract, yes.
Okay, that's helpful. So I'm interested in, I appreciate Councilmember Freeman's comments and the work that, you know, you've done over the years. I have lost confidence in Peoples. the work that, you know, you've done over the years. I have lost confidence in Peoples based on the conversations that I have had with staff, based on the feedback that we've received from HRNA, who has been working on behalf of the city and has a lot of experience in this area. So I have lost confidence in Peoples. And I understand that the community advocates have had good conversations, but I have not been privy to those. So that's where I am when it comes to Peoples. I'm good with ending our conversations with Peoples. The historic preservation of Milton Small, this is one that I have wrestled with for a significant amount of time. I am now at a point where I think that historic preservation is a very unique skill set that developers of gray filled sites, of parking lots, existing parking lots, maybe don't have or lack the nuanced skill set that is necessary that people who do historic preservation and historic preservation development every single day have. Therefore, I think it would be a good move for us to consider partitioning off the Milton Small building and engaging in conversation with Preservation North Carolina and Preservation Durham. So that is something, I join Councilmember Freeman in that. For the remainder of the site, I agree with my colleagues that we can't just leave it as it is. We have to do something, whether it's something in the interim, whether it is site preparation. I would also be interested in, is there a possibility of a third-party master planning, and then working to, working amongst multiple developers in a phased approach, or one developer in a phased approach? I would want more information, details about what is most feasible, what makes the most sense, particularly in this moment. And I want to say to whoever, to the folks who wrote the memo and the staff report, because I've written many of those, you did a damn good job of laying out all of the different issues and considerations that need to go into our decision moving forward. And I'm going to try to not fall out of my seat when I read that not only is this publicly-owned land, not only would on publicly-owned land would affordable housing need to be subsidized, but now we are in a moment where, and the staff report says, market rate development on this site is not feasible without subsidy and could no longer offset the lower residual land value associated with the affordable units. We do not want to subsidize market rate units, period. We do not want to do that. We have these four major projects in downtown. I think that was good context laying that out that are paused because of that. What was beneficial, you know, is in a strong market, that those market rate units would be able to help subsidize the affordable units, and we're not in that position right now. However, I don't, I'm not a real estate developer. I don't know what the opportunities are moving forward with looking at a portion of the site and that is not the Milton Small building and moving forward on some sort of affordable housing on that portion. So I would be interested in, and I don't know if it's HRNA or someone else, getting some more in-depth options on a phased approach, looking at a smaller portion of the site, whether we would want to look at a number of different developers to build out the entire block. But I do think that it's important that in the long term, upon full development of the block, that is a cohesive development, where if there are different phases or different developers on the site, that they all work together, and that we have something in the interim so that is not just sitting empty, to other colleagues' points. So that's where I am. I agree not to move forward with Peoples based upon what I've heard from staff and from HRNA. And, you know, I explain the other elements of what I would look for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. Thanks very much to staff for the memo and for advocates for being here today. I do want to put, and I appreciate Mayor Protem, you know, I think certainly, I've certainly moved the goalposts, and I don't have a problem saying that. And I will say that the market has also moved. We had a deal where we sold the land way back in 2021 that didn't have tariff wars or elections or anything else, and it wasn't possible for that developer. And that was with sale of the land. So I think that we did do the hard work and make the decision around the five priorities and just didn't go our way. So I appreciate the current thing that we have in front of us, we're not going to do $78 million worth of subsidy for however many units. That's like, not going to happen. So that proposal, as far as I can tell, is not one that is feasible at all. The market around market rate units, there's in our memo, a list of several projects, YMCA project, American Tobacco Phase II. Again, all of those projects were slated to be done well before this election. So the market, especially around multifamily, has been turbulent and volatile since about 2023, maybe end of 2022. We've heard that from the development community. We've seen that with interest rates and construction costs that have been high since COVID. So that's the real estate and market reality that we're faced with. I am open to having conversations about the parceling out of the historic portion of the lot. I will stay, I will say that the rest of it, then, you know, maintaining ownership of as much of it as possible is still of critical importance to me. I'm only interested in the part that the, where the Milton Small building is so that the preservation of the building and it not being an eyesore or a blight continue. And I think that the city continuing to own it or figuring that out, maybe drag it out, and then the building can, will degrade further. I've long been a proponent of saving the building. Initially, I wasn't there. And then, it's not my style of architecture. It goes to how design is actually real tricky. We want to talk about design, but design is a very subjective thing. But it is very much an important building as far as modern architecture is concerned. And so I get why folks want to preserve that building, and we have not done the best job downtown preserving some of our iconic buildings. So that argument has resonated with me for a while now. So moving forward, I think the deliverable, you know, I think the parts that we can accomplish are the historic building and the affordable units. I do have a question for staff around what are our legal requirements around having to do another RFP? If we are allowed to not have to do an RFP, are we allowed to just say, hey, we want to go straight into negotiations with an affordable housing provider that we've already worked with? Because we already know they can deliver units. So that's a question that I have for staff. You don't have to answer it now, I don't think, but like, I kind of, I do want to know that. Like, we have affordable housing partners that have delivered on many projects downtown. Are we forced to have to do an RFP on that? Can we just choose? So that's a question I'd love for staff to get back to us about. And then I think that the, at least going down this path of how do we separate out the historic part of it so that that part can move forward and we don't lose the building, I'm also interested in. I hope that that provided enough direction to staff. Thank you.
Councilmember Burris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I wonder whether, City Attorney Lamar, do you want to answer that question? But it seems like we've talked about this in the past. Oh, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I think I can answer the question. The answer is, if you have a public purpose and if it's authorized by statute, you can enter to private negotiations. That's the case for affordable housing, certainly. It's also the case for preservation, historic preservation purposes. So we want to know the specifics of what is being sought, but direct private negotiations are authorized for many of the kinds of things that we've been talking about.
Thank you. That's what I had understood, especially with our own land. But I just wanted to make sure that that's, so that's the other thing that I'm interested. What I guess what I'm not interested in, because I don't think we're going to succeed, is this big RFP process with this master plan of the whole thing. I think we carve out what we can. We activate the space. I think staff has some great ideas, open space, whatnot, with the parts that we can't deliver on, the office, the retail, the market rate, and we figure out what we can move forward. And that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Burris?
Yeah, thanks again, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I'll, my comments will be brief. I want to, first of all, echo Councilmember Freeman and just thank the housing advocates that are here that have been involved in this conversation for a long time. I want to thank the preservation advocates as well who've been here and made a strong case for the real uniqueness of the Milton Small building and why that's a valuable asset to preserve. I also want to thank the People's Corporation for being willing to sort of engage with us in the last, what, like, eight, nine months in this negotiations. Appreciate all that. My colleagues have been at this, many colleagues have been at this a lot longer than I have. I've been in this for, what, six, seven years, right? So I'm not interested in litigating in the past. I will, I will mention, though, that in any of the proposals, and this comes from the staff memo, if I can pull it up here, we were looking at, for any of the proposals since last August, anywhere from $47 million to as high as $94 million. The latest one was $78 million. Even the initial proposal, it requested city support of $61 million. So we were looking at a big investment anyway, right? I think at this point, from what we've, now where we are, I think we've got to right-size our ambitions. And I think a lot of my colleagues have been saying that. I do appreciate the comments today about how to go forward, potentially parceling out the Milton Small building. Any colleagues have mentioned that. I think that makes a lot of sense. I also appreciate the city manager kind of framing the decision for us, right? That essentially, is it, you know, number one, master development or not? I'm also in the camp that would say, like, I think the master development idea, again, in terms of right sizing ambitions is probably not the way to go right now. And I'm interested in going in a different direction. In terms of what happens next, again, I appreciate the staff and the memo. You've laid out three options that we could follow. And I think the last option, to me, was pretty, at least in terms of what we can do right now, the idea of pursuing a smaller scale redevelopment, soliciting developer for Milton Small and/or affordable housing. I think we can do both of those, and then maybe add service parking and open space. So I think something like that would be attractive. I am interested in the affordable housing piece still. I am interested in preservation still. And so I think I'd love to, I support the motion from staff to end negotiations and would, I would, looking for our opinions, I would propose or pursue the, or prefer number three options, pursue that smaller scale redevelopment right away, that we don't want to slow down and do nothing. I appreciate the comments from former Mayor Gully, that in some ways, doing this work on affordable housing right now, while the market seems to be slowing down, could be a way to do that in a way that we can, that we're not subject to, like, higher interest rates and high costs as the market kind of slows down. So that's my perspective. I appreciate the staff framing some clear decisions for us, and that's how I see it, and appreciate your work on this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Freeman, you good?
I was just gonna frame it in that same framing and appreciate my colleagues making that very clear. I do think that option three, hold on, I'm just coming down. Pretty good memo. But pursuing the smaller scale redevelopment, soliciting developer for a Milton Small. I just want to be specific that I do think that it should be Preservation North Carolina or Preservation Durham and indoor for affordable housing. I do want to be really clear, I did not lose confidence in Peoples. I do agree with Mayor Protem, we have moved defense posts and, to Councilmember Caballero's point, I don't mind moving defense posts a million times if it means we get what we need. But I do think that there should be some conversation about partly. It would be nice to have a building coming up out of the ground now, but some part of that space is going to need more than just housing. And so I do think that some conversation about what the plan would look like around that space would be great. People do need jobs and they need places to work. So, and it's nice when they can walk to them, and they're right there. I definitely don't, I don't think that, you know, I would never approve or never be behind doing $78 million for market rate housing at all. And I'm trying to think of what else you might have questions on. And I appreciate Councilmember Baker's question about HRNA. It would be good to know if they can help with the process, since they're already in the queue and they've been involved this long. That's all.
Thank you, advocates. Y'all have been working for a really long time and have worked really hard on this, and staff. And my colleagues have said most of what I think that I would like to say, but I'm just going to add my voice here, because I know we're giving direction. I, I am, it's not my style. I understand the importance of preserving buildings. If it felt like it was going to impede affordable housing or commercial development on that site, then it would not have been my recommendation to preserve the building. But it sounds like there is a viable option to preserve the building, have that history preserved, and also to allow us to have more focused, potentially RFP or just communications with developers moving forward. So I would support looking at portioning off the parcel. I also had Councilmember Caballero's question about working directly with developers, and it's not something that I need to hear about right now, but I am curious, as it's made public, that we are not going to move forward with Peoples. It sounds like that is the will of the council, whether some of the other folks who responded to RFPs previously, particularly folks who have demonstrated work in affordable housing, are interested in coming back on board and what that conversation might look like. So I'm open to that idea. And for me, the priorities are affordable housing in downtown, 60% AMI in perpetuity or less. I do want commercial, but I really want to be, like, careful about what type of commercial we are facilitating coming into downtown Durham. We just had a conversation with EDI about what their asks are around developing commercial nature in downtown. We really need a grocery store. We so awesome. But certain things like that, I would definitely prioritize over just, like, bringing in chain, and we all know this, but this is kind of what makes downtown Durham really unique and special, is just not having, like, a million chain-owned resident or commercial businesses. But I do think that we do need some commercial business and maintaining the Milton Small building and preserving that history and giving that opportunity to have that building repaired for right now, because I do agree with what several of my colleagues have said, it's an eyesore at this time. And, yeah, it deserves better. That space deserves better. So number three sounds like a good option to me. I am curious to see what the conversation is like around a potential parceling, portioning, parceling off, portioning off, I don't know what I'm saying, in that, I think, Gina, you said that there had been some conversations maybe five or six years ago about it, about, like, right-of-ways and other access things. So I'd be curious to hear kind of what happened with that, those conversations, and maybe why that wasn't, why that wasn't moved forward on. I don't know if you have any helpful insight.
Sure. So I think we, as Bo, as the city manager of Ferguson indicated, we moved forward a master development plan. And so we wanted to maintain flexibility on the site and let the market tell us and the developers that proposed tell us what might look best on that site and how that might work. And I think at that time, there was also uncertainty about council level, about whether the building was something that would be a long-term part of that or not, even though it was one of the goals. I think we were trying to maintain some flexibility in the work that we were receiving from the development firms.
I also just realized I called you the wrong name, but my mom is, her name is Gina, and I literally just looked at you and said my mom's name. Sorry. Okay, anyway. So when y'all had had that conversation in 2017, it wasn't more specific than that. Okay, yeah. I would be curious to kind of see what options there are around.
I mean, we had intense conversations with the planning department about what the implications of that would be and what the council goals were and how we might approach. And so the determination was made to approach it as a master development agreement for the entire four-acre site and try to have the best design we could possibly get for a catalytic project on that site.
Okay. And when you said it earlier, I was hoping maybe there was, like, some stuff that was done and that changed the council decision. But it sounds like that we would have to do some research around the implications there.
I do think that that's the part, and I'm definitely not the expert in this, so I'd welcome Sarah Young into the conversation. But there definitely were constraints that our UDO would place on subdividing the lot, that, you know, talk about breaking up a master lot, the master development agreement, you know, checked a few boxes that would allow the developer to satisfy that through a master development agreement. If we go to subdivide the parcel, we will trigger a number of those requirements, and Sarah could educate the council and staff a bit more on what those were. I know it's been a while since we talked about that option.
Does the new UDO potentially change that conversation?
Again, I'd invite Sarah to answer those questions. Sorry.
Yeah, that would be helpful for me. But otherwise, I think what everyone stated, and for me, it's affordable units and moving as quickly as possible in that direction. So thank you so much to everyone for your work.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. This is really helpful. This is helping me a lot in terms of charting the course forward, and this is why it's important to listen to each other. I thank Councilmember Caballero I thank Councilmember Caballero for, for reminding us historically of the deal with Fallon. The main reason the deal with Fallon fell through was because they took a look at that building and realized it was gonna take much more to rehab the Milton Smalls building. You know, there, there's, there's virtue in retaining ownership, so let's sell the building. And, and part of the, the footprint of the building is part of the acreage of that total project. And if the, and I want to, as a council, I just wanna, I think it's important to acknowledge where the master plan idea came from. I, I don't want it to be kind of like the council giveth and the council taketh away kind of situation. The master plan came as a result from a whole lot of people who came before us during a massive public engagement campaign. The folk from Hayti came and they dreamed of having a space where artists could work and where they could have subsidized meeting space and where we could honor that history. DDI and the Chamber came and said, we need a place that will, will generate revenue for the city. Folk dreamed of, of an iconic kind of presence there that when folks saw a picture of it, you'd be able to say that's Durham without seeing Durham on the screen. There were a whole lot of people that poured into this. So the master plan didn't come from us. So if, if we're going to move away from that, I just want to honor and acknowledge that that, that was not born with us. That was a whole lot of engagement way beyond the organizations that are represented here today that came up with that master plan. But if we're going to diverge from it and if we're gonna retain ownership, then that changes my calculus. I say personally, I'd like to see then as many affordable housing units there that we can get on the property. Because if, if it's a fundamentally changed property, a fundamentally changed plan, that changes my calculus. My disposition and votes in the past on this property were based upon an attempt to keep fidelity with the multitude of constituents that came and dreamed on this property. A lot of dreams were tied up in this property. And that was, that's what I was attempting to do. Make everybody happy, no one ecstatic. So if we're gonna page break from that, then, you know, given my past and my passions and desires, and I want to see as many affordable units as possible. In some of the iterations, we didn't know whether or not the affordable units would be in the Milton Small Building. So if we're gonna sell it, I want to know what's gonna happen to it. Because I thought the whole idea of retaining ownership was the ability to determine. So if we're, if we're so gung ho about selling the Milton Small Building, so if that doesn't fall under the virtue clause of retaining ownership, then I want to know what's gonna go on with it. What are they gonna be able to do to, to bring it up to code that we can't do? What tools are they gonna avail themselves of? What funding streams are they gonna avail themselves of, other than just loving history, that we as a government can avail ourselves of? Because if ownership is a virtue, I want to own everything on that lot. Because that building takes up a significant amount of the acreage as well. I want to be able to determine what goes in there. Are we sure that what happens in that building is gonna be compatible with our values as a city? Or are we going to exercise sale under terms? Are we gonna tell them what can happen in the building, like we could have done with this entire parcel? So I, I just want to, you know, be clear on, on what our parameters are. And I, and I thank Councilmember Freeman, and I want to echo what she said. I want to be very careful not to besmirch the reputation of Peoples. Peoples' numbers changed because we changed what we asked them to do. Peoples came with a proposal that we could have voted on in August of 2024, would have been moving dirt. We would have had affordable units. The building would have been preserved. We would have gotten money from a sale. We would have done, so we had that opportunity. Peoples changed because we changed. And, and I don't want to ever, you know, I, I don't demure from a debate or assigning of, of fault where, you know, where I think it should be. But I'm not also going to, uh, you know, engage in theater of making believe that this developer is somehow unscrupulous, when this developer, not out of large S or magnanimity, they're, they're a for-profit business. When we took the ability for them to have a title on this land away, it changed their calculus. And they started talking in ways reflective of that changed calculus. That doesn't make them bad people or make them unscrupulous. It makes them responsive to, to the conditions that we changed. But if we're going forward with, with ownership and parceling out the building, then I want to go for as much affordable housing as we can get. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. I think, you know, well, first of all, I want to thank the residents for coming out. And I respect the engagement that you all have done as well. Thank you to my colleagues. Thank you to my colleagues as well. I, I want to be just, just honest, you know, and this is in no form of disrespect. I lean on, I lean on the community members that, that talk about the historic preservation of the building. The, the, actually, who I lean on the most is, is a black woman who was one of the architects who told me the history of it that I wasn't aware. I say that to say, I don't ride by the building every day and be like, oh my gosh, look at this building. I actually ride by in disappointment because it's just an eyesore. So I didn't know the history of it. And I honestly don't believe that majority of Durham knows the history either. So that, I, I just wanted to put that out there. So preserving it or, you know, coming up with a plan, I hope would come with also an education campaign about and around it as well. I do have a few questions for staff. And I think will help inform my perspective here. What is the cost to preserve, to get the building back up to code?
So we do not have independent analysis that we've done. The most recent proposal that we got from the Peoples Corporation was around twenty-five million dollars. Let me just refat that, twenty-five million dollars to, for the hotel vision for a hundred key hotel at that site. And those numbers are about three months old. And that's, that's the only data point I have that is in that range.
So about twenty-five million to get the, get the hotel to, I mean, get the building to.
Just question, would that include historic tax credits?
So this is a construction cost to, that we received from the Peoples Corporation to bring the building to current code, current standards, energy code, all those types of things. That's just the cost side, it's not the revenue side. So it doesn't talk, take into consideration the tax, tax pieces and all that stuff. That's just, that's just the cost. So the tax stuff is a different kind of.
Historic preservation tax credit offset those costs?
Do you want to go into this? I'll let you do it. Yeah.
Councilmember Marissa's interrupting my line of questioning to ask the question I was gonna ask. Oh, you're good, go ahead.
But, but yes.
I was heading you.
It would ameliorate some of the costs associated with bringing the building up to code and returning it to use. It depends. Peoples Corporation offered an estimate. There's no way for us to know exactly what credit would be issued. It's relative to cost.
A follow-up question for NC Preservation. So if we sold the building, would NC Preservation have access to tools that we don't have as a government? Would it be less for them to restore the building than for any, for any other entity? Yeah, please.
Okay.
Would it be cheaper for you to do it than us?
Well, what we would do is facilitate bringing in a developer who has these tools, experience and understanding and how to do it. Look, if we're talking about, you know, cost analysis here, seven, a twenty-five million dollar price tag to bring the building up, what, to the boutique hotel level or just building code level?
Just opera, just code.
Yeah. You know, then you were looking at three hundred and twelve dollars a square foot for an eighty thousand square foot building. That is half of what new construction costs in, in any bad day. And, and then you multiply in there, let's just say, you know, the thirty-five percent state and federal tax credits amounts to seven million dollars in offsets for that total cost. And then what you can do is take that and syndicate the tax credits and turn that into equity for the project. So now you amplify the savings of that project, which can be put into service in far greater speed than say, working with, you know, the scheduling of Lytech and everything. That is, you know, we've worked in affordable housing too. And, you know, and, and it is an important process, but it, but it can extend the timeframe. This is a little bit more streamlined. And then you look in, you look at the, you know, saving the building is a lot cheaper than demolishing it. And on a good day, I think now with inflation, we're looking at two and a half to three million dollars in demo costs and twenty-five hundred tons of debris into the landfill. We can forego that and get a tax generating project off the ground.
Well, we had a developer say the exact opposite to us, that it would be cheaper to demolish it rather than save it. And this was years ago, but, but to your, to your, I, in terms of bringing in developer.
Know what to say about that.
Well, I'm just simply saying, we get a lot of different, that's my point. We get a lot of different information to make, but, so if you brought in a developer, what would, what would that do to your equity position? Would, would that, as, would you sell it to the developer? Would they have an equity position? And what, what goes on in that building?
Yes, sir, that's how it works is according to state statute, the preservation or conservation nonprofit gets an option to purchase from the city to market the building and bring in a preservation-minded developer. We acquire the building from the city and then we place covenants on it and then convey it to the developer with a rehabilitation agreement and a timeframe. There's a lot more certainty to that process than there is other ways of doing things. Certainly the open-endedness and uncertainty of an open bid process, which you never know what you're gonna get at the other end.
Sure, but the point is, what you just described is something that's not unavailable to us as a city. I mean, we could engage in this exact same process. Could we not just get a developer that's preservation-minded and, and retain ownership of the building and still have that done ourselves?
You could, but this streamlines it because the negotiate, you have a negotiated sale option with us in order for us to get that knowledgeable, experienced developer in place.
Right, we have people that can do that, but I, I, I get your point, thank you.
Can I just piggyback onto that line of question and just ask you, is it just the development or is there case study developed, students involved? Like, is there more than just a development, like a business development happening? Is there a more educational process alongside of that?
You mean, in, in helping to inform people about this building, its architecture, its history, its place in the city, in the context, you know, a, a lot of people involve us in that process because of that very thing and what we bring to it. Plus the, the long list of preservation-minded developers that we work with.
Councilmembers.
I just have a clarifying question for staff. Right now, all you all need is to kind of determine is that we're, we're good with not moving forward with Peoples and just a general direction. So do we need to keep, like, having the conversation around the details? Or have you all gotten enough guidance?
Council can give us as much or as little direction as they want. Obviously, a, a direction on, on Peoples was the primary objective of the agenda item. For clarity's sake, for staff, if council expects us to do anything else, it would be great to get that direction today. I will state with friends in the audience that, that, you know, there, there have been disagreements in the past as to whether or not staff was fully following the direction of council. So it's important for me today for council to say, if you expect anything to happen on this property after today, that it be explicit in this work session, what you want staff to do after we stop working with Peoples. And any of the options in front of you are, are available, but I, I would note that I, that I have not yet heard consensus. I, I have heard two primary things I would like direction on. One, one is whether or not parceling off the Milton Small Building and pursuing redevelopment is something we are to move forward with. And then if there is, and that is a A and B option. A, for any purpose, or B, only if the Milton Small Building is repurposed for affordable housing. And then I have heard the possibility of using some or all of the rest of the site for a separate affordable housing project. So I, I would look to the council or to the mayor to, to lead a conversation if there's direction on that. If there is no direction, that is also fine. But I would want it stated publicly that the staff is not doing anything further until we receive direction from council.
So let, let me just give some comments and then I'm gonna ask for some explicit direction. I, I am. Well, I do have one more question for staff, sorry. The subsidy for affordable housing, what it was versus what, you, you mentioned, so what is usually market for affordable housing subsidy versus what this would have been in this, in this case?
So what we have been seeing in the market recently is forty to fifty thousand dollars per unit. And we were at a hundred and fifty in the last iteration.
Okay, thank you. So that's not affordable. And, and I want to be very clear that I, I don't want to just say, I don't want to use the term affordable, the phrase affordable housing to say, hey, we did affordable housing and it's not affordable. I want to be really intentional. And also, you know, money's not gonna grow on trees, so it's, it's not gonna be like donated housing or anything. Where I am explicitly is, you know, as I said before, give me a plan on this building that, that, that makes economic sense. And I'll balance that with, you know, just making a values decision. And that's when I'll consider it. But right now, it, it, you know, and, and I have, I, I, just being honest, I can't just ignore the finances of it or the economics of it. And, and just for the sake of saying, hey, affordable housing because of the city on land, I, I still want to do the master plan project. I do not think this should be developed in a, in a vacuum. I don't think it should be developed in, in isolation. You know, I think this is a pivotal part of downtown that needs to work and marry with other parts of downtown. From the bus station to being over the freeway to, you know, just part of the entire, that entire area. I would love to see, you know, if, if we're not, you know, I mean, if the council decides, hey, we're gonna preserve this building and do X, Y, Z, fine, that's what the council determines. I, I want to see the space activated, though it cannot continue to sit like it is. And whether that's a park or amphitheater or something, it has to be activated. I, I do want to say in respect to my friends in the room, I'm, I go to just about every committee meeting and this is not an agenda item that we're talking about. And I'm not sure it, it's an agenda item and, 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 you know, I don't, I don't go to the other meetings, I'm not gonna speak on it. But I just, you know, I think that it's very clear, like, we, we have members that are members of these organizations. But I, if it was every organization, like this is the actual agenda item topic, then we'll see all of that. So I want to be very careful on how we're presenting that. And that's just, just being transparent with it. That being said, it doesn't lessen or devalue the advocacy that's in the room today, and I want to respect that. But I, I, you know, I, I think of, you know, this, this site as an opportunity to, to just really stand out in downtown Durham. And I think the way we're going about it is like, oh, give me a little affordable housing here and that's just enough. Like, we, we have to get it right. And I'd rather take our time and get it right rather than rush and, and get it wrong. So, so that, that's why I stand on it. I, I want to see the space activated until we can actually build something on it that actually will be that crown jewel that really stands out as a, as a property or a development that has all of the things that we asked for. And I don't want to, I don't want to just limit or reduce what we can do just because we have, you know, not, again, not devaluing who's showing up in the room, but I'm looking at this at face value and I have to go with what makes sense. And I, and I think the best thing I could do is just be honest about it. This is an opportunity to do something pretty massive for downtown. I don't want to just sacrifice all of that to say, oh, we have, you know, some affordable housing and just leave it at that. Honestly, you know, looking at the value of the land where it is, if we were to take another approach, we could actually take millions from this and build an entire village of affordable housing where the dollars stretch further. You know, so I'm, I'm willing to, you know, go with whichever way the council wants to go. But, you know, I, I am, I, I'm not going to ignore the finances of it because it's, you know, oh, this is a historic staircase or historic building. And, you know, make it a part of the overall plan. And I, my first time hearing what Preservation North Carolina offered today, that, that was my first time hearing that. You know, but at the same time, you know, staff, I believe you guys are competent, you know? And, and we can set those, those directions, then so be it. I don't know who talked about it, the RFP process. You know, if the RFP process is adding a bunch of expenses, I, I, we don't have to, let's just. Money is money, it's gonna come from somewhere, so it's gonna, I think it's gonna get in the process. So if we can be much more direct and say, this is what we want and go that direction, then let's do that. You know, but I, I, I just don't want to just, I don't want to miss the mark on this to say, hey, look, we have a few affordable housing and then everybody celebrate. To say, I played a party getting some affordable housing in downtown, you know? And we have three hundred East Main Street coming, five hundred East Main Street. We have other affordable housing projects that are coming on. Again, we are, you know, we, we're being the city of Oprah and we're, we're not really diversifying how we're gonna generate more revenue in other ways. So I just want to keep that. So that's going to keep that in mind. We're not making money on affordable housing. We can if we are strategic about it. And I'd rather take eighty million in profit and build an affordable housing whole village than just, you know, say we have a few here or there. You got a question?
Actually, I was just going to, to the manager's direct query as to recommendation. First of all, Mayor, I want to associate myself with your remarks. My recommendation would be that we terminate the relationship with people per the staff's recommendation and ask the manager to whatever he's been brainstorming about in terms of activating, beautifying that property in the interim to do that, and take no action on anything else today. I am not comfortable, given what I know, what went into this master plan, amending that simply by fiat from this dais. I want, I want, I want an opportunity for all those folk from the business community, all those folk from K-TI, all those folk from everywhere else to come back and talk to us before we just eviscerate the five priorities that they informed. And for me, and also just for me, from, it's just intellectually difficult for me to, we told the developer, we don't want to sell anything, and then sit here and say, but we'll sell the building. I mean, the building is part of the parcel we wanted to retain ownership over. So if there was virtue in that, how do we just, now is there, how does that virtue not carry over to the building, which is part of the parcel? Either we want to own this stuff or we don't. So I'm not comfortable today doing anything beyond cessation of our relationship with peoples and giving the rest of Durham an opportunity to weigh in on this, their property, their piece of land. Because the last representation we made to them is that we'd be acting based upon those five priorities. If we're not doing that anymore, I think the people have a right, all of the groups have a right to come back before us. So I think we should hold.
Let me get, let me get some direction real quick before we go any further. All of you all that are in favor of ending a relationship with peoples, let me see your hands. Okay. You got that? All right. I was going to suggest instead of doing a lot of talking, we still have capacity with HRNA. Would we like HRNA to go back and bring us options with, I guess, community groups or the folks that are involved, so that we can have something to actually deliberate upon rather than keeping it open ended?
I would just like to be more specific, a whole lot more specific.
With, like, the options?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Like, because right now, if I go around and ask you all, it's going to be open ended, we may not get a consensus. But if we take a formal process, which we have the consultants, okay, we've made a decision on peoples. All right, now, what are some options we can truly explore?
I think the options should be like in this timeframe or for, from, for now.
Are you mean some options specifically?
It should be specific to a Preservation Durham with Milton Small Building and affordable housing coming up off the ground.
I would be interested in hearing sort of like what is possible. Because that is possible, that's part of it.
That could be a third option, but I think those two should be in it.
I think, and based on what I'm hearing today, preservation is automatically going to be considered as well. So we still have capacity there. Before we get into any other commentary, let me ask, would we be interested in working still with the capacity that's left with HRNA? We're not specifically saying what yet.
To do what? I mean.
So now, so now that we're going to, if we're, the direction appears that we are going to separate ties with peoples. We're back to the drawing board. We still have our priorities, but we're back to the drawing board. And so it's like now, we have a consultant still. What, give us new options, you know?
Okay. So I think that, I think that, to me, the consultant follows whatever we want to do, since there's resources there. I think the question is, what do we want to do? I agree with Councilmember Freeman and the request from the city manager. I think we want to give as clear direction to the city manager as possible. I think we're actually not that far apart. I think for me, and I want to be careful, like, one of my old colleagues talked about the danger of hallucinating consensus. I don't think I'm hallucinating consensus to say, I've heard several people on this dais say, option three that the staff presented was the, was the sort of clear choice going forward. That doesn't mean we have all the details worked out there about how many units of affordable housing. You know, how do we parcel up? But I think that, to me, that's the direction we go in. We're saying we want to keep moving forward. To your comment, Mr. Mayor, this may be, this is not saying this is the, all this is ever going to happen there. To me, this is kind of phase one potentially. And we sort of, as the market changes, we can do more since we still will own the land, assuming we parcel off the Milton Small Building. We still do stuff behind, you know, that property.
We want to explore preservation with parceling off the land, maybe looking at a phase one, phase two, phase three option.
Right. Parceling off with the preservation and affordable housing, those two things. Again, that's referenced in option three there, right? Solicited a developer for Milton Small and/or affordable housing. I would say, and affordable housing. To me, that's a pretty clear direction, the staff. The details, they'll have to work out, potentially with HRNA. But I think that's a pretty clear direction, which I would support.
Yeah, I agree. So my guardrails, I guess, would be Preservation Milton Small, a phased approach, a master planned site, a cohesive site with short term options, one of them being affordable housing and some sort of activated space. And to your point earlier, Mr. Mayor mentioned, use the word crown jewel. I don't think we want to abandon everything that we've been working on before. I don't think we want to abandon the idea that there be some sort of iconic building, especially up on Chapel Hill. But it's a large site and what else can happen to other parts of the site in the interim? And do we need to wait on other parts of the site? We need those options. So I'd be interested in options for my HRNA.
I like every, I think the phased approach is the right approach and that is in many ways beyond our control. I appreciate what Mayor Protom said about that master vision. I don't think that that moves away from it. It's just being, it's just acknowledging that the market isn't really there for retail or some of the things that we were hoping to do on that site. I will say that with the, and I've said this before, with the, I'm not sold that it has to be Preservation NC. Like, I am interested in, can we do this in-house, right? The portioning off, I would at least like to understand that. I've said it for many years. I have felt for many years we needed development arm. I've said it. Is this an opportunity to do it? Maybe, and I'll leave it alone.
And I would just echo Councilmember Caballero's comment with the addition of, I mean, I think that the piece that is clear, like, I don't think there was any, any mix up in there. It feels like somebody made, like, there was a comment made, but no one said sell the rest of the property. Like, it's just that one piece. So parceling off the Milton Small Building makes the most sense right now because Preservation Durham or Preservation North Carolina is coming forward saying they would be willing to take it on for twenty-five million. Yeah. So however that moves forward, I still would like to see affordable housing on the site. And in every iteration of the site plans, there's been an L of the Milton Small Building and affordable housing on the other side. And I think we can do that, so.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to build off what Councilmember Caballero said, which is that I feel like we have been asking our staff questions, which like they just don't have the answers to because we haven't directed them to get the answers to them. And so for me, it is, I have not decided if I think any of these things is a good idea. But we've heard some numbers from one person, and not that I don't trust you, but it would just be great to have that, that information in front of us before we make any decisions. So I totally agree. I'm just interested in giving, allowing them to explore those options that we've done with, with preservation considered, with affordable housing in the short term, and just see what that information looks like when we get it.
That's right. I think, I think beyond that, I think we're not having any decisions, right? I think we want to see what can, what's possible with that. I will say, to be quite frank, you know, we use, we talk a lot about consultants, that we use too many consultants, that we're spending too much money. The reason you hire a consultant is to get specific expertise on something. I got to say right now, I don't think we have the staff that can do this. I think we need experts in preservation to do this. And that's why I think the groups that are coming forward, I think we should look at, because they have the expertise.
And it's not just preservation, it's also brownfields.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, at the end of the day, where I still land, I, the priorities that we last set, which was affordable housing, preservation, mixed use, economic, economic development. Yeah. At the end of the day, I still just rely on those priorities. And however we get there, and we are not helping the manager out at all.
You've just taken us back to 2018.
I just wanted to say, thank.
That's, that's where this started.
Councilmember Riss said it in rightsizing that kind of grand vision. It means you do a piece at a time. How do you eat an elephant? Unbite. So let's take the bite.
I think I want to draw the distinction between master planning the site and parceling off the site. I, I believe that master planning the site can create a concept, but that if what counsel wants to do is to respond to the advocacy they've heard today for either or both affordable housing and Milton Small Preservation, that, that would, that will make decisions about the site that you will not be able to revisit later, that you will, you'll be making permanent decisions on portions of the site. And they will lend a certain amount of clarity to what that whole block looks like with some future possibilities around the parts that you don't develop. So I, I want, you know, I think the conversation I've felt shift towards clarity. Let's, let's make some decisions. But then I hear counsel drifting back towards, but we want a master vision. And I just, I want to, as the staff who have to deliver that, the, you know, if you are moving forward with firm, firm direction on portions, portions of the site, then you are master planning half the site and you are giving direction on the half that you tell us to. So if you want the master plan first, that would be more of a planning engagement than an HRNA engagement to say, you know, what, what sort of concepts do you want to see? And how might the existing pieces fall into it? If instead what you're saying today is, we are ready to move forward, we, we are tired of, of waiting and we want some of these things, we can do that too. I, I don't want to over promise our ability to do both, that you can both make a decision about part of it, but still achieve a grand vision. Because I do think those two things are in tension with each other.
Well, thanks for asking politicians to give you clarity. Yeah, I, maybe, I don't know. You want to pave it and sell the rest? I don't know. I'd, I'd be interested in that as well.
Thank you. We don't have to make a decision today on all those things. We can decide not to go forward with peoples. We're the elected leaders of three hundred thousand people. And with all due respect to the organizations that have already shown up that are significant, it's not all of the folk we spoke to in the first place. So we don't have to substitute those variables right now. Because once we get to, and the whole point of the master plan, to begin with, one of the animating, kind of, the undergirding proposition behind it was piecemealing it by definition sets a trajectory for the rest of the project. I mean, you can, you can have the best intentions to come back and add stuff to it. But once you put something there, it has a defining character for the rest of the project, and that becomes the anchoring point. And the whole point of doing the master project was to make sure that our vision was captured in totality, with fidelity, in a comprehensive plan. We actually have something called a comprehensive plan because we understand the importance of looking at how pieces click together. With that said, my recommendation would be, and Mr. Manager, we had individual, we had small group conversations about plans to, the staff had some plans to maybe activate the area, clean it up, do some things in the interim. My recommendation would be to cessation, the main question, cessation with peoples, let the staff further massage what they were thinking in terms of activation. And then I think we've got, we got to talk to the rest of our bosses before we just kind of, you know, because even doing it piecemeal is not consistent with what the animating proposition was behind the master plan in the first place. And I just feel more comfortable checking in with the rest of the city who, who has dreams about this parcel as well. We don't have to substitute all these variables today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's been seven years already.
Couple more months.
Again, I want to make sure we leave here with giving clear direction to the manager. I don't want to leave this fuzzy. And I'm worried that if we sort of leave this fuzzy, hey, we just voted on, we're not going to go forward with peoples, but hey, you know, this, this thing just sort of, it gets behind everything else that's going on. So I don't know what, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like a, like a straw poll. But I think, I think the manager gave a clear question. You said like, you know, peoples or not, right? We think you said that. And then you said like, is it a master development or not? And as I understand that, I appreciate your clarifying that the choices there. I think there's a clear choice here. For me, like, not master development doesn't mean there's no vision, there's no cohesion. I think we got the principles we've talked about that still are there. But I think, to me, it's either master development, all one thing, or it's just kind of, you know, it's the, it's the not, which means some sort of phasing. But again, with those visions in mind, I think I want to, I want to leave today with giving you that direction. I think that's the most important thing to do. And I would love to see if we do like.
I'm for a hybrid master development. All right, that doesn't exist. Let's do this. Would that help you determine whether it's phased or overall?
Yes. Any, anything that you guys have a majority on, we're prepared to move forward. I just, I want to make sure if there's direction that the. I want to make sure that if there's actionable direction, that staff understands how to deliver on that action. We are also comfortable with taking no action. And, and you can direct us to bring back a phased discussion at another time where we revisit these issues. I don't want counsel to feel rushed into a vision for the property. Settling the people's question is the primary item, setting a direction for the parcel. I, I would echo both Mayor Protom's comments and Councilmember Riss. What we don't want to do is for, to leave this room with members of the public believing that staff have been given direction that we did not hear directly from you. So I think we want it to be clear that if you want us to engage in any development activity or discussions with affordable housing developers or discussions with Preservation North Carolina, that that be explicit. If you are not ready for that and would rather us plan a future conversation to talk about your steps forward, we are happy to do that as well. I want, I just don't want there to be expectation that we are talking to folks. If we are to be talking to folks, I want you to say that explicitly. Short of that, I want it to be known that we will not engage in conversations about the property other than to answer people's questions about its status.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook.
I would love to give clear guidance on when, time wise, it's coming back to us for those decisions. Because if it's something where we feel like it pretty immediately after our recess, we can have this information in front of us and we can then start moving forward in those communications, then like absolutely, that's fine. But if we don't feel like it can come that quickly, then I would be entertaining conversations with folks moving forward. So that is just a timing, but like immediately, yeah.
August.
So one thing I could offer, so in, in your individual briefings, I believe we closed a presentation with four options for what could happen next. I mean, it was very loose, but it was, you know, do nothing to the site, parcel the site, redevelop the site. And we, you know, we essentially brought that forward today. We could revise that discussion with some of the feedback we've heard today and bring it back with, with no recommendations, but simply with pro and con analysis and pick up where we left off today. And see, and, you know, if you have specifics you'd like us to explore between now and then, we can do that. And we can schedule that at counsel's discretion to happen soon after the. I don't want to offer the very first work session because we may have some work we want to do, but we could certainly take direction that you would like to hear it as soon as possible.
I would, I would, counsel, I would prefer we take some time to bring this back with more information. And let me poll you guys and see.
I'm fine as long as the timeframe is tight, right? Like, to Councilmember Cook's point, right? I don't, I think that we can do, I think what would be helpful is between now and then, have, has staff had a conversation with Preservation NC around what does that look like, right? Because if we, if we, if we just enter another conversation as Preservation NC and Durham, or Preservation Durham saying, oh, this could work, we're just back here, right? Can it actually work? I don't know. So if staff could actually have those conversations between now and our, our next conversation so we can say, yes, we like it, no, we don't, move on from that decision point. That's one thing I would think would be helpful. I think the other thing would be helpful is if there is a list of affordable housing providers that staff feels confident that they have delivered projects already. So not folks that we are unclear. So not folks that we are unclear on, that would be helpful. Again, so if we're going to move in the portioned out phased out, we know where we're going and we can, uh, clearly state to the public. Yes, we're doing a phased approach and this is why, or et cetera. And so that's the information I need to make a decision. Happy to have that conversation in August. Um, and when I say August, I hear staff about the first one, you know, that's a catch up one. So then whatever the second one is in August. So that way, folks who are also listening can see what the timeframe is to force us to make a decision. I don't know if that was helpful.
So that means staff is having conversations while, while we're on recess, right?
While we're on recess, they have, they can start having this conversation with these preservation folks. They can start having conversations around this affordable housing piece so that when we gather again in August, we can at least say, yeah, that we don't feel comfortable without maybe yes, this phased approach is a good idea or not, right? That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I think you're and Councilmember Cook are saying the same thing and which is what I agree with as well. All right. So who am I buying ice cream for to convince?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I agree that we should just make the decision about peoples and then get more information. We, we've granted, uh, continuance as developers for far less consequential, uh, matters.
Is everyone okay with that? Well, we.
Yeah, as long as we're not kicking the can down the road, that we're like staff are having conversations. It's not like wait until the fall to start having another.
It's not a hard kick. It's not kicking it hard.
No, we're, we're taught, we're as, as, as city managers that we're talking to people about these specific things that we.
And I, and I'll say to the community members, uh, just whoever's listening online out there, um, you know, I, I hope that you would appreciate that we're putting as much thought and effort in this as possible to get it right, uh, rather than just rushing forward and just doing something to say we did it. So I, I'd ask for the community's grace on that. Thank you. You, you have what you need now?
Yes, we, uh, we have a firm decision on peoples. Staff will reflect on this conversation, I think, uh, have some of the conversations that, that uh, council has asked to explore more about the Milton Small repurposing. Uh, I think we will have some further conversations about what a standalone use on the property for affordable housing would look like and bring you some options there. I'd like to, uh, bring in our planning department, talk a little bit about how planning concepts could, you know, frame the conversation for those decisions. Uh, and we will bring you back, no recommendations, but we'll bring you back further discussion and analysis with some, some thoughts about the viability of any or all of the, the two more prevalent options around affordable housing and Milton Small. Um, and I'm also looking at our staff to see if they feel like I missed anything or if there are critical questions that we didn't ask council that you would like to make sure we get direction on before we wrap up. You good?
Just clarifying question, just colleagues, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I, and I know we're saying we're, we're, it sounds like we're, you know, we're bidding ourselves a peoples. We are ending negotiations for this or what was previously planned. We're not just saying screw you peoples, we hate you and we never want to work with you again. That, I just want to make sure we're clear, we're not saying that. They can very well bid for any other projects in the future. They actually provided the best concept, you know, we just decided not to go forward with it, so.
So just to clarify, so we're, we're, we, we're cool with selling Milton Smalls, but nothing else? So the staff, the conversations will not be about parcelling anything else out, it's just a Milton Small's building, they agreed to sit on.
For me, it's not even, I want to understand from the preservation folks, what is it that they're seeing that we have been told otherwise? That's what I want our folks and, and for folks, for our staff to be real clear on. No, we don't have this experience in-house, to do it in-house would cost X amount of dollars so that I can actually make a real, a real decision on like, okay, you know, it doesn't benefit us to hold on to that portion of the land, right?
Okay, that's helpful because when I hear parceling out, when you operational and, and what, what NC preservation recommended.
They're recommending that, yes.
Selling it, right?
Right.
So, so we're exploring, so my question is, we're only exploring selling that piece of the parcel. Not the exploration of selling anything else. So, okay, just want to be clear. Because we told peoples we weren't selling anything.
Well, I would, I, I do want to seek clarity on that because I, I think in, in what I put forward, I also heard counsel discuss affordable housing independent. I, I heard the possibility that affordable housing move forward independent of the Milton Small. A, a possibility of Milton Small being used for affordable housing and the possibility of affordable housing moving forward independent of Milton Small. So I would like clarity because that, that would be a second parceling that would be considered. And, and if that is not on the table, staff will not explore that. If that is on the table, staff will explore that.
Okay, with, in, independent and with. With exploring an independent parcel. And, and, yeah, independent for affordable housing.
Yeah. I am, I, the only port parse, portion of the parcel that I am interested, and when I say interested, I am curious, I guess is the better word. Curious about the money, um, is the Milton Small's corner, literally the corner of the lot. Other than that, no, to Mayor Protem's point, uh, we retain it, especially when we're thinking about social housing and affordable housing. That to me is, 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 um, the, the part.
Again, specifically like Willard Street.
We, yeah, we.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, but that.
But our values have been maintained there.
Councilmember Freeman, I, I don't remember where you landed on the owning the land. I will just, uh, I will own that I've been at several conferences when they were talking about affordability and housing, that that is a shift within those conversations, that ownership by government is, is a critical underpinning of it. That is not knowledge I had, that is not knowledge I knew about. It could be also a shift within, things change, right? Like theories change, things change, right? So that is where my, um, lens is coming from. And when we talk about this subsidy in perpetuity and for 50 years and whatnot, it gets a lot harder to deliver on those timeframes. It's just why you see for 30 years or you see for 40 years, right? So that is where my lens is coming from, which is why I'm not interested in selling the rest of the portion. And I'm only curious about selling, selling the Milton Smalls. What I want to see is like AB, right?
I appreciate that. That makes sense on the government side, but I would say that in the sense, the developers like Habitat, DCLT, like there are developers who can own in perpetuity that would present and I, like, that's all I'm saying. So it's not like you would limit it. I wouldn't limit it is what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I just say to Councilmember Freeman's point, I mean, I've gone to a lot of conferences too on, on housing over the years. And the ownership of government point is usually raised as the government having an option to leverage their ownership to do what they want to do, rather than waiting for the market to provide. I mean, that's what we did at Willard Street. We took our land and used what we own to do affordable housing. And that's been the depositing of the, the power of, at least the conferences I've attended. The, the power has been in the fact that you own it. You can, uh, build your own affordable housing or dictate it for affordable housing. Not that perpetual ownership secures that, your title is what secures it and dictating what goes on it. But I appreciate it, my colleagues. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna.
I just wanted to add one thing, which is that in, in this conversation about getting the information that we need in order to make a decision. I, I heard you say that planning department would be involved. I think that'd be super helpful. And then also, um, if they have other suggestions, like potentially maintaining ownership of the land and selling just the building or something like that. I'd be also interested in hearing any of those things. So there's any options in there, I just want to learn as much as I can before I have to make a decision.
All right. Thank you. All right, let's move on, guys. Yeah, I, I am gonna have to.
Can I just, can I just make sure that we don't leave? Because positing, learn as much as you can until it's actually sold, until the actual building's being built. The consultant's not going to be able to give you a whole lot around what actually would happen without actually doing something. So I just don't want us to, to fall back on that, that's all.
All right, um, let's, let's get to the next item. Good? All right, six. Colleagues, I will say I will have to leave out during this presentation.
Good af- good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of Council, Christina Riordan, Budget and Management Services Director. Um, I am here before you because, um, we, um, heard at the last, uh, work session that you had some, um, lingering questions. And so there is a memo in your packet today which answers some of those questions. There was one particular item that we did feel like, um, council wanted some additional information. So we have prepared a presentation on the Durham minimum livable wage and it's, and part-time employees. And so I'm going to turn that over to, um, Jim Rhinegruber in our Human Resources Department. And then, um, we'll be available for questions if you have them.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Members of Council, Jim Rhinegruber, Assistant Director of Human Resources. We have a fair, fairly big agenda or a fair bit of information to get through, but I'll try and be respectful of people's marital issues and make sure I'm not wrecking anybody's home. So, um, make sure you get off to a good start and or keep, keep on the, on the right path with your, with your marriage, so. Uh, we, so you all did ask for some, some, uh, general information on part-time employees. So we, we brought some of that back with some background data. You also raised the question about how changing, uh, part-time pay for performance might work. So we're going to show you some costs related to that. And finally, we're going to go through a few scenarios related to the, uh, minimum livable wage showing um, how decisions would affect those costs and, and associated issues. Uh, Mr. Manager, I don't know if you want to chime in on this?
I'll take this one. This, this was my slide. So, um, obviously as counsel saw, we're prepared to respond today to direction you gave us. And we've developed some options for you around DMLW as they pertain to the part-time pay plan. I wanted to start by reaffirming that, um, it is still my recommendation not to do so. And I want to explain that, uh, as we head into it. And I wanted to do that in front so that you could weigh these options and understand how I get to my recommendation. And, and I, I will assert that I believe a public sector pay plan needs to respect three primary values. The first is that people need to perceive it as being fair and equitable, meaning if you're in that plan or if you're looking at that plan, there seems to be a, a sense of fairness in how it treats you and in comparison to how it treats other people. So we need a, a plan that is fair and equitable. We need it to be affordable. The public pays for this. We don't have unlimited money and so we need to consider the cost. And then finally, it needs to be just. It needs to honor our values and particularly Durham's values, that wages need to approach a level at which people can, can have a meaningful quality of life. I posit for all of you that, that all of these things to a certain extent are in tension with each other. I don't, I have never been part and never been aware of a pay plan that, that everyone feels is perfect. And that is because different people value different things, um, on this list at different levels. There are people who would prefer a much more affordable plan that employees wouldn't fear, feel equitable about and that council members wouldn't feel is just, uh, and likewise you could lean into the other measures. As your manager, what I tried to do and what I is discern where you are on this list and bring you a proposal that balances all of these things. My recommendation not to make a, a change at this time is based on that assessment. As we go forward, I want you to know, we are prepared to implement your direction on any of these options. And we have in good faith tried to develop options that, that we think are responsive to the concerns you expressed. But I wanted to make it clear that it's not just affordability and the ability to pay for the changes, that I have concerns about any of our options not being able to balance the fairness equity piece against the affordability and the just piece. So I, I wanted to start there, which is not to forestall counsel. I want to be clear, we are fully prepared to implement any of these options. Uh, but I wanted you to have a strong sense of that my recommendation is not just an affordability based recommendation. We have fairness and equity concerns about some of the proposals. With that, I'd like Jim to go forward and we're happy to answer questions as, as we go over at the end. Thank you.
Great. So just as a quick reminder, the ordinance does make a distinction between commensurate, which is positions that are indexed to a commensurate full-time classification. And then non-commensurate, which are those part-time positions that don't, uh, perform work that are commensurate to a full-time classification. So the commensurate positions, uh, must be paid the minimum livable wage. And, um, the presentation today is mainly going to focus on the non-commensurate positions because those are, those are the ones that are questioned. So first we're going to look through some general information about our part-time employee population. Um, this is similar to what we presented last week, but this has the census updated through May 30th now. So this is, this is fresh information. Some takeaways here, there are a little over three times as many non-commensurate, uh, positions here as there are commensurate employees. The vast majority of those, 245 out of the 267 are Parks and Recreation employees. And, uh, by the way, special thanks to Parks and Rec who, they worked with us all through the year on this, but intensely over the past week. So many thanks to, to them for doing that. But of those, of the 267 non-commensurate employees, there are currently 159 that make below the 1958. And it's projected that after the proposed pay adjustments for FY '26, 234 will actually be below 2190, which is the new DMLW. So again, these numbers are different from what you saw last week just because, um, Parks and Rec is, or mainly Parks and Rec, but other departments too, um, have hired others, especially more seasonal employees after the census that we used for last week's presentation. So again, these, these represent, uh, current state as of May 30th. And here are some high level demographics. You all asked for some, some demographics of the non-commensurate employees. And, you know, based on what you all discussed at the budget work session last week, I don't think anybody sees any surprises here, but. So this slide and the, and the next one contain a lot of data, but, um, what you're seeing is a breakdown of the 267 non-commensurate employees as things stand today. The job classifications up there are sorted by the number of people that are in those positions and it's sorted from, from highest to lowest. You can see by each classification how many people work in that job, how many hours the average person in that job works per year. And then if you take that currently hourly, hourly average of, of pay for those employees and multiply it by the average hours they work, you arrive at an average annual salary. So again, these are all averages. These aren't any specific one employee. Um, and just to, you know, just to reiterate this, it just because a job is non-commensurate, that doesn't mean it's automatically paid below DMLW. There are, um, many, or not many, but there are some that are, that are paid above. And as I noted on an earlier slide, currently 159 of the 267 non-commensurate employees are below the current minimum livable wage of 1958, but there are some above and some significantly above. So just like, um, so this is, I'm sorry, this is the second slide with the rest of the classifications. Um, and fewer numbers of employees obviously occupy these. All right. So just like last week, let's tackle the sort of easier one first, the question about pay for performance. As you know, the current part-time plan steps are at 3% spreads. You all asked about the possibility of changing that to 5% spreads. And that would cost about $270,000. And, um, one of the benefits of that would, is that it would result and we're, we project about 44 of the 234 that were going to be below the DMLW would now be making more than 2190. So it would pick up some of that 234 if we did that. So now onto some of the more dense material. Um, we wanted to show a few scenarios that would result in either making further progress toward or complete implementation of getting all part-time employees up to the DMLW. But, um, we're going to show it's not without some drawbacks and consequences, uh, hence the manager's recommendation he spoke about a minute ago. So, um, yeah, first when we, when we, um, just to set some context here, when we talk about making sure employees are paid the DMLW, there's two primary tools that are used to accomplish this. One way is you can move the employees. So you can progress them along steps until they hit a step that is at or above the DMLW. And then the other way is to move the entire pay structure. So those are, those are the two primary options. Of course, you can end up doing a combination of both, but the ultimate goal is to balance the three tenants that the manager spoke about at the beginning, um, and, and, uh, make your pay plan work that way.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but.
Sure.
We do our our full-time employees. Do we do a combination of those two methods to get them up to?
We do.
Okay.
We do. Yes.
Thanks.
I'd clarify, though, that when we did combine moving the structure and compression in the pay plan, it's because there was a very small margin that we were correcting for. I think the reason why you don't see scenarios in front of you today that combine the two is because so because almost the entire pay plan is below the DMLW that there there's no real way where where a combination helped. So we're just showing you what the different options look like. Jim, would you agree with that?
That's right. And I should clarify, too, that last year, we, when the pay study was done, we just moved the entire structure. So that was that was a pay plan piece. But yes, this this year, the proposal is a combination, again, affecting very few people compression-wise, but it is a combination technically.
That's one more question. Sorry. So when we're looking at Durham Minimum Living Wage, we are looking at it by hour for these employees, obviously, because they're not full-time. And we look at it sometimes by hour and sometimes by annual salary for our full-time employees. Is that correct?
Correct. The way the the way the ordinance reads is it's basically it for full-time employees, it is by the annual amount. We break it down hourly because it's more understandable. But the way the ordinance reads, it's an annual amount for.
It's calculated by by what you need to make in a year to maintain a certain standard of living. And the hourly number is provided to help to give clarity. And that's, of course, been a point of conversation with Durham firefighters, who get calculated an hourly rate but are paid by their salary. And so that that's been why that has sometimes been discussed at the council level.
All right. So jumping into a oh, sorry, council member.
If I could just if we're asking questions the other way, I just on this issue of like commensurate, noncommensurate, I just want to make sure you understand this, because I've looked at the whole chart you have of the noncommensurate employees. And so I get in I get sort of conceptually that that part-time employees that are performing work that is commensurate with a full-time shall be paid no less than the wage. But then if I look at the jobs here, and I see lifeguard, like, is a part-time lifeguard not commensurate with a didn't we even have full-time lifeguard? We probably don't. So so why is that on the list? They're doing work of a lifeguard.
Right, they're they're on the noncommensurate list.
But noncommensurate with what?
With with any full-time classification that the city has.
Of lifeguard.
Which we don't have. So if what commensurate means if we have a full-time job that does a certain full-time person that does a certain job, and we also have a we hire someone part-time that does the same job, then we will index them together. But if we only have someone who is part-time, and there is no full-time equivalent, that is noncommensurate, and they are paid what I would describe the philosophy that governs their pay is market rate. So we pay what the market pays in those positions, or frequently above market, I would argue in a lot of.
It's not a technicality, just because you don't have a full-time lifeguard. So you're saying it's noncommensurate. But if you had full-time lifeguards, they probably would be commensurate.
If we had full-time lifeguards, they would be classified in our normal pay and classification system. We don't have full-time, so we classify them the way we classify part-time employees. The point of commensurate is to say it would be it would be an equity problem to have. So I think maintenance assistant is one of the positions. So we have people who who have who do part maintenance year-round, and they are classified as part of our pay plan. We also have people who are part-time, who do the exact same work. We made a value statement that they will both be paid what the full-time person is paid. However, if there is no full-time equivalent, then you will only need you will only be classifying someone by the position that they do, which is by by nature of the work we have, those the rest of those are noncommensurate part-time.
Yeah, no, I understand completely. What I was saying is it's somewhat of a technicality. Since we for many of these positions, we do have full-time people that you could be either commensurate or noncommensurate with. There are just no full-time lifeguards. And so therefore, by definition, you're noncommensurate. But I again, I'm saying, if we had lifeguards that were full-time, then I'm sure most of the part-time lifeguards would probably be commensurate with full-time. Right?
They absolutely would be.
So therefore.
But I don't think that's a technicality. I think that describes two different types of jobs. A lifeguard job for us, we we don't have the opportunity, I mean, we don't have the the dynamics in what we require to need a it's not like we're choosing not to have a full-time lifeguard to keep them.
I guess that's a that's a question I would have, actually.
Invite our Parks and Recreation staff to.
Because we have pools open all year round, not outdoor pools, but we have pools open year-round.
Hi, I'm Joy Guy, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. Our full-time professional entry-level position is a recreation specialist. And so we do have recreation specialists that work in our aquatics division. But those individuals not only may they they may lifeguard, but they also have many other duties assigned to them as well, including things like planning for swim lessons, instructional programs, contracting with instructors, you know, additional higher-level responsibilities, if you will.
That's you. You mentioned that's that's the 31 employees on that second line. That's the we can go back to that slide. That's the I think you just mentioned the recreation. Next one.
And a recreation specialist is a full-time position. So that's what I was referring.
What's the recreation services aide?
The recreation services aide is an entry-level position that assists with our front desk operations. Typically, when you see aide in the title,
Okay.
it is going to be more.
So what you're saying is that there are there are recreation, what's the term you use for who would do maybe do lifeguarding?
Recreation specialists. We do have recreation specialists in the aquatics division that have their lifeguard certifications. They also have additional certifications, which may allow them to teach and train other lifeguard to, you know, individuals to become lifeguards. You know, I mean, they have other responsibilities that benefit our operation and how we're set up to operate.
Okay, I'll come back to this, but thank you.
I have a quick question. And this is I was going to ask this at the end, but I do need to leave. So if we were to move everyone up to if we were to move everyone up, I had asked for demographic information, because I wanted to know if there are people that are receiving supplemental income, people that are in retirement, people that are getting childcare support because they make under a certain amount of money. And if we move, if we decide to move everything up, then therefore, therefore, we could potentially be canceling some benefits for some people. Again. Yeah, the benefits cliff. So that's why I was reluctant of just moving everybody to that point. And that's one of those things we usually don't think about. But when two employees came, it was like, you mess with my you mess with my benefits here. Okay, I thank you. And I'll, you know, I'll look into that. That that was after I asked for the demographic information. I asked for demographic information, because I didn't want to assume that everyone was a, you know, a certain individual, like, it could be, you know, all middle schoolers or all high schoolers, all I think it was a single a teacher, you know, doing a summer job. So is it is it fair to say that it's possible, if we move everyone up, that we could potentially clip some people that are that are doing this job, just so they can get supplemental income, but not make more than it would impact their retirement or something else?
I'm going to defer on that one.
I think they're working because they want to work.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilors. That is correct. There are certain people in our that work for our Parks and Rec Department that are on supplemental incomes, low-income housing, and getting those types of aid. But the requirement is they cannot work a certain amount of hours, and their pay can't be over a certain threshold because it will jeopardize those benefits.
So I know my mom needs to work to make additional money. She works at the museum in Rocky Mount. She lives in Durham. But she can only work a certain amount of hours. She she wants to work more, but she knows she can't because she would lose it. But she does need the hours. I don't think the solution is to say work less hours. I think people are working because not only they want to, but they need to. And that, just to my colleagues, this was the concern I had of moving everyone in part-time to that minimum wage. I can totally appreciate what we're trying to do. But in addition to the compression that's about to be created, it's bigger than just saying, hey, we did it. In Durham, this is what you get as a minimum wage. There are people that we could negatively affect. But I just wanted to put that out there and as part of deliberations. Thank you all. I need to run.
Okay. So let's look at what would happen if we did sort of what the mayor just said and just said, everyone who's making below 2190 will move you up to 2190. And so this is essentially the moving the people method that I mentioned in the previous slide. What this would end up doing is completely compressing two salary grades in the part-time plan, mostly compress a third and partially hit a fourth as well. In all, it would compress 230 total part-time employees, and there would be a total of 237 noncommensurate employees, all making exactly 2190, regardless of how long they've been with us, the level of work they do, that sort of thing. So this scenario would cost about $550,000 for this current fiscal year we're doing the budget for. And if we use the same method in FY27, with the expected minimum livable wage that's going to be next year, it would cost around 800,000. So making the two-year cumulative cost around 1.35 million. But let's look at some of the issues that this would cause using some variations of examples that we actually showed you last week. So this first one's a more mild example of a consequence of compression that's created between two part-time positions. One's non- commensurate, and one is commensurate. So the park gatekeeper is noncommensurate, the maintenance assistant is commensurate. The maintenance assistant currently starts at 1958, which is the current minimum livable wage. And they'll start at 20. So they'll start at 2190 when the new DMLW is implemented. But in this scenario, the park gatekeeper, who had previously previously been at 1665, is now also at 2190. So the maintenance assistant has more complex duties, more stringent minimum requirements. And the tenants that the manager talked about, that first one of equity and fairness is is kind of injured here. So this example is a little more impactful. Just like the full-time plan, there are job series in the part-time plan. So here's one showing our care programs in Parks and Rec. These are care program-related jobs that are that are part of a progression or a series. And you see the pay distinctions for the different levels of work, responsibilities, and requirements. So in this scenario, the starting pay for all these jobs is flattened out at 2190. And again, this illustrates injury to that first first tenant. The different levels of the job complexity are devalued here, and experience is also devalued because basically, all the all the steps of people have gotten increases in prior years, that's all flattened out to 2190 as well. So just to summarize the first scenario here, it does accomplish getting all part-time employees to DMLW. And of the scenarios that we have in here, this is the least costly one. However, the violations of that first tenant have some pretty significant consequences. And, you know, it basically ends up removing the financial incentive for taking on roles that have greater responsibilities, pursuing certifications, and working toward advancement. This likely impacts morale of the people that are especially that are in sort of the higher-level positions, could lead to dissatisfaction and turnover there. And you know, the city, of course, has control over how it handles this. But this also incentivizes Parks and Rec to seek and hire people at the higher-level positions, and not necessarily use the entry-level positions as much. And right now, so the current system really does provide a nice kind of entryway for those looking to, as a first job, come and gain experience, build some skills, you know, this progression I showed on the previous slide, you can move up. So this scenario event, you know, potentially has the or basically has the potential to destroy that possibility. So on that cheering note, let's look at another scenario. This one avoids the problems of the first scenario, but then creates some issues of its own. So kind of following a progression here. Okay, the first one created some issues. Let's mitigate those issues and see what that looks like. So this scenario makes the first step of the part-time pay plan 2190. So that's a 31.5% increase to that particular step. And then that 31.5% is run through the entire part-time plan. So this is the other method I mentioned a couple of slides ago. This is this is moving the structure. And again, this mitigates all the issues of the first scenario. You don't have that compression, but creates a whole new set of problems with the full-time plan now. So this method is estimated at 1.8 million for FY26 and another million for FY27. So about 2.8 million cumulative over over the course of the two years. So this probably looks familiar. We showed this last week. And this shows how noncommensurate jobs create bypassing in the full-time plan. You can see that by using the methodology in this scenario on the part-time plan, you've increased hourly wages to the point where these part-time positions that do have significantly less lesser duties and responsibilities now have higher starting pay than a full-time position and a full-time position that could supervise some of these people supervisors. So we're talking, you know, could be multiple steps or multiple steps in the hierarchy above that that are getting bypassed here. And this also impacts commensurate full-time positions and their corresponding full-time classifications. Here are a couple of examples that illustrate this. And in these two cases, the end, there's actually eight other full-time classifications where the same thing happens, so 10 total. You have a situation where the part-time commensurate position is making significantly more than the full-time one they're indexed to. So there are currently 202 positions in those 10 classifications in the full-time plan that would be impacted by this. And those those numbers just address the direct impacts. But of course, there are many other classifications in the full-time plan that are on the same same grades as these other classifications that would be directly impacted here. And so that, again, that that comparative fairness tenant is is again significantly impacted here. All right. So to sum this scenario up again, we've achieved getting everyone to DMLW and avoided the compression issues of scenario one. But now we've created full-on widespread bypassing with the full-time plan. So here we are back with with tenant number one again. And by the way, making changes in the full-time plan to address the issues that we just created would be extremely costly. So, you know, just following the path here, let's say we keep chasing fixing these issues that we keep creating. So we then look at adjusting the full-time plans by that same 31 and a half percent, just to keep all the current relationships intact, you know, no bypassing, no compression. Now, we're now we're, for the first time, really severely impacting tenant two of affordability. We're not just talking about $1 to $2 million here. We're talking about $92 million for FY26 to stretch that out and make it so there's no problem whatsoever. So admittedly, the first two scenarios are extreme, but that's that's kind of the point. You know, it would take it would take something pretty extreme to ensure that every part-time job in FY26 is paid at least the minimum livable wage. But let's look at what happens in a scenario that doesn't accomplish the goal of getting everyone to the minimum livable wage this this current fiscal year, but does put a dent in it. This scenario demonstrates what would happen if we picked a grade. So we kind of started the third grade down here and started at the minimum livable wage. So this particular grade is the one that the program assistant senior that we showed a few slides ago lives on. And that would be a little bit over a 13% increase to the $19.37 current starting pay for that grade. And then to avoid And then to avoid compression in that, the 13%, 13, I think it's 13.06% or 505% would be run through the whole part-time plan, including the grades that are, that precede the grade that this would start at. So then that would make the starting salary of part-time 1882 at the lowest grade. And instead of 234 employees below DMLW, it's now 106. So, um, and you see the costs up there. They're significant, but less than, less than scenario two. However, we still don't escape that bypassing of the full-time plan. So even though it's less than shown in scenario two, we're, we're back with our old friend tenant number one again. So going back to the example we just used in scenario two, you see that the bypassing is not as severe, but it's still there. The same group of commensurate positions still all bypass their full-time equivalents. And as I said, this does not get everyone up to DMLW. This table looks a lot, looks like a lot of stuff, but it's actually pretty simple. It shows the number of people below the DMLW at a given hourly rate for each classification under this scenario. So this is again, based on the actual May 30 census. And it's a breakdown of the 106 mentioned a couple of slides ago that would be below DMLW after scenario three adjustments. So summing this scenario up, it shows that we still have a significant number of people below DMLW when we have to, even when we make compromises. And the compromise still violated that first tenant by creating bypassing with the full-time plan. And then I'll just sum up by saying that, that we know FY27 is going to be a challenge. It's going to take some creativity to meet the requirements of the DMLW, preserve the three tenants of pay plans because those tenants are, you know, relevant for all of our pay plans. So we're going to be looking at part-time in conjunction with full-time, looking at the classifications in there again, a fresh look. And then, you know, bringing, bringing information forth in a, in a timely manner, which I know was a concern brought up last time. So any other questions?
Before, before, is this the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Because we have a couple of residents, neighbors who had wanted to speak on this issue. So I'm going to, I want to allow them first and then we'll turn to the, to the council. If they're still here, I want to welcome Thurman Couch and Finesse Couch. Do they speak already? Okay, right. This is the issue. They're gone. Okay. All right. We'll make sure we contact them and let them know that this issue came up. The same person, they filled out too hard. All right, colleagues, council member Cook, please.
Talk about benefits between part-time and full-time, please, real quick.
So, yes. There are. So first of all, full-time employees, yes, benefits. You know, we, we all have health and dental and, and vision and options for other, other insurance and retirement and all that. Part-time, it varies. Part-time, it, it depends on the level of part-time position you are. And I'm glad one jumped up here because you can answer this much better than I can.
Yes, it depends on your part-time position.
Gwen Burnett, human resources manager, sorry. Part-time, if you work 1,000 hours, you contribute to the retirement system. For P3s, they get the health, the dental and the vision benefits in addition to retirement, which is the same as what a full-time employee would get as well.
All right, could you do that again, just like half the speed?
Okay, sorry. Okay, part-time, 1,000 hours, so they get retirement.
That's the threshold, okay.
Yes.
1,000 hours for retirement.
Correct.
And then you said the...
Part, P3, so that's part-time, the 30 hours. So at that point, that's when the, the medical, dental and vision benefits also kick in.
Okay. And how many of our part-time employees meet these two thresholds? Do you have a number?
I don't have that number, but we could look it up for you.
No, but in the presentation, the chart did have average hours. So it, it's not the exact number she asked. But could we go back to the slide that showed average numbers of hours worked back in the demographic side? So you do see in that third average number. So that, that's not actual employees, but that could give you a sense of who's meeting the various thresholds.
Yeah, I only see...
I believe there's one more slide.
Yeah.
Then event coordinators.
Okay, sorry. I see 11 people over 1,000 dollars. Average. Okay. That is helpful. And then we just...
Reminder that these are just the non-commensurate. The commensurate positions are not on this list. So there may be additional part-time, but for this conversation, this was non-commensurate.
These are just the folks that are not, not in with the minimum wage statute. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I asked the question earlier about annual versus hourly calculations and it, and it was because of this, which is that I understand that there is like theoretical compression, but there are benefits, job security and multiple hours that you are guaranteed if you are a full-time employee as opposed to if you are a part-time employee. And so when we're looking at compression, I understand that it's there, but it's not exactly the same thing as when we're looking at compression in our full-time employee chart, right? It's not exactly the same because it's not, it's not comparing apples to apples necessarily. So I, I appreciate the presentation. I, I still feel like this is something that I, I am interested in. And I know that option two is the most expensive that we got, but that is the one that seems the fairest to me in terms of, in terms of not compressing within the part-time employee structure. So those are, that's just what I'm thinking from the presentation.
Thank you, council member. Were, were you done? Anybody else? Colleagues? Uh, council member Riss.
Thanks, Mayor Pretem. First of all, let me just say, I'm so happy that we're just talking about living wages on this council. It's a great discussion to have. As y'all know, I brought forth the request in the budget process to, to do this, to raise salaries for all part-time folks, temporary, part-time temporary folks up to, up to the living wage. And so I'm glad we're having this discussion. As y'all also know, I was the founder of the Durham Living Wage Project, which built on the city's living wage ordinance to encourage private employers to do the same thing the city is doing about paying a living wage. This is really important to me. I think it's obviously clear we got some trade-offs here, right? The first thing to notice is that, you know, in the first scenario, it's not that expensive to pay the folks who are part-time or the part-time folks who are below the minimum wage to pay the minimum wage. It's not that expensive, $500,000, right? But it does create, as you've mentioned, as you identified, some compression of bypassing issues. So it's, it's, it's not simple, right? I appreciate you providing different scenarios. I mean, I was, the first two scenarios seems like a little bit like, almost like straw man. The third one's, I appreciate the thinking there, although we're still just talking about essentially some version of moving part-time employees or moving the part-time pay structure, right? And so I want to offer an anecdote and then offer a suggestion for maybe a fourth way to go forward. So in, when we were doing the Durham Living Wage Project, one of our, one of our flags of employers was an employer you all know. And this is Self-Help Credit Union. Full disclosure, I'm on the board of Self-Help. So we went to Self-Help, their mission aligned with us. They wanted to pay their employees living wage. They're also a large financial institution. And so even for someone whose mission aligned as Self-Help, when we came to them and said, hey, would you certify as a, as a living wage employer? They said, ah, it's going to take us a couple of years to line up our budgets and our personnel to actually make this work. So we want to do this, but it's going to take us a couple of years to get there. And so I guess what I want to suggest is something similar for the city of Durham. And I think Councilman McCabier referred us at our last work session when we talked about this. Like, we talked about this last year in the budget and sort of just things just went away. And then we're back here this year in the budget, looking at the budget. And again, saying like, we've got part-time seasonal folks who are below living wage. We want to do better than that. We want to be a living wage city. And so would it be possible for staff to go back and say, over the next couple of years, we're going to look carefully about who these part-time folks are that are non-commensurate? And figure out like, for example, I know we've talked about this again on the Recreation Advisor Committee. Some cases, DPR has collapsed part-time folks into one full-time position. Are there things we can do like that? And other, other ways to address this that we can get as many people who work for the city of Durham, who are part-time employees either full-time or to some living wage standard? Can we do that over a couple of years so that we live into our values of paying fair wages, right? Living wages, but also don't violate the other principles you mentioned, Mr. City Manager, about, I forgot what the other two words, but that we kind of balance all that. Can we do that over the next couple of years and say, in a couple of years, we're gonna, we're gonna do virtually all we can to get all these folks up to the minimum livable wage in a way that can, again, is responsible to our finances, finances, but also live into our values of making sure everyone earns a living wage? Because as you mentioned last time, there's a lot of care workers on here that are taking care of our kids every day, right? That are not earning a living wage and that's not cool. So that's my suggestion.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Manager.
We, we would be happy to, uh, to undertake an exercise, to come back to council with a, a fuller exploration of how, of options. Obviously, we developed these options. Yeah, we developed these options based on the conversation you had last week. So I freely admit that, that these were, you know, a rushed exercise and, and did not, certainly did not take into account sort of a broad perspective of how other organizations have moved into those principles. So the answer is, is yes, we could do that and be happy to have our HR department, you know, look at other areas. You know, I don't, um, there are a few, you know, I, I do think we anticipated that if council moved forward with one of these today, we, we would actually do some of the things you said. It would, it would probably result in the, you know, it would likely be more efficient, you know, for the department to combine some of these responsibilities into full-time positions. But I would want to vet that with council because I do think that means fewer opportunities. I mean, I do think one of the things we very legitimately heard from our, mostly from our Parks and Recreation Department as we had these discussions over the last few days is some of these positions are very accessible for people who have no, no skills and are moving into the workforce and become a ladder up into the workforce. And should these positions not be here because we implemented a system that relied more heavily on full-time employees, that that may create, that may eliminate an opportunity for people to get into these progressions? I would want to explore that fully with the department. I think those are things we could do over the year. And again, I mean, it is our desire to satisfy the council's objective here. And the, we, we are not, we didn't raise these concerns to dissuade you. We, we feel like it's our job to, to show you some of these issues. And I just want to come back to my initial comments on, you know, I, I absolutely hear, uh, you know, what, what I think is a consensus on council or not a consensus, but, but some opinions on council that the compression issue shouldn't matter that much. I just, I feel an obligation to tell you as your manager that it is probably the number one issue that employees complain about. Not what I get paid, but what I get paid compared to someone else. It is probably the number one complaint. I have multiple examples where employees feel like they should have some separation. And so I just, I don't, I don't want to undersell that as a problem for you and then have it come back later. If I, if I make you understand that it's important and you do it anyway, that's fine. I am fine with you telling us that. I just need to do my job to make sure you understand your employees care very much what they make in, in comparison to others, which is why it was challenging for us to develop a scenario that we felt satisfied all those objectives.
If I can just respond real quick, that I think, you know, obviously staff did a, a lot of work last year with a compensation study. And we did a lot of work and I think we, we've, we felt the fruits of that this year. We're, we're reducing our vacancies. We've got, you know, we don't have the same concerns about sort of complaints about compression and so forth. So I think that's real. Again, that's why I'm suggesting, given that a couple of years to start lining things up so we can, to the extent possible, eliminate those jobs that are, or, or sort of reduce number of people that are working part-time at a less livable wage.
Councilman McCabier?
First of all, thank you, um, thank you for running this analysis. And I know you all did a lot of, a lot of work over the last few, uh, last week. Uh, and thank you, um, Councilmember Riss for, for bringing this forward. I'd just point out that, you know, it's rough, the Durham Minimum Livable Wage Ordinance. And I commend the past council who, who implemented that and adopted that ordinance. It's rough. However, it's also not the minimum livable wage. It's based on the last four years, kind of in a, in a rapid, in a, in a, in a city where prices are rapidly escalating. It's kind of what the minimum livable wage was two years ago. So all of these numbers, all of these numbers are, are rough. Um, and I, I just want to point that out as, as well. And of course, you know, I, I brought forward going down, changing the definition from the last four years to the last three years. I think that would have been a shock to the system. And as we know, prices started changing really four or five years ago. And so we're, we're, that is kicking into the minimum livable wage ordinance. And, uh, as we know now, um, we're seeing almost double the highest percentage increase in the minimum livable wage that we've, that we've seen. And so it, it's doing, it's, it's doing its job. Now, uh, my, my question is, um, so you're recommending against, um, against these options. We also have the part-time pay for performance potentially going from 3% to 5%. Was that a recommendation?
That was information that was requested by council. The current proposed budget does not contemplate that change.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be one that I, that I would consider at this point. I, I would, I would be, I would be interested in, in exploring what it looks like. I, I would hesitate to select one of these scenarios now with so little time, with the costs, with uncertainty, with the fact that compression really matters to employees. I, I would, that's just too much for me to support at this point. But I would entertain, I'd like to listen to my colleagues about entertaining the, the part, moving up from part-time pay for performance from 3% to 5%. Uh, and any additional comments staff might have about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmembers, Councilmember McCabier?
Thank you. Um, one question I had is, we know where this is going next year because you kind of forecasted it, which then means that the gap between our part-time workers and our full-time workers, it just gets more expensive to close it over time, right? So that's my kind of concern is that, um, it just gets more expensive.
Sure.
Right? So like, I see what this is costing us today and I'm not, I, I'm kind of where Councilmember Baker is. I appreciate the analysis of, well, I guess I'm where also where Councilmember Riss is. I think we need to have a lot more, which is why my initial comments were like, please come to us in February and January with this kind of stuff. Like, I understand that we have excellent staff. Y'all are in the weeds all the time. You are amazing professionals that we are not, right? As far as what you know and what we don't know about HR or what we hear from about employees. I have very much heard about compression from employees very loud and clear. That is often what we get told. They come to us too. And they get, we hear all the grousing around that. So that, that is not surprising to me and I do not want to put staff in that position because you're all the ones who, who sign the checks and, and, and you are going to go to HR and finance and complain to y'all about that. So I would not want to set you up for, for those conversations. But I am deeply concerned if, if we know we're going up at about $25 an hour and we're only keeping our gatekeepers and our, and our, like, those folks aren't going to come work for us. I mean, like, there's going to be movement other places. So, um, we do need to do that deeper analysis as far as where we are with the budget. The place that I'm the most comfortable is that 3% to 5%. I think at least it indicates to part-time workers, hey, we, we know we've got some work to do. It doesn't cost us that much money. And, and then, you know, we had to say this to full-time workers about two years ago. We're like, we, we hear you, we need some time. We're going to have to say the same to part-time workers, you know, this time. I think that time we gave some bonuses kind of down the road. We hear you, we know that we've got to do some work on this. Let's do this little nudge that shows our appreciation and then that deeper analysis. And we may ultimately understand that it's, it's, it's super cost prohibitive or it doesn't, we don't get to this resolution on compression and that's going to be a hard decision. But at least we've done that deeper analysis and council gets that information way earlier in the fiscal year and way earlier in budget season. Thank you.
Thank you, council member colleagues. I, um, I, I appreciate this, this information so much. I was proud to be on, um, part of that, the council that, that passed the Living Wage Ordinance. To this, to Councilmember Riss's, uh, point about working towards it over the years. I, I think, I think the spirit of that has been, been echoed by staff and this manager and others before that, that we know we need to be working towards that. And it's clear that the will of this council is at some point to get us to that place. I, um, I, I am with the manager's recommendation for a number of reasons. One, I have literally sat in rooms and been cursed at over compression. So it, it, it's not a theoretical thing. It's a very real thing. Not, not just compression, but fairness as well. And why is this person's job, who's not as important, quote, not as important as mine or not as impactful, getting the same? Or if we break it down to an hourly rate, you know, they're making more than me and I'm full-time in this. And so, so a lot of those arguments that we'll present are non-compelling to folk. When, you know, our employees, when... And so, so a lot of those arguments that we'll present are non-compelling to folk, you know, our employees when they, when they talk to us. So the issues of fairness and equity are really, um, important to me. The, as a kid who, you know, worked part-time jobs and some of you growing up, I know the importance of those step jobs, of those introductory positions that kind of push you and elevate you up. And I, I'm, I'm fearful of doing away of Durham's positioning of those type of positions for folk and, and accidentally, if you will, or in effect, focusing more of our emphasis on, on higher paying, uh, jobs, more skilled jobs. Where is the ladder for those folk, uh, to come in? I, um, you know, when I was working those jobs as a kid, I, I didn't have any expectation to be making the same thing as, as, you know, other folk in the organization. Thirdly, I, you know, I, I was a progressive and then one day I became a governing progressive. And being a governing progressive oftentimes puts me in a position where you got to make hard decisions. You, you, you just don't kind of trumpet your values anymore. You got to actually look at the machinations of turning those values into policy, which is why we hire a manager who's not just competent in managing, but who also is in touch with our values. So I have confidence that this manager, when they do the analysis, this manager does his analysis and his team does their analyses fully in light of and understanding what the values of this council in this city are. And, and I, I fully suspect that everything that they bring to us is washed in those values. It's, it's through that prism. Uh, and, and having knowledge of those values and still bringing back this recommendation as a governing progressive gives me pause. It, it, this is what I need to say to me in my ideal utopic kind of world, what it looks like in real life to bring it to fruition. You know, uh, guaranteed income isn't reaching as many people as I wanted to reach. Vision zero, if we have a fatality death, you know, of traffic fatality, you know, I'm not going to abandon vision zero. So, so we know that a lot of places where we want to get to, it's going to take time. I don't look at this issue any differently than zero fatality, everybody being on, um, uh, guaranteed income. Every, I, I looked at the issue saying that, that incrementalism should not be the enemy of, of our progressive agenda and our progressive values. So I am interested, however, uh, in hearing more about the 3% to 5%. But I'm wondering, would that be for just commensurate or non-commensurate? Because that still doesn't do away with folk who are full-time employees saying, well, they get in the same percentage of, you know, merit pay as me. That's not going to do away with those kind of, uh, concerns, but, but I, but I would be interested in hearing more. But as it stands, I've heard no, nothing that compels me to want to override what the manager is proposing with the understanding that we are consciously as a city working towards where we want to be in the coming years, just like we are in the number of, of the issues that are important to us as progressives. So I'll, I'll put that there. Colleagues, anyone else? Questions, comments?
Mr. Manager, did you want to?
So I, um, I just want to address this issue of, of, um, of part-time jobs. I think the assumption is in a lot of cases yet, because we all, we worked those jobs, right? I was like a, wait, I was like a part-time, uh, umpire back when I was a kid, made a little money now. So the assumption is like, hey, these are all kind of kids, the lifeguards or whatever. But if you just look at the, the demographics you gave us, so 30% of folks on this list are between 16 and 24 years of age. 27%, almost 30% are 25 to 39. The rest, if I did the math right, 43% of folks are above 40 years of age. So this is not your typical, hey, entry-level job for a high school kid. There's a lot of folks who are 40 years and up who are working these jobs. I just want to make sure that's clear, that we're, it's, it's, some of those jobs are high school kids maybe, but a lot of them are not. So, and I don't know, I don't know. So the recommendation for the manager you're referencing, Mayor Per Ten, is, is simply? Well, yeah, yeah.
I would say the options for the council are approve one of the recommendations we, or approve one of the recommendations we've put in front of you, one of the, I mean, one of the options. Modify one of those scenarios, uh, or leave the budget unchanged. And tho- those would be the decisions for this. I think independent of that, there's also the question of giving staff direction to come back with a more thorough discussion of, or more thorough exploration of options to move the part-time pay plan in a future year. I think, um, both of those are direction we're prepared to receive depending on where the majority of councils at.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate Councilmember Riss's point. I, I, you know, during guaranteed income, I, I encountered some people 40 years old who were reintegrating, who needed those type of jobs as well. So it's not just about age or where you are in school. There are plenty of folk, um, at different ages who, who, for whatever reason, life be life and uses those jobs. I also am, you know, the work to guaranteed income also made me sensitive to this benefits cliff as well, which is a very real, very real, uh, issue. Sometimes wanting to do good in one area causes unexpected outcomes and impacts in other areas. Nothing insidious, but that's just, you know, every action has an opposite and equal reaction, um, particularly in governance. So I, I also am very sensitive a- about that as well, which is why I'm comfortable, um, with the manager's decision, with the provision, uh, Councilmember Riss, that we are looking towards fixing this. But I, 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 I don't want to touch the budget, at least, uh, with this, um, in this area. So, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I, I will say I'm comfortable, um, with the budget the way it is, but I do think the 3% to 5% is a good intermediary. But I will, I do want to just make sure I do state clearly, the benefit cliffs already exist and folks are making those adjustments based on their life now. And then also, um, whatever the minimum wage is, um, that type of compression is going to occur. Like, I fully expect it to, to go up and that type of compression is going to occur. We're just pushing it off. And so I'm okay waiting, but I don't want to mince words on like thinking that, you know, we're doing something different. But yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And yet, to your point, they, they are making those adjustments now, but the variable of that will be changing, will be the amount of money they're making as, at the part-time level. So once that, once that kicks in, that's a new calculation. I mean, they're making it based upon what the money they're making right now. If we do this incentive, but I-
I think it's, what I'm also including is the fact that if we're even talking 3%, 3% to 5%, that's still a change. Any change, any increase is going to make that closer, uh, cliff occur. So it's, there's no way to avoid it and I don't want that to be the excuse next year, that's all.
Absolutely. Councilmember Riss.
Yeah, just to be clear, so Mr. Ryan Group, so the, the, the issue of the 3% to 5% for part-time pay performance, that, that's not one of your scenarios, right?
That's a whole separate issue.
Separate thing.
It, it was information requested by council at the work session. So we wanted, y- you asked what it would cost. We wanted to show you what it would cost. We, if council wanted to proceed with that today, we would be in a position to, to do it. I wanted to be clear, that was a separate request apart from what would it take for part-time employees to make the DMLW? So there, there were really two questions on, when we talked about the part-time pay plan. One was, why do they get three and everybody else gets five? So we provided that. The other was, what would it take? And then we showed you those scenarios. So if you directed us to change that pay plan, we would move forward with that.
So I, I appreciate Councilmember Baker raising that. I, I would like to see us do that, 3% to 5%.
Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. And it does actually meet at least the need that we are moving because it does take folks from the non-commensurate, from 234 to 190. So it does at least move some folks, um, i- in the direction that I think there is consensus on council saying, hey, we want to move it in some direction. And it, it, it's not a lot, it's 270,000. So, um, that, that's why.
Prepping.
Microphone, Council.
Prepping for next time as well. Thanks.
Count, anybody else, colleagues? So the, that would be for all, the 3% to 5%, moving from 3% to 5% would be for all part-time employees, notwithstanding commensurate and non-commensurate?
All part-time employees on the pay plan, which includes commensurate and non-commensurate.
And pay for performance, not their hourly rate?
It's, it's their step.
Step rate, right. Well, and, and recall, so I'm glad we did the step plan that we did with the full-time this year because it makes this easier to explain. But it's basically the same thing where you're changing the value of the steps. So people, some people at, at higher steps are going to get higher increases, uh, because that value of the step is going to-
People who are farther into the plan will have significant movement.
Colleagues? All right, Mr. Manager, do I need to poll the house on that? It seems to be, there, there seems to be at least in my assessment, a, a growing consensus or at least a specter of one.
I'll, I'll defer to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Councilmember Baker, do you?
One, one last question. I mean, do you have concerns, compression or anything around the changing the step from 3% to 5%?
I have concerns that we haven't spent much time analyzing it and that there may be unintended consequences. I don't, I can't tell you there are unintended consequences. I can tell you that, given that we spent most of our time analyzing the other options and thinking through those options, we did not spend the same amount of time looking at this. I don't want to, I'm not trying to scare you into not doing it. I just, there, there may be unintended consequences that we haven't fully analyzed, but, um, that's, we, we understand this may be where the council wants to go.
Is that something staff can look at before that meeting on the, on the 16th?
I wouldn't stake my life on anything, but I feel, I mean, I feel, I feel like, um, from what we've looked at so far, making that change, um, there were no clear things like there were with the other scenarios we presented. Nothing jumped out like-
The only, so the only thing that jumps out at me is, do we have commensurate staff who by nature of how much they would move, would then drastically outstrip their full-time equivalents? So that now we have an equity problem between part-time commensurate, who we moved-
Right.
Multiple step, or multiple percentages. And because we are making no changes other than the 1.45 and the other pay plan, that we might create inequities between commensurate, non-commensurate, or commensurate, full-time, commensurate, part-time.
Right, that, that would actually not be an issue because what we're talking about is doing, those step increases would start at step two. So it doesn't affect the starting point, which is already, you know, in alignment. So they're not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't create any situation with, with what you just described.
Those are my experts. So if they're, if, if that's their level of comfort, that's my level of comfort.
And you, you're, you can make that determination off the cuff. You don't need to do any homework or anything.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to go with 89% sure on that.
He's been in that step already. He can say that is he's already had to move folks in that space in the plan. So he's already been in the numbers. And so he, based on his experience and knowledge of what he's already had to do for the other employees, I'm guessing you can at least-
Yeah, I mean, the critical points with, with the scenarios were the starting, the starting wage of each. And so that's not a factor when you're changing the, the value of a, of a step.
Mr. Manager, just for my own edification, would you just re-design this version? What was your concern again? Or I want to call it a contention, but your, your query about, are you, yeah, you concerned about that?
If we had people with similar experience in the organization, similar years, some in the part-time plan, some of the full-time plan, who, who we now, the part-time commensurate is going to be getting a higher wage. But I put that question to our assistant director and he indicated that's not a concern. So I, I trust his analysis.
Okay.
I feel good about that part of it for sure. Yes.
Turns out otherwise, you'll be back.
That's- I'll be the one getting cursed at in the room.
Councilmember Baker, I'm polling the house. 3% to 5%? Are you, Councilmember? Councilmember, Councilman? All right, it looks like we are going to be, uh, increasing the step from 3% to 5% for our part-time employees. With absolutely no implications or-
None whatsoever.
whatsoever.
Not even a hint of-
Best, best way. Thank you so much. Thank you, colleagues, for, for your passion around this and for your engagement. Thanks. All right, uh, Councilmember Caballero.
Are, are we taking up any other budget conversations right now?
Um, I think this is it on DMLW. Those colleagues had anything else they wanted to bring up?
I was going to say, that's all the information we have to present. We're happy to answer other questions. We know there was, we put a lot of follow-up information in the memo that came out yesterday, but we're happy to give voice to any answers. Yep.
And I apologize if I missed this, but, um, do we have information about, uh, day shelters from the county?
Yes, it's, this was not in the memo. Uh, I got th- this information just before the meeting. I- i- it stands where it stood last time, but with, with a, a high degree of certainty from the county manager that they intend to issue an RFP funded from FY25 County Fund. So it's not a proposal in their budget, it's actually already funded. They issue an RFP for day shelter based on the proposal that they received from, I'm not sure if it was the Housing Subcommittee or HSEC, but they're essentially proposing to respond to that with an RFP. She indicated to me, it has not been discussed publicly by her board, but she's had private conversations where she believes it will be supported. And she's comfortable with me sharing that with you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. I've had individual conversations and also raised it with, um, Manager Ferguson about augmenting the dollars that we give to Justice Matters for our ILAP program. Currently, they are funded at 250,000 and my ask is to bring it up to 450,000. And I think, um, have had some of the, some of those conversations with you individually and I think some advocates have reached out. And I was also told to bring it here if we were going to do it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Not speaking for, so, uh, the mayor before he left wanted me, asked me to express his views on this. He knows that the work is important. I want to capture the spirit of what he said. He said, there are a lot of priorities and things that we need to fund, but he would be, uh, in favor of leaving it what it is for now for this budget. So for whatever, however, that impacts the discussion. That's from the mayor. Councilmember Freeman?
I would just, um, want to get some insights. If the city manager has had conversation with this county manager about, um, Hayti Reborn Justice Movement as well.
I have not had conversations with the county manager. I, um, am, the communication we received this week from Hayti Justice Reborn is the first communication I'm aware of. So I, I apologize, I don't, I don't know what the county's position is on that.
Just wanted to check in. I know that they, uh, expressed that they shared the proposal and I did let them know it was pretty late in the cycle and that I thought that they, well, I think, what I understand is that they haven't spent all of the funds yet. And so I just want to make sure I say it publicly, that they haven't spent all the funds yet. And once the funds have been expended, there could be a conversation about additional funding. So I, I just want to make sure I say that.
Councilmember, did you have any, um, opinion on Councilmember Caballero's?
I, I'm, I am fine with the 400. I would like to hear the city manager's, um, analysis or staff's analysis on what that would do to the budget.
Director, did you?
So, um, I think that I'm being asked about the, is it the 400, is it the 450 for, um?
From 250 to 450?
250 to 450. So that would take it up $200,000. Is that correct? If I'm doing the math right on, um, and then you have also approved 270 for the, so that is a $470,000 increase to the budget. So, you know, there's obviously two ways that we could do it at this point. We would either have to, um, you know, raise the tax rate. So that's our only revenue source right now, or we would have to go back and find cuts within the budget. A tax increase of 470 is about 0.08? Am I doing my math right? 0.068. About 0.07 or so for-
Thank you for that. I'm not in favor of raising taxes for, I, I mean, if, I, I want 2 million for guaranteed income, but I'm not, I wouldn't raise taxes to do it, uh, at this budget. And given where we are in the timeline as well. Uh, and to, to be fair, let me just be fully transparent. I have family members that work for that organization. So it's an organization that's near and dear to my heart. I just want to disclose that, but I would not be willing to raise taxes at this point for it. Councilman, Councilman Baker, were you?
Yeah, I would, I'd be curious just for a little bit more information about the organization and, um, what, what it would go towards, you know, just kind of at this late stage.
Thank you. This was one of my budget requests. The initial, uh, request was for $700,000 and it was supposed to move to reoccurring. And there was a lot of information provided in my budget document, including the types of work the organization does. Happy to share it with colleagues, um, i- if, if helpful. I will say that even if, what would be the budget increase for 270,000, because there was consensus around that. Or, as you're saying, that it's the 400 to, that there's no money, right? A rounding error for the city. There's no money, uh, in, in the current budget to do either the 270,000 for part-time or the 2? Are you saying?
Well, I'm saying we have, at the moment, we're balanced. So, you know, I would, we would have to either find ways to kind of make sure that we could pay for that, um, if, within the budget. We can go back and we, if, you know, if we're instructed by staff, instructed by council, we will do that and we can find- we will do that, and we can find a way. But if we were to, you know, if we were, wanted to add to what we already have in the budget, we could do it through revenue.
Right. And I guess what I'm asking for is it's both the 250,000 and the 270,000. So we have to talk about both, right?
Yes, and I think to elaborate, that, to be fair, there is a, there is a margin of error that, that we always assume in budgeting, that should we have some, the number that the budget director and I talked about prior to today's conversation was something in the realm of 150 to 250,000 was something we felt like we could probably accommodate in the budget without making changes to revenue sources. I think the cumulative impact of the change to the part-time pay plan and this request, I don't think we have a comfort level that that's absorbable. And so I think that's where we're looking for you guys. We are, you know, cutting other areas of the budget is also an option, so I'm not trying to tell you that a tax increase is required, but we haven't come with options for that readily, readily for you.
Councilmember Freeman?
I would definitely be in favor of cutting rather than raising taxes and figuring out what areas we could cut for 270 and 250,000 seems doable. I mean, I think even if it's just a nine-month delay on a contract, something small enough to not create too much of a ripple. But I do think it's important to show, or to demonstrate support for both part-time and part-time workers and for the justice matter work.
Councilmember Riz?
I agree. Yeah, I think, I think both these are important requests, both the 3% to 5% for the part-time employees and the justice matter works. And so I would support the request from Councilmember Caballero and look to the city manager and staffer, creative ways to make that happen.
Councilmember Caballero?
Thank you. And I'm not in favor of doing a tax increase for the small amount. I know that we have had other times where there's been small adjustments at this time, and it's been worked out. I think the other opportunity would be, if we can't do it now, I guess sometimes we have, like, is it carry forward in the fall?
Yeah, the other option would be like a one-time, and so, yeah, which is usually the carry forward. So that's another option I could use as a, as a revenue source as well, too.
Okay, so I think that if we can't get to that, because I don't want to raise taxes, we're already doing it. So if there's an option to earmark that $200,000 difference at that point, because I know then at that point, we have a sense of what didn't get spent in this current fiscal year, et cetera, then that would be my, my other suggestion. And I don't know if that is enough clarity for staff or not.
I, Council, did you?
I'll just say, I also do not support raising the taxes as, beyond what we have already, what is already proposed in the current budget.
Yeah, I would certainly be open to looking at carryover funds. I don't know if I want to earmark a specific amount yet without seeing what the totality of the carryover is and what the rest of our landscape is looking like. I am, I don't support, I mean, the budget that the count, the manager's presented is balanced, and we, it was a lot of work to get to, I mean, everything in there is important. I, I guess when I look at the, the, what are we holding onto and what are we adding? The 3% to 5% is something new for our employees, and I guess I find that palatable, because we are, we're actually augmenting. This line is something, as much as we want to augment it, is there. 250 grand is nothing to sneeze at. And the argument for augmenting, and I think is compelling, I think the argument for augmenting guaranteed income is just as compelling as augmenting the line for justice matters work, given what's going on economically, giving on what's going on politically. I mean, anything we do that helps our people, a case can be made to augment it. But the consolation I take is that at least it's in the budget, and there's money there. There is no money for the 3% to 5% yet. That's something new, that that's augmenting our footprint. So I'm comfortable with holding on to what we're doing, which is significant. Again, Justice Matters is an organization I love, and I have family that's sustained by the organization, so it's, I don't do this lightly. But when I look at the totality of the budget, what's already in there, I'm comfortable with doing the 3% to 5%, holding on to what we're doing, and taking a look for carryover. I don't have enough information now to say it's going to be a hard 200 grand. I don't know what that carryover amount's going to be, or what else we might need to address at that time. But I definitely don't want to raise taxes. And I don't, having my read through the manager's budget, I couldn't tell you what area I'd be comfortable right now from taking 200 grand from, to augment this. So, that's where I am. And I know the mayor, the mayor's position is to hold as well. I guess, Councilmember Caballero, you were willing to look at, I will, I will certainly commit to placing high priority with those carryover funds on this item. I'll say that publicly now. The dollar amount, I don't think I can earmark now, but I can certainly commit to-
Thank you. I'm willing to do the, but I need folks to make some, there's not a lot in this budget for these folks. I'm sorry. There's not. Like, you can took the total of the money of our budget and what communities this helps cover, and there's very little. So I will push back on that. But I'm happy to have that conversation when carryover comes over, comes forward. I do not want to increase taxes for this. I will say that I will be bringing another measure again next year, because these are not communities, as we can see. This isn't changing. This landscape's not changing, it's just getting worse. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilmember. And to your point, certainly, it's not enough. And I wasn't suggesting that there is enough or a lot. I said there's something in the budget, and by all means, more work needs to be done. No, no argument there. Mr. Manager, do you have clarity on that?
I do.
Colleagues, thank you so much for a great substantive conversation. This has been a great meeting. I think that has exhausted our published agenda. With that, I'll turn to the manager to settle the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pretten. Members of council, I appreciate a long but productive day, and so we appreciate your attention. For settling the agenda, I have on consent, items 1 through 12, 14 through 38, and items 43 through 45. On GBA, I have item 13, and on GBA Public Hearings, I have items 39 through 41.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to settle the agenda.
Second?
I hear a motion in the second. Colleagues will indicate affirmation by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? The agenda is settled. This is, brings us to the end of our last work session of this fiscal year. Thank you so much, colleagues, for incredible work in a great and substantive year. We move to pass the budget at our next council meeting. Congratulations and best wishes to Councilor Cook and her absence, and to her pending nuptials and her family, and to all of you. Have a great weekend. We are adjourned on June 5th at 6:18. God bless you, God bless Durham.